Good morning, Mayor councillors. Thank you as ever for giving myself on behalf of the Chalmers' Community Board the chance to submit. And I just want to start first off, before I forget and perhaps don't mention it, that I, on behalf of the board, have been very, very impressed probably over the last three, four months at the refreshing and delightful proactivity of some council departments. And certainly as a board chair, it's been quite a joy to see actions rather than, well, actions in response to requests from the board actually being, taking place. So keep it up, long may it last. You've obviously been here long enough now to be fairly cognizant of the various needs, wants, desires of the Chalmers' Community Board. So, and I'll assume obviously that you've read the submissions. So what I want to do is just briefly give you an update on not all, but some of the points we raise. So first off, the perennial, and it's been on the books for a long time, the desire to see the shared path, cycle walkway alongside SH88 at Port Chalmers completed. We recently had Jason Forbes from NZTA came to the last board meeting. And myself and Andrew sit on the SH88 liaison trust. And very good news has been emanating from NZTA with regard to the completion of the cycle walkway. And barring a catastrophic breakdown in the funding application, it looks fairly, well, we're fairly certain that work may begin early January next year on the completion of the path. So I think that'd be great news, not only for the city, but obviously for the people and residents of the West Harbour. We've waited a long time to see this completed. So that's great news. And actually, it's quite a lot of good news today, which makes a pleasant change. The second point is probably not such good news, is obviously the desire for the community to see a 30-kilometre zone through Port Chalmers. And again, in the, as you're probably all aware, the NZTA going through a national process of reevaluating speed limits. And again, with the meeting myself and councillor Noon had recently through the aforementioned trust, it's probably been indicated, you know, high 90 percents that it's very, or am I being optimistic? That it's very unlikely that under the new legislation, it would be possible to have a 30-k zone in Port Chalmers. That said, NZTA are extremely anxious to work with the board and the community to look at other mitigation measures, which to all intents and purposes might actually be a better way of slowing traffic down. So the only problem obviously that the board will have is convincing the gnarly public that they can't have 30-k zones. But anyway, that's the update on that one. Yep, vital facilities, number three, I think obviously that's fundamental heart of our community. Libraries, swimming pools, and obviously the news you've probably heard via the rugby club, I hope you have, that the rugby club and the soccer club will be merging in Port Chalmers to use Watson Park. And obviously, we'd like to put Watson Park on the radar for potential upgrade in the future, because it does, it is, does suffer quite badly in the winter. And I know, I know throughout the city, a lot of the pitches are in need of upgrade, but hopefully, hopefully that one doesn't fall off of the radar. Board discretionary fund, probably won't speak to that, because there's no point. Sea walls. Sea walls. You can see there, obviously, we've submitted to this last year. We did actually get an answer back on it. And obviously, the timeframes on that are fairly far out. So 2030 is a long way away. All you guys won't be here. Well, you won't be here, you'll still be on the planet. You won't be sitting around this table. You might, you might ginty. And Aaron, you have a, you have a fair chance to. But anyway, that is a long way out. So obviously, from Kerries Bay right out to Arumwana, without the sea walls working efficiently and being maintained, the whole integrity of those outer communities, you know, can potentially become highly threatened. So hopefully, through negotiation and further investigation, that timeframe probably can be lessened. Cruise ships, obviously, big part of Port Chalmers' landscape. And certainly, I mean, I've lived in Port Chalmers now for 12 years. Cruise ships, in the time cruise ships had been coming in, in my time, I remember in the past, the cruise ship passengers were literally encouraged as they came through Tyro ahead to avoid Dogtown and get out of there quickly. And you might be raped and pillaged. And there were very few people wandering around Port Chalmers. The recent years, Port Chalmers are really busy place on cruise ship days. And I think that's down to the hard work of local businesses, entrepreneurs locally, and obviously perception. I think it's quite a tight community, the cruise ship community. And when people do realise they're not going to be raped and pillaged, and they're actually going to be, have a very good time in Port Chalmers, the word gets round and we're getting a lot more demand from cruise ship passengers. But please keep supporting the, I know you do, the wonderful volunteers that help give the visitors such a great time there. Sycamore tree control. Councillor Hawkins can probably give you, give you a better update than me on this. Obviously, is a great concern in the West Harbour. There has been some recent press coverage highlighting the issue. As a result of that, there's been some tremendous offers of finance and help from a number of agencies. And also, it's parks and wrecks to their credit with some recent staff changes and movements. Looks like there's going to be a plan drawn up within the next two months, a real plan that can be, we can actually work with. Alongside that, the West Harbour Beautification Trust in the next few weeks is going to convene a meeting in Port Chalmers of the stakeholders, and hopefully the DCC will be represented at that, just to give an overall presentation of potential ways forward. But I'm very encouraged that at last, we have traction on that particular issue, and it's something we really need to get a handle on. And Lee, I haven't forgotten your fire thing. Thank you. He knows what I mean. Safety around schools. Only yesterday, there was a consultation letter drawn up by Sarah Connolly's department that'll go out to local residents who may be affected by the installation of a speed bump. So hopefully, hopefully there'll be no objections to that. In fact, I think you'll find there'll be drone support. So thanks to the DCC for getting behind that. That's probably really it, but I'm sure, hopefully, there'll be some questions you want to throw at me.
Questions, councillors? Councillor Vandervass.
It's not about sycamores, is it?
No, 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 no. We've got the solution to that, we just have to get people's heads around it. What I can't get my head around is, the Community Board want a 30-k zone through Port Chalmers?
Yep.
All the shopkeepers that are directly affected want it? All the people want it?
Yep.
What hidebound bureaucracy has prevented this from happening for years? Tell me who it is. Be blunt.
It's the fact that it's a state highway, and basically, council has no power to dictate what happens on state highways.
Yeah, right. But who is it that's running the state highway against the wishes of all the residents that are directly involved, against the wishes of the Community Board, against the wishes of everybody? What hidebound bureaucrat has made that decision?
I'd like to know.
Can you find out? Let's name and shame whoever it is.
It will be the CEO of NZTA.
Oh dear. Sorry I asked.
Any further questions? Councillor Wilson.
Sorry. Steve, my understanding is that one of the problems with the 30-k area is that it would set a precedent that isn't provided for anywhere else in New Zealand.
Yep.
Have you found any other area that has less than 50-k's on a state highway?
No.
Thank you.
No, unfortunately not. I'd just like to say, it is obviously very frustrating, so, but actually, hands being tied, it's very frustrating.
Councillor McTavish.
I just wonder what it is that NZTA are proposing to do? Are they intending to build outs or something?
Yeah, that's, that's, after the last meeting, we're, I think, when's that? We're having another SH88 liaison meeting in about, in August. And at that August meeting, we'll start putting some sort of ideas on the table. Unfortunately, and I guess the irony will be, if we start building mitigation measures that may impinge on the shops, i.e. by removing parking spaces, we might get ourselves in another situation where we start to annoy the shopkeepers and the businesses. And also, Port Otago probably won't be overly keen on anything that slows down the traffic. Being very careful.
Thanks, Your Worship. Just following up on councillor Vandervass's question. Steve, is it fair to say that because of the, want a better word, the roadblocks that we're up against trying to achieve a 30-k speed restriction, that we are attempting now to look at achieving the same reduction, but without having a 30-k speed restriction? So trying to achieve the same reduction in speed, which will achieve the same outcome? Because I think we've tried particularly hard over a number of years to try and get the 30-k, but the reality is, we want to, we still want to achieve the 30-k, but in a different way. So I'm just trying to tease out, our position currently is changed in the last two or three weeks, so to speak, since our last meeting with NZTA. Is that a fair comment?
It's 100% correct. Yep.
So just to clarify, just to clarify, is there anything that, yeah, is there anything that council can do to assist in the process of negotiating with NZTA?
To be fair, I think council has been very proactive in trying to assist with the process through submissions and advocacy. So above and beyond that, I, my feeling is you'll probably hit the same wall that we have. Yeah.
Councillor Vandervass, do you have another question?
Yes. The alternative measures of achieving 30-k, but not actually mandating 30-k. Is it true that these will involve curb protrusions and chicanes and speed bumps and all sorts of other expensive infrastructure, which is going to cost a whole lot of money as opposed to a very cheap sign saying 30-k?
Not necessarily, because actually, you're not allowed, you're not allowed speed bumps on state highways. So it can only be protrusions and/or other signage, which, for example, I've always been desirous of a rather large sign at the entrance of Port Chalmers, perhaps with a picture of Iona Church, with the wording along the lines of historical village, please drive carefully, which anecdotally in places in Europe works very well, along with some sort of protrusions. And to be fair, even with the 30-k TMP temporary management plan in place, although the speeds did come down quite dramatically, the science will not show whether or not that was the 30-k sign, or the yellow bollards that go down the middle of the road that have to be part of the TMP. And to be honest, it's probably a lot to do with the yellow bollards going down the middle of the road.
Okay. So, but you are looking at having to put physical infrastructure of one sort or another?
Yeah. And as I mentioned earlier, to be fair on the NZTA, they're keen to do that. And I, I don't know if councillor Noon will agree with me, but I think the NZTA are as frustrated as we are about this situation. I know that sounds contradictory, but yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks, Steve. On the same theme, I'm just trying to, I wonder what the issue would be with the port traffic container and log trucks requiring 50-k's at that point? What, I mean, I can't imagine them going down there. I don't like driving down the main street of Port Chalmers, more than about 40 at the most, probably. Is this, does this require something like, you may not know this, in terms of taking the state highway 88 designation out of the main street? Does it require that?
Well, if, yeah, if that designation didn't exist, obviously, this, solving the problem would be far easier. And of course, prior to the amalgamation in 89, it was a local road. Not trying to speak for Port Otago, but my feeling would be that perhaps they would view a speed change occurring as the thinner edge of the wedge, and that perhaps a desire then for other communities along the state highway to call for a reduction in speed.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Appreciate your submission. Mr Feather. Welcome, Bill.
Good morning. Your Worship, councillors. First of all, I'd just like to express my thanks to you all for coming to Moskew last night. Certainly, those present found it enlightening and also very helpful in our quest to achieve our ends. So, well done, and thank you all. This morning, I'm here in front of you in respect to unfunded transport projects, and in particular, Moskew Town Centre. And in that end, our, the board's interest first started with the regional land transport plans hearing and a submission from the board to that plan. And in that submission, we asked the committee to give due consideration to bringing the project forward, having recognised the need for safety improvements and accessibility to Moskew, and also a second item, which was to do with cycle networks in the area as well. Our request was that those two projects be considered as one, and that they be developed together and brought to the table. In their plan, they, there were three entries, which were somewhat contradictory. One stood out by itself, which was the cycle network. But there were two entries for the accessibility and safety improvements of State Highway 87, Gordon Road, the main street of Moskew. And they had differing times, but in each of the sections of the plan, they had allocated costs. So in the regional land transport plans papers, there was an item called Moskew Town Improvements. The planning stages were indicated and money allotted to bring those planning stages to fruition. However, when I read the DCC's papers in respect to the DCC's long-term planning, it was an unfunded item, and only, and with no money attached to it at all, but loosely suggesting that a $2 million cost was envisaged. I'm not sure who drives what, where, whether, and what part the council here has in respect to State Highway 87, and what part the regional councils' land transport committee plays. But I would have thought that it was a partnership between both, and that both plans should reflect the project in such a way that it was being worked on together. So the board's request and our submission to you is to bring the council's planning in line with the regional land transports plan and move it forward. Having done that, that we would then further request that it be started sooner than later. And that is my submission.
Thank you, Bill. Questions, councillors?
Regarding the Moskew Aquatic Facilities meeting last night, under submitters to be heard, 90% of them didn't show up. Do you know why that was?
Well, I'd have to say that there has been some confusion around the hearing, the holding of the hearing. From a board's perspective, it has yet to receive notification that it is, no, I'll correct that. It was only yesterday that I received notification that we were to appear. We learnt through the grapevine that we were intended to be there. But as to the letter coming from having lodged a submission, that we are still waiting for. So I wonder, and the second part to it is, on checking the council's website yesterday morning, there were three references to Moskew having a hearing on Monday night, Wednesday and Thursday. So through error, through oversight maybe, I don't know. I can't, I can't answer for those that were appeared, that have appeared on lists as to why they didn't show up. But I can say that those that were there gave very wide view of the community's feelings towards the project.
Can I, can I just clarify? The communications, I'm not sure about lack of communication, but there was some communication with a number of these submitters. And it was made clear that if the information and submissions made by the communities, the Tari Aquatic Communities Trust, covered the points that later submitters wanted to, that they may not want to speak. And that was what the White Board was for. So it struck me that there were a good number of people there earlier in the evening who subsequently left after they'd heard the submissions from the three main bodies that were concerned. So I have no reason to believe that they weren't there, they didn't hear it, but they were quite happy with what was submitted, and they didn't feel they needed to add to it. And that was made clear in the, both in the communications with some of the submitters, and alluded to in my introductory remarks, where I pointed out that if all of the submitters had been, that were listed, had been given their full time, we wouldn't have had time anyway. We were well aware of that. So that's just to clarify. Councillor Law, have you got a question?
Sorry. I'd just like to disqualify. I spoke with the young guy on Sunday, Sunday night, and I said, oh, I see you're down to submit tomorrow night. And he said, look, I don't know anything about it. And I said, oh, I maybe made a mistake and read my computer screen wrong. Maybe it was just, I thought I was reading in the hearings, but when I spoke to him, he didn't know about it. So there was obviously some confusion. Yeah.
Further questions, councillors? Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Like always, this is pretty brief, but we might add a couple of things in there that I think perhaps should be done. Excuse me, we do appreciate the assistance we're getting, and I would especially like to thanks our GSO team. And we only get one trained up and they bugger off, which is pretty rough. We'd just like to keep them a bit longer. But the assistance we get from the staff in there is outstanding, so I'd just like to convey that to the rest of us. And majority of our heads of departments for roading and parks sometimes, and cemeteries, less common. Yeah, we're starting to get on pretty good, so just like to convey that. The rural roads, and I think it's a, roading is a problem. I don't know, Andrew obviously doesn't live at his place very often, because his road's fairly rough, but just don't really want to see the support or the level of grading in that drop any. I know, I know it's a cost, but some of our roads have tended to get a little bit rougher in the more recent times. I'm aware that weather conditions haven't helped, but just if council can be aware of that, and perhaps when there's anything going on, just to make sure that those conditions are kept. Obviously, we aren't there wanting lots of things, because we are aware that it'd be nice to get the debt down and the rates. The Giga Town, the board would like the Strathroy community to have access to UFB. Doesn't worry me too much, but the majority of them would. Nice to see the pool funding increased in the next three years. And also, if we could have a historical or hysterical group, that could be perhaps adjusted too. It's a, it's a pretty good little museum up there, and I know there's quite a lot of rates go to the Neid Museum, and it's really an offshoot. And another little thing that's pretty important when the train comes up, being some of your cruise ships which are on the train, at a lesser extent than port. Just a thing I see in today's paper, a dog park for little dogs. Just please keep it in check that, we've got a lot of working dogs at home, and we're very conscious of the fact that they keep nipping the dog registration up. Might be two bucks this year, another two bucks. Just please be mindful of that if you can. I mean, it might be nice for these little chihuahuas and little ankle chewers to have a bit of ground, not with the big dogs, but please bear in mind that there are quite a lot of working dogs that people try and make a living from, and it's certainly difficult in the rural communities now to make a difference. And probably the other thing that's not on air, but I do think that there's quite a bit of staff and areas that, and I'm not blaming all council, but transit, that must have rocks on their head allowing push bikes on the north and south one-way streets. They're not allowed on the motorway across from Saddle Hill. You get to the oval and you open it up for push bikes. You get to the Pine Hill, they're not allowed their pedestrians, and yet you've got them going both ways. How about enough other roads poke them around there? The Varsity might have a lot of say, but they don't pay a hell of a lot of rates. So just would make it easier to all put the trucks somewhere else. I think it's only accidents waiting to happen. So there, that's really all I've got, ready for some answers. Questions?
Councillor Wilson.
I notice in your submission on the cycle funding for the bridge over the state highway, which is the eastern bypass, which is exactly the point that we are trying to do. So the council, and I don't, this is something the council added in late in the piece, and I'm not critical of the staff for not getting the wording completely right in the document. But the idea is there that we've got the eastern bypass that goes on to, connects the state highway with the port?
Just a question.
Yes, it is a question. Are you aware that that funding that you've said no to is actually to get, to keep the bikes not crossing at road level, but take them above or below, so that we don't add another cycle conflict with the freight bypass?
No, not 100% aware of that, but it's taken a while to get a bit of common sense.
But, but, but so if you knew that that was about freight and it continuing through and not conflicting with cycles, might you be accepting of it?
A lot happier.
Yeah, thank you.
There's a lot of areas that we've got those pegs up there, just a hindrance. Paulbury Corner is another one.
Is there, are there any more questions?
No, I realise this.
There are no more? Thank you, Barry. Very good. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr Collins.
Your Worship, councillors, staff. Once again, thanks for the opportunity to present the Workright Coast Community Board's submission to this LTP. I'm not going to go through each and every item, but there are a couple of things that I'd like to touch on. Freedom camping. The board are particularly supportive of freedom camping in our area, unlike some other areas around the city. We actually would like to actively encourage it. However, however, there's always a however. We just want to make sure that council ensure that the facilities are actually adequate. We're not talking about total upgrades and providing full camping facilities, but when we start putting the number of people into the areas that we are, we just need to sit back, reflect and make sure that the basics such as your water supply and your ability for people to do their business, so to speak, is adequate for the numbers that are being provided for. We also need to be mindful of the fact that while we set limitations on numbers, free freedom camping is a growing trend within our city. As I said, our board are supportive of that trend. We want to be supportive of the visitors and we want to make that a pleasant experience. And therefore, we ask council to consider the facilities in the Warrington Domain as to whether or not they are actually adequate for the purpose. The strategic cycle network, in your submission, I've made reference to the funding in the LTP. Now, I accept the methodology and the reasoning why council has increased its funding for the first three years to take advantage of the additional Crown funding available. However, I'm somewhat surprised that that increased level of council funding continues for the full ten years. While it's only an additional $340,000 over seven years, that $340,000 is coming out of a roading budget that our community would love to have access to for the improvements that we need in our area to our footpaths and general access within our communities. And allocating as it has, council has effectively tied up that funding for that particular purpose when, if we to believe what we're told, the only reason for increasing that level of funding was to capitalise on the Crown's contribution for those first three years. I ask council to reconsider that allocation of funding and look at those other areas that are not beneficiaries of the cycle strategy, such as ours, where that funding may well be more put to use for the benefit of the smaller communities that are missing out as a result. Giga Town, like Middlemarch, our community would love to have a stable data network. We'd love to have access to ultra-fast broadband. And we ask that council, when they're working with the providers, keep in mind that while we're not a direct beneficiary of the gigabit or Giga Town project, that you use your influence to ensure and try and get upgrades for the services in our areas. In my submission, I've noted the Wakawati Transfer Station. We're really looking forward to working with staff on that particular project. However, it's become apparent over recent years that when it comes to collection of waste in our recreational areas, we don't actually accommodate the need and levels of service that are required. As a board member, it's a little bit tiresome at board meetings to keep on seeing photos of overflowing rubbish bins in our community areas. As we've said before, we ask the council, while they're being mindful of the fact that they want to continue dealing with the level of debt and putting surpluses against that level of debt, that we ensure that the level of service we are providing is appropriate. That we ensure that in those areas, particularly in the recreational ones that are enjoyed not just by our residents, that they're seen as a clean, a tidy and welcoming place for all. Finally, and not particularly detailed in our submission, we're aware of a submission that's been presented to council in relation to the Wakawati Museum. I'd just like to convey to council that that particular project has the board's full support. And we do ask council to recognise the efforts they are making in creating a facility that not only provides for the showcasing of the heritage of the birthplace of Otago, but also that Wakawati is the front door to the city. In excess of forty percent of the visitors come down state highway one. The aspirations of that particular group wanting to create some information access to visitors early in their journey into the city should be supported by this council. Thank you.
Thank you, mister mayor. I'm Jared, I just want to ask about the comments you made about freedom camping. When you talk about facilities, you're obviously not just referring to toilets. And one of the issues that became clear at McCandry Bay in particular was the cooking, food preparation thing. Are you envisaging facilities like that to support that type of visitor?
Through the mayor, I don't think you need it. If we provide good facilities where people are able to look after themselves, to clean up after themselves, then we don't need to provide cooking facilities. If you're talking about a proper camping ground type facility.
Can you just explain to me what you mean by good facilities then, not just toilets?
I'm talking about toilets, maybe the opportunity for people to dress and change in private and to have a decent wash.
Well, one of the issues, as you probably read, that developed at Mac Bay was the use of the toilets for food preparation. So, how do you avoid that?
Look, I'm not able to provide advice on that.
Gerald, don't you think that's the role of a camping ground and providing those services?
I'm not sure that the freedom campers are looking to go into camping grounds for the particular activity that they undertake. The whole thing about freedom camping is to provide a short-stay capability for those visitors in our city that don't necessarily want to be sitting in a camping ground. And if you're referring to the likes of cooking facilities and such, then yes. If you're talking about toilets in public areas where people might like to enjoy the scenery, then it's just no.
Well, perhaps I could follow up on that and ask you how you feel about the reaction of some ratepayers who are concerned that we are constrained with our budget to provide public toilets for our citizens who pay rates, but are considering providing them to people who don't. For nothing.
Well, I mean, so it's a fundamental decision that's council needs to make. We either invite freedom camping into the city or we say it's not going to be available. If we invite freedom camping, then, and we provide the facilities for that and the locations that I'm talking about, or the location I'm talking about, it's also an area that's actually well enjoyed by our community. The stress that freedom camping puts on that makes it a least desirable spot.
Fair enough, thank you. Thank you, Jared, appreciate it. Is Anne Barsby here? She's not here. Mister Foot, I think you're here and we'll come to you if we may. Welcome. Welcome, Barry.
I've already put in the presentation before, but I just want to list four points. First of all, the council's proposed options appear to be sensible options, except for the one where I would be happy for rates to increase to four percent, to allow debt to be reduced a bit faster. That's only my personal opinion, but I think that's worth noting. Secondly, increasing cycling is important and will produce gains in a number of ways, including less spending by ratepayers on vehicle costs, fewer cars on the road, hence less congestion, less parking will be required. And there's health benefits for those cycling. Obviously, there are a lot of other benefits, but I think those four are key, I think, in the present climate. Thirdly, the overall strategic cycle network needs to be planned before parts are planned in detail. This particularly applies to the bridge over the rail corridor. Links need to be provided for between Portsmouth Drive, the Harbour Cycle Way to Port Chalmers, North Dunedin and Central City. All of these need to be planned for so that the bridge facilitates those links. Fourthly, I fully support the completion of the Portobello Road Safety Improvements in three years. It seems this option is a win-win for everybody. It's good. And finally, to those of you on the council, please keep up the good work. I'm really happy with the way things are going, thank you.
Thank you, mister Foot, for reassuring. Are you happy to take any questions if there are any? councillor McTavish.
I'm just, I was curious about your comments about the bridge. You've obviously thought about it a lot and do you see it as a multi, effectively a multi-on-off point?
Yes, well, particularly if it's at the Chinese Gardens, that area, then I think there needs to be a link over the roadway and then a link down onto the current pathway and then carry on over the railway and maybe even go beyond that. There has been a suggestion that maybe a tunnel may even be a better option or a cheaper option. But again, as I say, that needs to be looked at in terms of the whole plan. That may or may not be the best option. There may be better places for the bridge. I think a bridge or a tunnel would definitely be worthwhile, but just exactly where needs to be looked at pretty carefully.
Thank you.
Right, welcome, Anne.
Thank you.
Are you all set up with your PowerPoint?
I think we are.
That's great.
Yes, yes, good.
So, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much and thank you indeed for listening to our presentation from the Gasworks Museum Trust. Firstly, I'll introduce Glynn Babington, who's a trust board member, and Anne Cronin, who's our blacksmith. And she's fairly new to Dunedin, made a big difference, as you will hear. The format is that we'll cover the annual plan first, highlighting the main things, and then the long-term plan. And then Anne will explain her initiatives, which span both current and future. And then hopefully, we have time for questions. So, by way of a start, for councillors who don't know the Gasworks, just a quick update. The last eighteen months when the boiler was not operating was a struggle for the Gasworks. But now that it's fully operating and we're very grateful for the loan for the new boiler and thanks to Tom Glattley, it saved $70,000. Thanks to his dedication and his finding solutions and negotiation. But thank you for the loan to enable us to actually have a new boiler. We're also grateful for the restoration of the forge. That's made a huge difference to the Gasworks operations and our visitor experience. And the other thing is that the forge has taken a long time to restore to working order. And then now that Anne's here, every Sunday, the forge is operating and there are classes and it's all go and it's a big attraction for the Gasworks. So, we are on the up again after the lull with no steam to operate machinery. And I'll hand over now to Glynn, who will quickly highlight the annual plan.
Thank you. So, I'll just go through the summary because we'd like to give you time to ask questions afterwards, so it will be very brief. So, basically, we're asking that Dunedin City Council considers the following request. Continuation of the existing annual allocation formation, it's a $50,000, up to half of which can be initiated by the Dunedin City Gasworks with DCC approval. Forgiveness of the $28,000 that was lent by DCC to the Gasworks for the replacement boiler. Continued support of the Setlers Museum for professional advice. Urgent also is a budget allocation based on the engineer's report. Last time we did the submission, we didn't have that report, which is to be applied to enable the immediate commension of earthquake strengthening, weatherproofing and restoration of the engine house, the Anson Room, the chimbe, two-storey spaces at the end of the Anson's room and the workshop and service area. And just a very quick note to that, some parts of the building are deteriorating quite rapidly. The longer this is left, of course, the more it's going to cost to fix. And also, some areas are becoming a bit of a health and safety hazard, especially the chimbe. If bricks fall off that, as you can imagine, not a very good look. An operational budget of $50,000 per annum for a part-time administration position to be established for efficiency, coordination of all operation and effective promotion. And to consider the purchase of the adjacent Arthur Stone Builders' property, this would consolidate a larger area of DCC-owned land that would be available for community use, including Gasworks Museum expansion, storage and potentially a site for the South Dunedin Community Centre. And for the DCC to take direct responsibility for health and safety issues on the site.
Right, I stand up because I don't have that sense. Okay, so I joined, as they said, as the blacksmith because of a kind of round circular thing I did back in Ireland. So, I'm able to forge steel and hit things with a hammer very well. But outside of that, I'm a psychology and neuroscience graduate who works to improve STEM learning outcomes. So, STEM is science, technology, engineering and maths, which kind of fits in really well when I'm working in a museum that does engineering or did engineering. And I'm really interested in developing community spaces and places where we can share knowledge about, you know, the past, but also move it into the future. So, as part of my contribution to the Gasworks, which I think is fantastic, I want to develop it as a learning hub for South Dunedin. And for the rest of Dunedin too, if you want to come down, I'll even teach you how to blacksmith. So, there's a number of different things that we've developed. We are developing with a really good creative team in South Dee. We've installed gigabit fibre, so we're going to have a free gigabit hub in the Gasworks Museum that the community can come and use. We're going to start code club in South Dunedin. South Dunedin has the worst internet take-up in the country. It has the highest rate of single parent families. I want to start teaching those kids to code and I want them to be the next generation of people to bring this city into the future. Because the Gasworks is one of, you know, it was its past. It was where people came and talked and shared information and became a community. I want it to become a community place again. So, with that in mind, there's a number of different streams. It's from kids, obviously I can't take four-year-olds in and give them a hot piece of steel. I can, but it'd be dangerous. So, kids, teenagers and adults, that we're going to start opening up to the community. Now, I don't know if this thing, where will I point it, somewhere else? Oh, that way, right, that way, no? I don't know, right, we'll go to the old school version. So, we've got a number of people connected with our code club development. So, we're bootstrapping it in North East Valley right now, but I want to put it into, you know, South Dee. And when we put it into South Dee and we get our, somehow I find ten laptops, I'm going to scoop those laptops up and bring them to Cavercham and bring them to Andy Bay and bring them to Tannoy or wherever else I can bring them and do code clubs all around the South City. So, here are the kind of people that we've got involved in us. We've got Steve Ting from the Science Communication Centre. Lisa Richardson is doing all our design work. She's from the Polytech. And Amadeo Galsteros, you might know him from such hits as Blowing Stuff Up in the Octagon to, you know, his work blowing the museum. So, he's going to be doing, we're going to be doing like, you know, fire and physics blown the, in the forge. We're going to set fire to more stuff. Yeah, so all this is about building up the Gasworks as somewhere that people go and that people learn stuff when they come here. So, that's me, right, Grant.
Thank you, Anne, you can see, you can see what an asset we have. And it's an exciting future as well as working on the present. Now to focus on the long-term aims, because the Gasworks needs to secure its future as an internationally significant Gasworks museum, which it is. But of course, it needs space for its future development. We need space now, you know, for storage, for work. And also to do things properly in terms of education space and display space. And, you know, Anne needs this and we all need it and it's a benefit for South Dunedin. And, you know, Anne needs this and we all need it and it's a benefit for South Dunedin. Um, the fitting shop is fine, but it's really, um, you know, part of the museum. It's an artefact in itself. So we can't rely on that for giving us all the facilities we need. And we need more, um, public facilities and services as well. Hence the, um, aspiration to look at the property, the adjoining sites and the four, four sites there and the properties and buildings. Um, as a collaboration, um, the combined services would benefit the Gasworks. But the, that would be an excellent site for Dunedin's, South Dunedin's, uh, Community Centre of Learning, uh, including the library and the space there to spread and develop and also buildings to be adapted. And so that's, uh, you know, a long-term vision, but, um, we've had a very good meeting. Um, in fact, yesterday, Superdose, um, Kevin Taylor, Grant McKenzie. And, you know, they're very encouraging and, you know, suggested we mention the meeting to them as being something that the city should seriously look at. Um, so that's an aspiration that would save the city council money in the long term because it would prevent duplication of services that the Gasworks does need. And it could happen more quickly than, um, Gasworks working away. And every annual plan hearing for the last few years that I've been involved, it's always been, well, we can't do anything until the Settlers' Museum, um, I should say Toitu Ataga Settlers' Museum has, you know, that development is finished. It is finished. It's the Gasworks turn now. Um, so it should reach its potential. And the Southern Heritage Trust, um, the, you know, we have submitted a submission as well. And we're fully behind the Gasworks in terms of all this development. The other thing is that obviously we've got to look at staffing because we need to be open every day in the end. At the moment, it's every Saturday, every Sunday, twelve to four. So if you haven't visited, come and have another look. There's a lot going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Uh, questions? Council Hawkins, your head.
Sorry. Thank you, Worship. How positive, uh, how fortunate we are to have a positive story about young people setting stuff on fire in Dunedin before us this morning. Uh, just a question about the urgency around the earthquake strengthening. Um, this was obviously written in advance of the announcement over the weekend around the potential extension of timelines around that. Does that affect, uh, the urgency of that work?
Uh, yes, it still does. Um, we've, it doesn't mean that to say that we have to do the whole thing at once. But we've got issues lots of the chimbe. If you see, it's growing moss. Some of the bricks are getting loose. So structurally, it's still sand. It's not going to fall over and, um, take out the supermarket next door. But the trouble is, it is going to get staged. If it's left, there will be bricks falling off it. Um, the repairs will be a lot more costly because of course the more it deteriorates, the harder it is to do. So there are some parts of the building in the chimbe that do need urgent work. I wouldn't say everything has to be done all at once. But we do need to do the maintenance stuff first, which is part of the earthquake is, um, strengthening. It's really just maintaining the building. Um, so at the moment, we've got a lot of loose mortar, loose bricks. If there's earthquake, it might, of course, it'll potentially fall over.
Do you, are these listed in order of urgency? These five, or is it possible to get them listed in order of urgency?
These, um, by the engineer, these are listed as the order of priority. Um, the chimbe is probably more us looking up at the chimbe and going, oh my goodness, look at those loose bricks and look at what's happening there. Um, so that's more probably a personal opinion. Um, so the order that you see here is what was recommended through the engineer's report.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Benson-Pope.
Thank you. Um, I've got two questions. You refer to those other properties that you would like to acquire or someone else to acquire. Are you talking about the, the other small industrial buildings on the Brahma Street side? Or you was talking about the whole lot of that block? I'm just looking at the map. Um, including the one with the frontage on to Anderson's Bay Road?
No, not that far. It's Arthur Stone's properties.
The stuff adjacent to Brahma Street?
Yes, and, yeah, and the little dead-end street.
Yep, got you. Um, the other thing was, um, when the, um, when the supermarket was built, uh, there was a discussion about its orientation. And I think the final plan did, uh, make the, your museum, our museum, a little more visible than it otherwise would have been. Has the, uh, traffic around that supermarket affected you and the interest or your patronage in any way?
Not majorly, unfortunately. And when the museum and the gates are open, people use it as a shortcut more than coming into the museum.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just, the, the engineering report, which is referred to in your submission, um, my recollection is that we funded that, uh, the last annual plan. Was that right? Was that a DCC-funded? Yeah?
Um, that was the recommendation. Um, what has come up since then is at March, we're allocating fifty thousand dollars to try and maintain the building. And that's not working because the building's deteriorating. If that was brought forward and the urgent maintenance work was done earlier on, you could potentially reduce that maintenance budget. Because of course to maintain it after it's been repaired will be a lot easier than trying to repair it with a budget that's not sufficient to repair it.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, I understand that. I guess I was just seeking clarification. My recollection was last year, we felt that we couldn't consider the, any further allocation because the engineering report hadn't been completed.
That's great.
That's right. So, um, yeah, so I guess, have you guys got the copy of the full engineer's report? Or does that sit with property?
Uh, property have definitely got a copy. Well, um, I have seen it. I'm hopefully have got, I'm not sure of the full report, but I've certainly seen the summary.
Thank you.
Councilor Wilson.
Do you charge for people coming to the museum?
Unfortunately, we do at the moment. Um, oh, sorry. Um, just in the sense that we don't actually, um, have rights funding to run the museum. Um, so unfortunately, it does, it is a set of costs. Um, so because right powers aren't directly paying towards the operations of the museum, unfortunately, there is a small cost to each person.
I'd be charging people five dollars a day for adults, which, you know, is off-putting for some of the people that arrive on site. And I'm currently, I've currently brought the classes up to twice per month. So that's, I'm currently doing, I'm doing like twenty to thirty hours voluntary work a week for the museum. And all of that money is going back into, you know, all the maintenance of the museum. You know, we're all volunteers. We, you know, and we work very hard just to get it, you know, up to standard. But we need, we need a manager. We need, uh,
It wasn't, that question probably wasn't going where you thought it was going. Um, we were, talked to somebody yesterday about if, um, one of the things we could do with museums and things in Dunedin was sell tourists a, a package so as that they could visit any of the museums or something. You know, you'd pay fifty dollars and you'd be, if you're a tourist and the locals would be free or something. So we, we were just sort of teasing out whether you would then be part of that package, which presumably you would be reasonably happy to be if there was some.
Absolutely, definitely. And Southern Heritage Trust is working on bringing Dunedin's industrial heritage to the fore. And there's an opportunity to make much, much more of it. And the key site would be the Gasworks.
Councilor Pete.
Thanks very much for what you're doing out there, uh, with the Gasworks. It's, uh, it's inspiring. Um, I'm, I'm just looking at the, the Brandon Street option that, that's, uh, Arthur Stone, um, buildings. There's four titles there you said. Um, up till now, of course, you, you'll know that the focus for a, a South Dunedin community complex has been the, the retail area, the main street. Um, but you see a synergy, do you, with, with the Gasworks? And do you see enough space there to, to, to welcome people and, and?
Yeah, very definitely. And it's not far from that central, um, main street. It's only two blocks and Long Street is the direct route. So the space for, um, you know, a lot of development.
There's, there's good space there. There's also the buildings that can be reused. So heritage building sets, um, rather than paying to build a new building, you can reutilise the, um, existing stock that's there. Um, and also if there's outside functions, you've got the whole Gasworks area there, which if you have a function centre somewhere else, it won't necessarily have that. And I think the two would work together very well. So the Gasworks in some ways will be extension of the function centre and vice versa. So it would be a real synergy. And this means that you're not duplicating staff because the staff that run the, um, the South Dunedin Community Centre can also be partially running the, um, day-to-day things at the museum.
Right. Uh, is this the first time you've raised this or have you talked to council staff about?
Yeah, we have talked to council staff, but it's the first time it's been officially on this circuit, so to speak.
Thank you. Councilor Noon.
Thank you, Worship. Anne, I just had a question around your long-term, uh, or your request associated with the long-term plan and an enhanced operational arrangement with Toitu. Could you just remind me of the current operational arrangements you have with Toitu?
Yes, Sean Brosenhough, the curator, one of the curators, um, is assigned to assist the Gasworks. And he, um, genuinely is, um, very keen to do so. But unfortunately, his workload means that he isn't, hasn't got the time to do very much. So that's, that's a problem. But he's extremely helpful and useful when he is available. But it's not what was the original plan of a half-day-a-week.
Councilor Bez.
From the board on the Gas Museum as well. So there is that crossover and representation.
Yeah, from the, the Ataga Settlers' Association.
Yes.
Did you have a question as well?
Oh, yeah. Um, Anne, Sir Neil Costens, um, has declared that, uh, Dunedin Gasworks is the best remaining metropolitan gasworks in the world. Um, and that's great. And of course, it's, uh, value to our Gasworks. But what happened to the others? Because there were many others, so I believe. And because I've, I've heard Neil Costas speak on a number of occasions saying that it was one of the best. So are the, are the others not being restored?
Well, what makes ours so special is that the museum and the buildings and the machinery, the whole package is, um, still a museum and because the machinery is still working. Now, the others have been adapted to other uses and reuse and parks and using buildings, but not to tell the story of gas. So our, um, big plus is the working machinery, steam-driven. There's a world following.
Yes, that's good.
Council Wally.
Um, Anne, is the, um, are the South Dunedin community groups aware that you were looking at a community hub?
Yeah, we're negotiating at the moment, um, to try and, um, make sure we're fulfilling a need within the community. But as, as it stands, there are no, um, there are no coding, um, or there are no facilities within that area which would, um, serve what we would do for the community. So I've looked into like, um, I've talked to schools, I've talked to training facilities, um, and church groups in South D. And nobody's doing what I'm hoping to do. Um, so here's the plus. Um, I get to do it.
Anne, I would say having the cycleway going metres from your property would also be an asset?
Yeah, um, we're very interested in trying to make the site a bit greener, a bit friendlier, you know, and, uh, families so that they can, you know, come in and use it. Um, everything, well, I have great plans for putting a hundred grand worth of playground in there as well. Um, as soon as I get my heavy welding licence and can weld on the pieces. It'll be the world's most dangerous playground, um, in the world of gasworks. Um, but yeah, we, we have, um, kind of big plans that it's, it's no longer in, stuck in the past. And I suppose that's what's happened a lot of Gasworks is, you know, in, um, in, in twenty, thirty years, who's going to fix the machines? Where's the information, knowledge going to, uh, go? You know, like, we're lucky, you know, we have engineers that are boiler makers, but that's a skill that's dying. So unless we start getting more young people involved in it, um, we're not going to have people to fix, you know, to keep our steam going, um, in the future. So I, I figure the only way of doing that is, is to make, um, make ourselves a part of the community and give ourselves to the community and see what the community is back to.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilor Thompson.
Sounds like the library was the, uh, Actually, you could probably have the world's most exciting barbecue as well, which would be.
We'd be roasting whole deer.
But that wasn't, that wasn't my question. The, ha, ha, with just being open on the Sundays, have you looked at the possibility of putting packages together with the cruise ships?
Yes, we've, um, two years running, we've been attempting to break into that market. And this last season, we combined with the Ataga Heritage Bus Society. And we had organised, you know, the bus route, which, and the Gasworks was the key site. But unfortunately, um, it didn't really take off. I think we had four visitors altogether. Um, which is sad because, well, unfortunately, Dunedin's got so much offering. It's a very small market. Who would pick industrial heritage, you know, for that one day they have?
Which is why we want to broaden our scope, you know? Um, like, you know, if they did come down to the Gasworks, you know, they're not going to eat McDonald's, do you know? It's, um, you know, there's no facilities on-site for visitors. It's not like Toitu or the Ataga Museum where you can sit down and have your coffee and look at it, you know, um, well-manicured loans, you know? Uh, the Gasworks is, is making do on a, on a shoestring budget. Uh, quite literally, you know, uh, we, we make do with what we have. Um, and, you know, if we offered, um, visitors more on-site, you know, um, then we could possibly attract more visitors. But like, I spoke at the, uh, the museum to Toreya Conference last week. And museums across the country, eighty percent of their visitors are families, right? So unless we're catering to families, which, no, we're catering to a very small niche group who like steam machines, um, unless we can broaden our scope out and, and get more families in, get more children involved with, uh, learning by doing on-site, um, we, you know, we won't survive. Um, we'll go the way of other gas museums. So, um, we need to start pushing that it's, it's, it's more than just steam machines. It's, um, you know, it's a shared history of, uh, of industrialisation.
And if we broaden our scope in terms of what we're offering and combine with a much greater, um, Dunedin package, there's more hope.
Councilor Wilson.
Anne, I appreciate that you're a busy lady, but it has answered a number of pies. But you're working, this project has always sat well with Toitu. I was wondering, and you've got Amadeo from the museum there, are you working? I mean, they're looking at the Centre of Excellence in Science and Physics and, and, and that whole collaboration potential with MB funding. Um, the question is, how can we resource you guys to get the people who can apply for that funding? Because all work and collaboration, I appreciate you're all busy. But we need to ensure either with help from, uh, Enterprise Dunedin or going on the back of things like the Ataga Museum, that you're in that loop. Is it, how can we, because MB funding seems to be what you're talking about for making people more aware of science and getting engaged with science. Um, ha, ha, are those discussions happening at that museum level or not?
Yeah, I have talked to Ian Griffin about this, um, quite a lot, actually. Uh, a lot of my research was carried out below Ataga Museum. And I would take children to the museum and we'd do little experiments because that's what we do in psychology. And, and what I couldn't get over was all of the, the, the children that I would get from certain areas had never been to the museum. They'd never been there, right? And I could, you know, I'm taking a kid around the gallery, he can't tell me about a pyramid, do you know? And I'm like, wow, this is, this is really scary to me, do you know? So the museum isn't necessarily seen as somewhere that, you know what I mean? People from a certain area go to, do you know? Um, we have a museum blown South Dunedin, uh, which is an industrial heritage museum, which champions working with your hands, all the practical hands-on skills. So let's get people that way, do you know? Like, I know there's all, you know, kids will always go to the Discovery World. Fantastic, it's great what they do there. But I want to attract the kids that don't have an interest in science, that, you know, couldn't care less, um, about it.
So the question is, is that discussion, or do we need to enable it as a council level about science engagement and the roles of museums generally in Dunedin? Is that discussion taking place at a level that's, um, or do you need some resourcing or some people power helping that discussion?
We, we would like some people power to have that discussion. We would like some people power to have that discussion. We've been having a number of meetings on-site, you know, inviting the community and inviting other people to come and help us, please. But yeah, I think having like an organised, you know, sit-down with ourselves and the other museums and the university about reaching these outreach groups is long overdue.
We're receiving good cooperation, and we do cooperate with especially the Settlers' Museum, but at this stage, it's probably at that level where we have a bit more put into it, I think.
And formal acknowledgement from council would be very helpful.
Okay, no more questions. Thank you for that presentation. Very spirited and very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you for hearing us.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Has everyone got a flyer as well? Give group discount. Come along, and, you know, because I know I must be frustrating in here at times, you know. I tell you, hitting something with a hammer for a couple of hours, you'll go home and you'll be as mellow. Team visiting.
I've already sent her a text to sign up.
Okay, thanks very much, lads. Yeah, come visit us.
I think I'm next.
You're next on another subject, so we'll just wait until you've cleared that.
Get my mind around heritage precincts now.
Right, where you go.
I was anticipating being part of a group talking about heritage precincts, but I'll do my bit now. The Royal Terrace, Pitt Street and Harriet Row is, I live in Royal Terrace in a heritage house, which we love living in. The whole sort of area and residents are really concerned with the slant of the two GP plan in terms of the increasing density. Now, we're feeling that, that the aim of the plan is laudable, but there are patches, zones in Dunedin where the increasing to higher density is not appropriate. And in this case, the increase in numbers of rooms that are rentable, in fact, that's happening right through Dunedin in particular, thank you, the value of properties.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Anne, but I just, I've just got a concern that the two GP doesn't exist just yet, and I'm just not sure it's appropriate to discuss or suggest what might be in it, because it hasn't been decided by the council, let alone released or for public comment. I've got no issue with Anne talking about the issues, but I just think the two GP should just be left out of this.
My take on it is that Anne is suggesting what she would like in it, rather than what's in it, because I don't know what's in it at the moment.
Yeah.
Well, that's fine. I appreciate it's not a long-term plan issue, but I'm happy to hear your concerns, and we can take them. Happy for people to bring anything.
Oh, thank you. I take your point. The concern is that the council should be aware of the opportunities of our heritage zones. They are very distinct, and they contribute to Dunedin's character, and should be, the heritage values should be, in fact, enhanced rather than the opposite. And that the encouragement should be for owners, occupiers, to look after and buy these homes in order to preserve Dunedin's heritage for the future. So I think that's my tenor, rather than the values going up and up and up because of the ratable value as being the, you know, the driver, rather than the protection. And we'd encourage council, and we're very keen to work collaboratively with council in terms of finding ways of strengthening these heritage values, and perhaps working out a model that would benefit the city. And we are the heritage capital of New Zealand, and we need to retain that status and do all we can.
Are there any questions? Thank you for bringing that to our attention. As councillor Benson Pope said, it's not strictly a long-term plan issue, but it impacts to some extent on various aspects of it, so we take it into account.
Thank you. So that was short and sweet. Shorter than I anticipated.
Now, Mr Cowan, Mr Merrillies. Welcome. Next ten minutes are yours.
Right. We can't offer you a bulk discount, but we can offer you free entry to the Caledonian Ground any Saturday.
Right. Can you move that mic round? It's quite sensitive. So as you each use it, if you just grab it.
Right. We have read through the consultation document, and there are some very specific items in it to do with sport and recreation, the museum funding, the therapeutic pool, the cricket lighting, peninsula cycleways, for example, but we don't see any evidence of an overarching plan for sport and recreation. For the last fifteen years or so, athletics has been involved in the Logan Park Development Consultation Group, and there's been years of talking and discussing and planning and postponing. But despite the amount of publicity and the amount of investment in assets such as the stadium and Moana Pool, the real jewel in Dunedin's crown is Logan Park. It's by far the most valuable sporting and recreation asset in the city in terms of numbers of users, the range of sports, accessibility to the public, its versatility, and its attractiveness. And it's also debt-free, was provided by our forefathers for the benefit of future generations. But it's also remarkably absent from the draft long-term plan. Not having a cohesive plan and a broad-based consultation process for an asset like Logan Park, to me, is quite dangerous. There's a danger of one-off developments without adequate consultation with other users. There's a danger that the DCC staff themselves will become the decision-makers on developments by default. There's a danger that the area will not continue to be enhanced to optimise use, and there's a danger that the area will not be kept up with ever-changing health and safety requirements. Now, Athletics Atago is based at Logan Park, and it's the hub of a number of sports, but athletics particularly is very, very strongly based at Logan Park, as are participants in our sport. We attract a lot of competition to Dunedin, and competitions in turn mean bringing people to the city, which in turn means bringing dollars to the city. This coming summer, for example, we are hosting the New Zealand Track and Field Champs, the New Zealand Masters Games Athletics, sorry, the New Zealand Masters Athletics Champs, the New Zealand Masters Games, the New Zealand Children's Interprovincial Champs, the South Island Athletics Champs, the South Island Secondary School Athletics Champs, all of those coming to the Caledonian Ground and one or two other ones. We are caught up in changing health and safety requirements right now that puts our ability to host these events at some risk. Now, throwing nets are no longer compliant with IAAF regulations, and our throwing warm-up and training area is unsafe. It's not caged, it's not fenced to keep the public out, and it lacks a proper throwing surface. It's clear to us that we need a forum in which we can discuss issues like this with other users and with the DCC. And it's also clear that we need access to financial assistance, because we cannot afford on our own to finance significant improvement to what is a public asset. We ask, therefore, that the Logan Park Development Consultation Group continues into the future, and that the DCC makes financial provision for the ongoing development of the park for all users. And that's all I've got. Happy to take questions.
councillor Wally.
Bruce, thank you. Have you had any discussion with John Brimble at Sport Atago?
Absolutely, frequently.
And? Because I understand he's coming to present on sports facilities and...
We've had long-term discussions over many years about the development of Logan Park, and a lot of those have been in conjunction with Sport Atago. John and I have frequent discussions about what our needs are and what the needs of other sports are, but without a framework to put it in, we're sort of lost. We're in the dark.
Okay. You've definitely got a strong calendar coming forward.
Absolutely. And into the next three or four years as well.
Okay. Is athletics growing in Dunedin?
It depends how you measure it. Athletics is a very strong sport in terms of numbers of participants, in terms of members that join clubs and pay. No, we're like other sports and no declining in numbers.
Okay.
For one-off events, we have huge numbers of participants.
councillor Bezir.
Groups to be able to share their concerns about the redevelopment or proposed redevelopment of Logan Park?
Yes, there are. And those groups were represented on the Logan Park Consultation Group, was particularly groups like tennis, like hockey, football. Still have trouble saying it, soccer.
Yes, I was part of that group myself, and I just wonder if just where, if there are still members that are wanting to develop the project along the lines that you're advocating.
At the present time, we're in a bit of a limbo, I suspect. We need to develop a safe warm-up and training area outside the Caledonian Ground for throwing. The costing for that is looking like it's going to be around about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The ideal venue for it is currently used by football. It's the base for Atago University Soccer Club. So it's a matter of negotiating, of working out what is the best use of that piece of land, if we can share the use adequately. But most importantly for us, it's a matter of making our activities safe. And at the current time, they're not.
Thank you. councillor McTavish.
Thank you. Thank you for your submission. A couple of questions. Firstly, the advice that we had from staff was that there was additional time needed to do exactly what you're discussing, which is, or what you've highlighted the need for, which is ongoing discussions with stakeholders before the plan was finalised. Has that been communicated to stakeholders, or do you have a concern with that proposed approach?
I haven't had any communication about that.
Right.
No.
And my second question is, if, do you guys feel as Athletics Atago that you're able to have discussions with people like football outside of any formal arrangement? Or do you feel that that formal discussion group is necessary to enable those conversations to happen?
What we're dealing with is the use of a public asset. Logan Park is a public asset, so it's not for us to decide that we will use it. It's not for us to reach an agreement with Football South over the use of a piece of land. We need an open forum where we can discuss with all of the stakeholders the use of a piece of land, and then have a decision made by the DCC about that.
So when was the last time that you met as a group to discuss those issues?
The last time that we met was three months ago. It wasn't as a consultation group, it was an open forum organised by Sport Atago to look at where the plan had got to, and to hear about some of the proposals from the different sports for the area.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions, councillors? Okay, we'll get underway again. Mr Oaten. Welcome.
Good morning. Two points first. One is I'm close to being profoundly deaf, so you'll just have to say it for throwing tomatoes. The other is I've got a throat infection, so my voice may or may not hold up. So I'll just read it as it is. During the Christmas hiatus, I spent time with local businesspeople and a former councillor discussing the powerless financial state of the DCC and DCHL conglomerate. We decided to investigate the community bank model currently being successfully implemented overseas, and after some deliberation and further research, I had now put forward what I think is a viable proposal. I trust that will be given due consideration and not casually disregarded without proper discussion or consultation. It is proposed that the DCC set up a trading bank, known as the Dunedin Citizens Bank, or Dunedin Community Bank, hereafter known as The Bank. This would be structured as a standalone operation, fully chartered and bounded by a constitution. It would be founded along fiscally prudent and comparatively conservative lines, and the constitution would enshrine that. The constitution would state that, one, the bank would totally, would remain totally and utterly independent from DCC, DCHL, RRC, or any other local authority entity, with no management or direction being under any outside influence. Two, no person in its employ or in any managerial or directorial capacity shall have any personal or business connection with nor influence over any of the DCC councillors, staff and administration, nor with Dunedin City Holdings Group of companies. Three, with regard to the practice of fractional reserve creation of credit, a conservative ratio of not less than twenty per cent to be held as deposits, collateral, as a minimum tangible level, and the fractional reserve ratio is never to be exceeded. Four, further, whatever amount of capital is committed to the fractional reserve credit creation, an additional ten per cent shall be held as physical gold bullion as a hedge reserve. As the amount varies up and down, so shall the bullion be adjusted. If the spot price of gold were to lower, then more shall be purchased to reserve parity. Conversely, if the price should arise, then the appropriate portion may be converted to cash or conserved as an added reserve. This would in effect balance the effects of inflation. The bank's main function would be to handle all cash transactions of both the DCC and DCHL under normal banking terms. In return, the bank would undertake to fund the DCC and DCHL's term debts on the terms most favourable within the bank's constitutional framework. Now, on the assumption that the present consolidated debt is rounded around down to six hundred million, for the sake of mathematical clarity, and is currently attracting interest at five per cent, this requires the parties to pay pro rata thirty million per annum interest only. If, on the other hand, the bank was to assume this debt, and if it was to abide by its own conditions of twenty per cent fractional lending ratio, it would be required to hold the equivalent of one hundred and twenty million, plus the bullion hedge of twelve million for a total of three hundred and thirty-two million. Add a contingency cash flow sum of eight million, and the capitalisation of the bank required would be a hundred and forty million. So how could this be effected? First, the Waipori Fund cashed up would realise about seventy million, and incidentally, satisfy divestment problems and ethics. And the sale of non-strategic properties could easily realise another seventy million. The Atago Community Trust could possibly be invited to invest. All it would require is the initiative. Once the bank is set up and running, then it could assume the debt by issuing credit to the full actual amount of one hundred and six hundred and twenty million. If both borrowing parties accepted, that they would continue to pay pro rata the thirty million dollars per annum. million dollars per annum. But because the bank does not have to make substantial profits, it could settle for covering the loan servicing only. The bank's operational costs and profits would be derived from its general banking services. Maybe we could look at three options, A, B, and C as examples. 600 million where A is based at 2.5%, whilst B is 1.25%, and C is zero. The balances of the 30-plus million per annum would be for capital reduction. Based on standard term loan amortisation rates, we see that the following outcomes could be achieved. Option A would take 28 years, B would take 23 years, and C, 20 years to discharge fully. Obviously, this is only an example of the possible. In reality, the group's credit accommodation requirements would vary from time to time as needs were identified, but the general thrust would be towards debt reduction by disciplined governance, a monumental change to the two groups' budgets. The conservative ratios of credit creation would imply more discipline required on the part of the DCC, but in the case of DCHL, if the bank is unable to meet its immediate needs, then as independent traders, they would be free to seek accommodation elsewhere at whatever rates are going. In the case of the DCC, its budgeting would need to become more circumspect and possibly include the deferment of projects. As it is at present, all budgets over recent times have been of the spend, extend, defend, and pretend model. This, in effect, is spend it now, extending the time of the debt, defend the actions, and then pretend that all is under control, while the citizens suffer rates and charges escalating way beyond inflation. Not a good recipe for sustained economic or community growth, nor maintenance of the city's general wellbeing. Benefits. First and foremost, the bank, being community-owned, would not be required to be profit-driven, as is the case with current traditional banks owned by universal shareholders. Instead, the bank would be in the position of first deciding what is in the best interest of the citizens' shareholders when assessing its credit dispensing decisions. So instead of exporting vast sums of credit of interest monies out of the city via the largely overseas-owned banks, this interest money would remain in the city's money churn. The ability to fund debt at more competitive rates would be due to the shareholders, the ratepayers, getting rates and charges benefits in lieu of dividends. If, after a period of dividend bedding in, I see no reason why the bank ought not offer normal banking services to local businesses and the citizens, the only stipulation would be that they are Dunedin-owned businesses and that they maintain their headquarters in Dunedin. Outside domiciled businesses would not qualify. House mortgages could become available to citizens provided the property concern was within the city limits. Who knows what this would do to the city over the next 40 or 50 years? Worth considering? I think so. If the council really wants to progress, if councillors were serious new intent to reduce the city's debt, then they could do no better than to read the book, Public Bank Solution by Alan Brown. It is available from Amazon Kindle at $8.31 US. I thank you for the opportunity to put forward these proposals, and their copies are made available for each and every one of you, which I gave to the kind lady here.
Thank you, Mr Oaten. Are you happy to take questions? Are you happy to take questions?
Well, I'll try, but I've got a problem.
Yep. Any questions, councillors? councillor Van Der Wiss.
I get the idea that the bank wouldn't have to make a profit, and that that could end up being a benefit to Dunedin, and that we would no longer be exporting Dunedin dollars overseas to the banks that we currently make rich with our 600 million dollar debt, whatever. But who would you get to run the bank if it's not to be anyone from DCC, RRC, whatever? Who would actually run the bank?
Bank management, independent, but parochial. It must be parochial. And there's any amount of instances around the world. Germany, most regions in Germany have their own public banks, hence it's one of the most sound economies in Europe. In the United States of America, there are 53 states. There's only one state that is not bankrupt, literally bankrupt, and that is North Dakota, a small state with a population of around about 600-odd thousand. They've got the North Dakota Public Bank. It was formed in 1990 for the exact same purpose of what I'm suggesting here, to give people independence and control from the use of standard banks. When you've got 600-odd million debt plus attracting interest, I quote 5%, and that's very conservative, I suspect the interest is more like between 6.5% and 7% in real terms. It's a burden that the city will never get out from under, could never get out from under. And that's about it.
Right. Thank you, Mr Oaten. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Laura Black. Welcome, Laura.
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to talk to you today on behalf of the mission. The mission acknowledges the significant financial stressors that council faces over the term of the plan. You're close to being snookered by the stadium debt. Commitment ratepayers, of course, demand for CPI-indexed rate increases, a stagnant, if not declining, Dunedin economy, and a local body rate of inflation that can run at double that of the CPI. So you look that you need a trick shot at some point here, and unfortunately, and please accept that it was a great sense of regret that I come here today to try and make that worth. There are thousands of homes in the city boundaries, on coastal plains, reclaimed swamps, or close to tidal rivers, that will have a very damp fate indeed, at least at high tide, within a single generation. And this is not a secret known only to a few. The UK Guardian and Independent, the New Zealand Herald have all reported within the last few months on how sea level rise driven by climate change is now expected to occur more rapidly than previously forecast. And of course, infrastructure challenges for something like this takes years to enact. Yet this challenge is nowhere to be seen in the long-term plan. And I know it's in the almost impossible basket, and I know the cost associated with doing anything about it will have to be driven and met by central government, and yes, believe me, I have seen how central government does or does not work. But we need to start thinking about this seriously now, and I believe council should include it in the LTP. Secondly, one of the conditions already known for pinning council to the mat is the city's low population growth and low average wage compared to the national. Whilst council is to be congratulated on its support for the recent GigaTown win, unfortunately, that by itself is not enough. And as one of the city's major social service providers, I would say to you that the greatest social wellbeing policy you could enact would be to aggressively pursue economic development in the city. Yet the LTP document mentions economic growth only once. My plea to you is that this needs fixing. And finally, as you know, we have been longstanding supporters of the proposed South Dunedin Community Complex, and I understand that in some quarters this is now felt to be somehow in competition for the council's limited supply of capital development funds with the superbly well-organised campaign for a swimming complex in Mozgill. And kudos to them, they've done well. And it would be easy, with local democracy some kind of reality TV show or popularity contest, to see that the South Dunedin complex might be the weakest link or somehow undeserving of The Bachelor's Last Rose. And of course, there is the Central Library just a few bus stops away. But at just under five bucks for a return trip across two zones, a weekly visit to the Central Library is 260 bucks a year of extra expense for a single adult. For a family with two children and one adult, it balloons to around 550 a year. With 60% of South Dunedin households getting by on an average household income of $20,000 a year, that's not a solution, it's a barrier. Of course, alternatively, families could drive into town, except that nearly 40% of South Dunedin residents have no access to a personal vehicle, they don't own one, they have no access to one. And it's not a free trip, with central city parking costs running at a weekly library visit of one hour to around 150 bucks a year. And we might all sit here and think that that doesn't sound like a lot. It only took nine months from when the government raised the cost of prescription fees from $3 to $5 just two years ago, for the Herald to report that prescription medicines dating back three months are piling up in Northland pharmacies as a result. A couple of bucks a week is enormous on an average household income of 20 grand a year. And of course, without trying to sound a tall snarky about this, Mozgill does have a library. So South Dunedin is widely acknowledged to have the least invested in it for public spaces and amenities of all of Dunedin's major suburbs. It is also widely acknowledged to be the most socio-economically deprived part of the entire South Island. Investment is urgently required, and the evidence for widespread beneficial, social and economic, and dare I say it even, business benefits from the building of public libraries is strong. Council investment in a South Dunedin community complex will bear fruits for the residents and the businesses of South Dunedin and the wider city, and the mission strongly supports the proposal to build it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Laura. Questions, councillor Calvert.
I'm interested in what you were hoping for as an aggressive economic development idea.
Wow. Why should we start with the easy one?
Just because I completely get the other stuff you're saying, but I just didn't know what you were hoping for in that regard.
I don't have a particular solution. My specialty is social services. But you have a 10-year long-term plan that uses the words 'economic development' once in reference to GigaTown, which is done and dusted. It's not enough. We need, you know, one of our major problems as a city is we've got over 1,000 young people not in education, employment, and training, because there are no entry-level jobs. Three largest employers in town are the university, the DHB, and council. You've got to be in your late twenties with a tertiary qualification to start work in any of our major employers. We need to find a way to support and bring boutique businesses here. And maybe the simplest part of it is rather than having the TV1 programme on Sunday night with the usual student colourful antics in the north end, we should find ways to start telling stories about firms that are doing an extraordinarily good job here, providing new jobs, providing an economic benefit for the city. Maybe it's as simple as branding to attract other businesses here, maybe it's as simple as an extension, Upstart on Steroids 2.0. There are places that do this, we do not seem to be looking to it. Yeah?
Laura, how would you like to see GigaTown work in South Dunedin?
I'd like to see it partner with the schools. I totally agree with, and I'm going to quote him without his permission here, Ian Taylor, who in a Radio New Zealand spot was talking about if we can get into the schools and introduce some basic coding, if we can get past the infrastructure costs for families where a laptop costs, I don't know, 14, 1500 dollars, but a Chromebook costs 300 dollars, and you can run a Chromebook with high-speed internet really easily. If we can start raising that minimum skill level of what unskilled is, start building that workforce, I'd really like to see us doing some of those sorts of things. From my perspective, I understand that there are far wider business interests, and I don't want to cut any of them off, but from the perspective of the mission, getting into those South Dunedin schools, raising what is unskilled, introducing that. Well, one of the main problems in primary schools is you've got a lot of people who've done a humanities degree, picking up the one-year post-grad teaching diploma on top. There's not a lot of STEM subjects, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, getting exposure at primary and early secondary school. We need to do something about that if we want to give those kids an alternate future.
Thanks, Laura. Couple of questions. Firstly, in relation to South Dunedin Library.
Yep.
Do you have any perspectives on location for that facility?
Well, probably slightly above the current ground level, given the first topic of my submission, I have to say. You've got all of your standard issues around parking and access for public transport in South Dunedin is what it is, but I would say actually it's more important to have it there than to get an absolutely precise location. Sometimes perfect is the enemy of good enough. South Dunedin's been waiting for this for a long time. Surely we can find somewhere that is good enough.
So if you had a choice, though, would you be looking Main Street, or is that not so important?
I think the Main Street's pretty congested, to be honest. I think you've got some access issues, and the driving is imaginative on the best days. I'd be looking for slightly back from the main drag, that bit between Hillside Road and McCandrew on Kenwood. You want to be slightly out from there.
Okay. Yeah. Second question, in relation to the first chunk of your submission. We have a corporate policy team which does have a lot on its plate, but one of the things that it is doing is, excuse me, some work particularly around South Dunedin, looking at the impacts of climate change. They've had an initial assessment come in looking at the issue, I guess, and whether or not there are technical responses to that.
Yeah.
There is a second piece of work which they've said needs to be done, looking at softer approaches and community-based responses.
Yeah.
Before there is a conversation with the community, well, I guess they'll be having initial conversations as part of that first phase. What else would you like to see? Would you like, is what you're asking for, to see that piece of work given a higher profile, bolstered, or are you looking for capital?
Good Lord, no.
Yeah, so question, what is it?
Well, first of all, I think you need to expand your remit, because of course, the Tyree Plain has got a tidal river attached to it. My understanding from the Institute of Surveyors is that they regard part of Mozgill as being as at-risk as South Dunedin. You've got Adamuana, you've got Harrington Point, so it's, there are, it's not just the 8, 9,000 people, 4, 5,000 homes in South Dunedin on the flat. There are, it's a far broader population. I think it's a bit like Auckland Transport. This is an issue that is going to require a partnership between central and local government to address, and from central government's perspective, Dunedin's not going to be the only local territorial authority staring down the barrel of what to do about these things. If you're in Patoni in Lower Hut, you've got the same basic questions sitting there. I would have thought at this point advocacy with central government and other local bodies around looking towards a shared strategy, shared solutioning would be smart. There are international examples, you know, the Dutch used to build walls against the sea, now they're doing managed retreat. There are international best practices to tap into. Rather than looking for just Dunedin to solve it, I think we should be looking at this nationwide, and I'd have been in the first instance encouraging the Dunedin City Council to be knocking on the minister's door, liaising with your colleagues and other LTA's to build up a head of steam on this. Yep?
On the same subject, have you cited the bigger report that was commissioned by council 12, 18 months ago, near or thereabouts, with the focus on the impact of climate change and sea level rise in particular on the South Dunedin?
No.
It's with the reading.
Cool. How do I get it?
I'll get it through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll keep things brief. I understand you've got a long day ahead of you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to our submission. First and foremost, we're supportive of the way council has responded to the legislative changes around long-term planning consultation. We think that consultation document is good, it spells out the key areas of public feedback in an informative manner, and in a way that makes it clear what council's preferences and options are. And the supporting information is there on the website if you need to dig into detail. So that's been very useful. We also agree with the overall strategic intent of the plan. The council will seek to achieve an appropriate balance, enabling progress with restraint. You've been through three years of much-needed cost-cutting and internal review, and the challenge now is to push forward while continuing to bear in mind the impact that spending decisions will have on rates. We feel there could be a bit more of a nuanced discussion around council's role in providing for the progress part of that objective, particularly in terms of economic development. Every long-term plan or any panier, there is a very robust discussion around what new initiatives council should be funding, or what additional levels of service council needs to provide. It's good to have that discussion, but it's also... It's good to have that discussion, but it's also clear that council and council alone is going to have to be responsible for pushing back on some of those expectations and for finding those priorities for spending. Otherwise, we'll go back to that situation of five percent, six percent, seven percent rates increases. So we support your efforts in finding, continuing to find operational spending and prioritising those capital expenditure. The financial strategy imposes a three percent rates increase limit unless there are exceptional circumstances. A defined limit on rates increases is a good basis to inform those discussions with the community around what the priorities should be. One question we have around the proposed rate cap is what may be considered exceptional circumstances, and the LTP doesn't explain that very well. We have an example this year with the proposed Forsyth Bar refinancing and reduced DCHL income, but that sort of thing could pop up every year, and some sort of criteria around, and discussion with the community around what those exceptional circumstances are, would be quite useful. So we'd actually prefer either a hard rates cap set at three percent to enable those discussions, or something that is slightly above three percent but still defined with a standard three percent increase expected. The LTP outlines some challenges for council in terms of infrastructure investment, particularly over the next three years with the proposal to increase investment with a view on getting on top of the backlog by 2021. The first year, this will be the first year that investment exceeds the amount of renewals due, and you'll be refining cost assumptions and trying to find some, trying to close that gap over that period. I think this is a reasonable approach. We're supportive of the appropriate investment in infrastructure now, which over a longer period of time saves money. We agree with council's proposal to increase spending in infrastructure over the next ten years, because if you don't do it, no one else will. In terms of rating, we support the proposed change to the differential applied to farmland to zero point eight by this year, and the proposal to review the relative differential levels in fifteen, sixteen, and we'd appreciate being part of that discussion. This differential change appropriately recognises the fact that a large proportion of council rating is based on capital value and places a large cost on farming community irrespective of whether or not those farmers are benefiting from the expenditure. The additional area of review we'd seek is the annual increase in the community services rate. As we've outlined in our submission, between 2007 and 2015, the capital value-based general rate take has increased by nearly eighty percent. The community services rate has increased by just under twenty-one percent. The result is an increase in the reliance on capital value-based rates over that time. We'd prefer the community service rate as benchmarked to fund a set proportion of particular community services activities, with the rate increasing in line with the expenditure in those activities. Finally, we support the proposed amendment to the current policy for remission on rates for extreme financial hardship to include lifestyles and farmers. The relief on criteria make it clear that this is not a remission policy for businesses. It's an ambulance at the bottom of the cliff measure, and the policy is clear that a remission is only available where the rate payer is demonstrably unlikely to have sufficient funds left over to pay for healthcare, rates, maintenance of their home or normal day-to-day living expenses. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'll take any questions then.
Well, David, I'll kick off. If, going back to your comments about economic development investment, if a desirable economic development initiative were identified and the consensus arrived on its appropriateness and its efficacy, would you support, and it required investment, would you support a rates increase to fund it?
That's a very big question, because I think it has to go back to a sort of stock take on what council's involvement is versus the other industry, the good bodies that are turning up each and every asking for money. It starts there and then goes through a strategy of prioritisation, and then looks at what the cost impacts of that. And if you go through all that and you get to a good outcome, then yes, I think there is clearly a role for local government and economic development, but it's more of an enabling role than is expected generally from most of the people that turn up looking for money.
Yeah, it was a bit slow. It was a bit slow. David, I was just asking about your, we had a meeting here, you and I, on councillor Staines and the Rates Working Party a few years ago, and we had a discussion there about the community service rate, and it was quite evident that for a long number of years that hasn't really caught up, and meaning putting a greater burden on the general rate pass. Do you think there's a way, would you like to elaborate on your suggestions that we link it to particular payments and how we could do that?
So what other councils do is they say that a uniform charge of this nature or a uniform targeted rate will fund a specific proportion of particular activities. And that means that in any given year, say, parks and reserves might be funded ten percent through the community services rate. And if you don't have that, and I understand the CSR is benchmarked against, it might even be the consumer prices index or something similar, so it generally increases between one and two percent year on year over a period of time. That shifts the costs onto the capital value rate. And that's, effectively, that is one of the things that the differential changes you've been through is seeking to address as well. So it could be, as part of that differential review, having a look at CSR and looking at how that would work. But I think if you look at most other councils, and they usually use a uniform annual general charge rather than a uniform targeted rate, there is a distinction there, but it's funding a set proportion of the activities associated of that. And that way you benchmark the costs against the overall group cost.
And then what those things should go on.
Yep. In our perspective, is that enables, you know, if you've got people turning up saying they want to spend fifty percent more on parks and reserves this year, then they get some cost impact from that expectation.
Councillor Calvert, you had a question too?
The effect of putting up the general part, the community services part of the rates, has the effect on the poorest people, effectively, the poorest rate payers. And I can see the point of what you're doing. And that means that the people who would pay the highest other part of their rates don't go up so high, but it does mean the Agnes in South Dunedin paying her rates is paying more. Would you be, is it inherent in what you're saying that you would then be looking at what we're spending on community services and trying to keep them within reasonable expectations rather than, is that part of it?
Yeah, I think there's two parts. There's the, you know, if that cost position is apparent to people who are turning up and asking for things, expenditure should be higher, then that is one part of it. But also, you can target the Agnes in South Dunedin who, you know, may be on limited income, no assets and really struggling. You can target those people through rates remission policies or central government's rates rebate scheme. And that's, you know, the underlying principle is that property values have some relative reflection of ability to pay, and that's not the case particularly between different rate payer categories. So you might have, there might be a relatively good correlation between rate payers, residential rate payers and the value of their houses and their ability to pay, but not between, you know, comparing farmers versus residential rate payers. So you target that relief. But yeah, so the other argument is, as a rule, if you've got groups of rate payers turning up and saying we want more of this, then it's a good idea that they're aware of how much that cost is creating for the council.
Councillor Hawkins, you had a point, a question?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, David, and it's heartening to hear of your membership's commitment to environmental practice and responsible management of environmental issues. It's something that we take quite seriously here too, and I'm just wondering, in your opinion, where does mitigating and adapting to the impacts of climate change fit into the schematic of core business outlined in 1.6, Three Waters Roading, Representation or Resource Management Planning, which federated farmers outline as the only thing essentially that council should be doing, otherwise looking for someone else to do it?
I didn't say it was the only thing you should be doing.
Oh, sorry. Where an activity does not relate to the Three Waters Roading, Representation or Resource Management Planning, federated farmers consider the primary question for council is who else can or should be delivering?
And that goes back to the discussion around whether council plays an enabling role or delivery role. But in terms of climate change infrastructure, again, unless the central government's going to step in, the council has a responsibility to assess what the impact's going to be and then develop infrastructure accordingly.
It's not quite, infrastructure isn't quite what I was, mitigation and adaptation isn't quite.
You're talking about social impacts?
I'm talking about everything.
So...
How do we, mitigation is reducing it happening, and adapting is dealing with it once it's happened.
I think mitigation has to be focused around your own, council's own contribution. I think you can't have separate TLAs developing their own climate change mitigation policies unless that's for what they're going to be doing themselves. I don't think it's going to work otherwise. I'm not sure where you're going with your question. Is there some, you feel that council should be advocating for certain things or...
No, I'm just trying to get a handle on what federated farmers see as the role of this local authority in mitigating and adapting to climate change, just apropos of what you outlined as our core business in your submission.
I think adapting to is the core business. Mitigating, well, that's a discussion for you to have, how much you think you're contributing to the cause.
As long as we're both having that conversation, I'm comfortable.
Yeah. I see where you're going, and yes, there is a discussion around what agriculture should be doing around climate change. It's a fine line between adapting, making sure that there are reasonable things in place to adapt or to reduce the primary sector's contribution to climate change, and making sure the primary sector can still produce. So it's, yeah, I take your point. It's something that we're going to have to have a conversation with over government in the years to come.
Councillor Benson-Pope?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd just like to go back a step, that issue aside. Are you telling us that federated farmers has policy acknowledging the reality of climate change and the need to confront its issues and to adapt?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
So for your national organisation, and this is a submission from a national lobby group after all.
Yes, it is.
The policy of federated farmers is that climate change in New Zealand is real and needs to be addressed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Have come to the end of the questions now. Thank you, David.
Yes.
Appreciate your submission.
Now, I think Ms Davidson is here, Meg. Welcome. Welcome, Meg.
Ah, thank you, David. And thank you all for the opportunity to come and speak to you today. I've done a quick sort of, well, not a rethink of my submission, but I think it has become suddenly more relevant since Sunday night's documentary. I've lived in Cargill Street in the past, and I now live in the student area, and I know more than I would like to know about the mess and the social disorder that, you know, inhabits that area on a regular basis. I see the council and other concerned parties are now considering measures like amenity planting to instill a sense of pride among the students. It might help, but I believe the problems are historical and they're brought about by a perfect storm of social and urban planning circumstances, or rather, a lack of urban planning. Without careful urban planning, the council could see exactly the same scenario played out in City Rise. Most of my submission covers the nature of the built environment, but I know now that that time is short, so I'll try and fast-track over the bits that now seem less relevant. I own a house in City Rise. For me, this is not an investment, but it's an area that I love and it's where I intend to end my days if I can. And you'll see there a photo of my house in Bishop's Road and an old historical photo taken from the top of this very building in eighteen eighty-one that shows it shortly after it was built, six years after it was built. It was built in eighteen seventy-five, and it's still there, and I'm restoring it. This fascinating Dunedin suburb is one of Dunedin's oldest. It's really part of the inner city. It's less than ten minutes' walk to the octagon for most parts of it, unfortunately a bit further, a bit longer to get back up. It lies well to the sun and it has fantastic views, and it's packed with history. I've given you two photos there, one of, you can see St Joseph's Cathedral. The part of City Rise I'm most concerned about, or that I live in anyway, is across the other side of Rattray Street, south of Rattray Street. And you can see there Hogwarts, which used to be the Bishop's Palace. It was there even before, it was there when my house was built, and before the cathedral was built even. And you'll see also the stables attached to the Bishop's Palace, and they're now run as part of Hogwarts. There's also a primary school and several childcare facilities, but the rest of the suburb is residential. And the proposals of the long-term plan will have a big impact here. There's a lot to gain and there's also a lot to lose. Most of the houses are Victorian and Edwardian even now, and there's a great diversity of housing types. There are some grand residences, wouldn't say exactly mansions, but, you know, people with considerable resources who wanted to make a statement. There are also very substantial and self-respecting terraced townhouses, which I've also taken a photo of there. And there are also more modest homes, and many of them have been built with a lot of pride. They're solid and they've lasted. And it's noteworthy that many have been built with brick party walls, indicating that people even in those days expected this to be a fairly high-density suburb of Dunedin. I'd like to congratulate the council, and particularly Glenn Hazelton, on its advocacy for heritage, and it's had such wonderful results already in the warehouse precinct. I know the next item on the agenda is Prince's Street, and I'm looking forward to seeing a similar revitalisation there, and I expect that there will be a flow-on effect to nearby parts of City Rise. It could and should become a more desirable place to live as a result than it is now. In the long-term plan, this area is earmarked for further intensification of housing, and I do support this. And below, I've got some examples of how with good design, new buildings can fit in quite well. Now, you see the left-hand picture is, shows four little houses in a row. They're all very, very different in style and also period, but, you know, they form a homogeneous whole and they're bang right up against each other. That's quite high-density housing. And you'll see in the right-hand picture, the left-hand house is a house, a small townhouse built maybe in the nineteen seventies and eighties, I'm not sure when, but in form and scale, it fits in very well with that built environment. That is one family, that's one dwelling on the site, but you could easily see that you could make two or three flats on that, on that site, and it would be quite good living. Now, something must have been demolished to build that house. I don't know what was there before, but sometimes demolition is not the best option. It's tragic if the unique heritage of an area is lost in the process. And I'd like you to have a look at Sarah outside her house that she's renting in Adam Lane, which I'm sure is an area that many of you may not have even been aware of its existence. It's a little pocket of, a collection of maybe ten tiny little cottages all jammed together, higgledy piggledy, off Russell Street. Now, Sarah says it's a great place to live. The roof leaks, she says, it doesn't get a lot of sun, but everybody's very happy there, which just goes to show that there's more to good planning and good housing than insulation. I won't go into the details of why I think people might like to live there, but it's all... I won't go into the details of why I think people might like to live there, but it's all wealth, you can, you can probably imagine. It's got a lot of character. It's, it abuts onto more or less the town belt, at least there's a sort of a woodland area. You can get down to Myri Road from it. And they've all got little private back gardens, which, which you need a bit of privacy. And as Sarah said to me, once we lose our heritage, it's gone forever. I'm not saying that everything old is good. And some of the old houses in City Rise, there really isn't much left to save. But if you knock down an old building, you should put something better in its place. And better means more than insulated. It also means congruence with its surroundings. And I'm glad standards of design will be applied to new buildings under the LTP. And the examples I've given below, how not to do it. These buildings would not be accepted under the LTP and a good thing too. The one on the left is in, I think Duncan Street, I think Duncan Street. The one on the right is the bottom of Cargill Street, which is out of my area, but I'm just giving it to you as an example of what could happen if planning and quality are left in the hands of developers. This, this, it's a collection of a building made for studio rooms, nothing but studio rooms. It's only a few years old and you can see already holes have been knocked in the, the road frontage, the fence along the road frontage. And it's just not looking and, you know, it looks like a slum already. This is a new slum in the making and we do not want this sort of thing in City Rise. We can learn a lot from the slum that is our student area. It's facile to blame alcohol for the way the area gets trashed every week. Other societies drink more than us and they don't have these problems. The factors of the perfect storm that has created these conditions in the student area, I believe, are high population density, people living in accommodation they don't feel a connection with and don't appreciate. And most importantly, the student area is very homogeneous. Nearly all the residents who live there are young people in flatting situations. From their peer group, they get very little condemnation of their behaviour. They would never act like that at home. And they would never live, act like that if they lived in a suburb alongside families, elderly people and friendly homeowners over the back fence who, who expect a normal civilised behaviour of them. And the reluctance here for City Rise, which already has a lot of cheap rental accommodation, by all means increase the population density. And I do support that because, you know, we've all got to get used to doing without our cars and you can walk very easily to the city centre from there. But you have to make sure that the new housing is of a high standard and by that I don't mean expensive, just well-designed. And that will help to engender a pride in the residents. And you must retain what heritage is left, so they will be grounded in their community. Most of all, you must encourage a diversity of housing that attracts a diversity of people. As part of residential intensification, the council proposes to require less off-street parking for new dwellings. I agree we should be less dependent in our cars, but to make it happen, the council needs to be proactive and giving us viable alternatives for getting around. The DCC has to take over public transport from the ORC and overhaul it to suit the needs of all types of residents. Living in a hill suburb with no shops, which City Rise now has, is difficult without a car. For a family, given the present Dunedin bus service, after-school activities and weekend sport would be impossible without a car. An elderly neighbour of mine, that's in City Rise, has been basically forced out of the area by the disappearance of nearby shops, the last one has just closed, and changes to the bus route. Abandoning City Rise to a few groups of people, young renters whose lifestyle works without a car and people already marginalised who don't have a car only because they can't afford one, would be disastrous. For a suburb to be healthy, it needs a diversity of people living there. So in summary, I support residential, residential intensification in City Rise. I believe the proposed introduction of design standards for new buildings is essential to retain the character of the suburb, one of the city's oldest and most interesting, to foster pride in the community, a link with our roots and a sense of belonging. I urge the Dunedin City Council to take responsibility for public transport, to make living in City Rise a viable option for all sectors of society. I think it's, it's absolutely, you know, completely germane and of a piece with urban planning, which is of course what you're doing. City Rise could be a vibrant, colourful community of people from all walks of life. Or it could become a second student ghetto. And the detail in the long-term plan will determine which of those two it will be. Thank you.
For a well researched and illustrated submission. A couple of things, I, I don't disagree at all with your suggestion about design guidelines and precinct issues, but either by design or accident, you also illustrate an associated issue in your photographs. All the, almost all the buildings you've pictured are visible to and accessible to the street. And then one of your mongrels on the last page is partially obscured by a large high blue fence. And I, I think, my personal view, there's a wider issue about fencing around the city. But would you include or advocate the inclusion of constraints on fence height in, in the issue of design guidelines and precincts?
I don't know about fence height actually. I mean, people do like privacy, but they can, they can be in the, in the backyard. I, I think, I think more, more important really is, is the height of surrounding buildings. I'm a bit concerned that nine metres, which is proposed under the long-term plan, is, is a bit, is a bit high for, for, for just a standard, yes, you can build up to nine metres. I think it should be a case-by-case thing.
Can I jump in there and make a point? And I think that Council Benson Pope made it quite ago. I think that you are mistaken in thinking that these are, issues are pertinent to the long-term plan. They're pertinent to the new district plan, I believe. Maybe wrong in that. Now, I'm perfectly happy for them to come, for these issues to come to this forum. But I, I don't want, I don't think it's going to be productive to have a whole lot of discussion around planning and design issues when they don't actually have anything to do with the long-term plan at all. And I'm not being critical at all. I'm accepting your submission. And I encourage questions to elicit a better understanding of it. But it is the district plan that these issues will and should be, because they're pertinent, canvassed in.
I'll have to go back. I must, I've researched this on, on your website and if I'm confused about the, how it all fits together.
Please don't take that as a criticism. As I say, I'm more than happy to have any issues and it's been the tradition with annual plans and long-term plans that the community can bring any issue here. What I'm suggesting is that it won't be productive to have a discussion here around those issues because they will be dealt with in a completely separate sector, if you like, of council activity, which is the second generation district plan.
All right, okay.
You wish, sorry, it's probably just worth, sorry, Council Benson Pope. It's probably worth noting that the notification for the second generation plan is planned to occur in September of this year.
Okay.
And I would encourage interaction with that, with your issues, with that process, because that will be where it's most productive.
Okay.
Do you have some? I have an LTP question then. You've noticed, as we all have a lot of, and you mentioned some of it, a lot of streetworks in terms of curb alignment and so on, traffic calming around Vogel Street. Would you also advocate the same sort of treatments in the wider sense in our planning in areas like the one you're talking about?
I think it has to be in a case-by-case basis. City, City Rise is, is actually has quite broad streets. I don't think that attracts from the sort of feeling that, you know, I'm not aware of people honing along it to, to a great extent, although I must admit there are some intersections that are very dangerous because the, the wrong, you know, there's not good sightlines off some of the, well, for instance, from the bottom of Elm Row, you really can't see in either direction into Brown Street. It's, it's on the brow of a hill. I've approached the council about this. I don't know what they're doing about it, but yeah. Also Bishop's Road, where I live is, it's got a footpath that nobody uses and they won't relieve, the, the council staff members have just informed me that they won't remove the footpath for reasons of pedestrian safety, which of course I fully support, but the fact is I have never seen anybody using that footpath. In Bishop's Road, it's a very narrow one-way street. It'd only be about four or five metres wide in total, including the footpath. It's a one-way street. It's got a very narrow footpath. It's so narrow that nobody uses it. And it's congested by vegetation, which obviously is the fault of the landowners. However, because the footpath is there, it makes it very difficult to park opposite, not, not by the footpath, on the opposite side of the road. You cannot parallel park because your wheels get jammed against that jolly curb. And, you know, I find it very, very difficult this year to get tenants for my house because everybody at this stage still needs their car and they want off-street parking, or at least if they have to park in the street, they want to know they're going to come back and still find their wing mirror still there. People parking in Bishop's Road tuck their wing mirrors in. I wonder why. Last year, one of my tenants got his wing mirror smashed off by a visiting tourist, probably. Yeah. So anyway, I mean, these are, these are issues that the council will have to consider. It's a case-by-case thing and I think personally that although, well, maybe this isn't relevant to the district plan, I think Bishop's Road would be a very good test case for having a shared, a road sharing, shared between pedestrians and vehicles, with pedestrians having the right of way. Nobody expects to, to, to need a footpath in, in the lanes of Paris or Rome. I found it difficult to get used to when I was there. You're wandering down the street and, you know, there's a car behind you and you think, oh my God, you know, I better get off the road. Italians don't and they just keep on strolling along. The cars wait for them. I see no reason why we shouldn't have that in Bishop's Road as well. Briefly about your public transport bus proposal. The regional council is aiming, I think, to have something like eighty-five percent of people within three hundred metres of a bus stop or something like that. You're clearly expecting that if we took it over, we would have buses closer to people because that would be the point? Or have I missed the point there? How close do you think everybody in Dunedin should be to a bus stop? I haven't really, I couldn't really say. It depends on so many, so many different things. I also don't, don't know for a fact that, that it would be better under the DCC. It's just that obviously, public transport is a very important part of, of city planning. And if you're going to leave it to somebody else, you'll have to liaise with them very carefully and, and require certain, certain standards of them.
So it's sort of, it's the outcome you want to achieve? It doesn't, it isn't really, who owns it? It's that, it's really important that the outcome is thought about carefully, is that the?
I, I guess so, yeah. But I mean, it does sound strange that, that the bus service is, is a purely local issue to do with Dunedin and yet it's run by a regional body. It just doesn't make sense to me. It seems to be, it should be the national, the, the natural province of, of, of a, of a city council to run its own bus service. But, you know, I'm easy, as long as, as you say, the results are there, I don't care who does it. And, and I have to say that for the, for the, the makeup of the, of the suburb at the moment, really, the bus service isn't bad compared to some other parts of the, parts of the city. Sarah, who I talked to certainly, certainly thinks so. She, she grew up in Brockville and she says that half the time the buses, you know, if they, well, they don't arrive. They need to bring in a replacement because they've broken down or something. But, but you know, then again, it depends on, on the needs of the user. At the moment, it is mostly young, young people who actually don't, you know, they can walk if the bus doesn't come. But having had a hip operation and been disabled for that short space of time, I can tell you that when the bus doesn't come, it's a very serious matter. And so if you want to encourage people of all sorts to live in a, in a community, you really do have to have a reliable bus service. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. My name's Dan Porter and I work University Recreation Department. This purpose of this submission is to inform the Dunedin City Council of the recreation programmes and facilities that are students in university and polytechnic. We use the term recreation, which also includes sport. This submission will also add some context to the Ataga Daily Times article, which was titled, Changing Sporting Scene Prompts DCC Review. In this article, it was indicated that there were a variety of reasons why people are turned away from organised sport. For example, the article reported growth in outdoor recreations such as cycling, running, fishing, tramping, hunting and kayaking. For tertiary students in Dunedin, there are a broad range of recreational options available that are tailored to fit around exams, assignments, labs and part-time employment. Traditional sports such as cricket, netball and rugby are one of many activities on offer. The concept behind recreation is to provide physical, mental, social and spiritual wellbeing to support the learning environment, rather than create a competing environment for student time. Recent research by the Psychology Department at Ataga University suggests that exercise sharpens the young adult brain, thus providing support for active forms of recreation, including sport. Accompanying this submission are four student profiles, indicating their satisfaction with the Dunedin campus and surrounding facilities. Two of the students profiled have been involved in an exercise programme aimed at improving quality of life for cancer survivors. Here is a comment from one student. The Atago Peninsula is one of the most underrated natural landscapes in the South Island. From the albatross and seal colonies to the jaw-dropping cliffs and chasm in Lover's Lake. Also, in my later years, I've explored the greater Dunedin in Atago area. Trips down to the Catlins, Queenstown, Tiara, Naasby and Alexandra all offer something extremely different and so close. To assist in the promotion of recreation, there is a twice yearly production of a university and AUSA Recreation Magazine. Ten thousand magazines are delivered to college residences, student flats. Every school in New Zealand receives one in central locations across campus. The Recreation Magazine features a broad range of activities such as Irish step dancing, hoochie coochie burlesque, picture framing, intro to ice hockey, self-defence, Russian language for beginners, African drumming, lawn bowls, astronomy, sea kayaking at Tairowa Heads, debating, spearfishing and hunting, Amnesty International and the Sri Lankan Students Association, just to name a few. The two main recreation facilities are featured on the back of the magazine and both work together to provide a broad and comprehensive range of activities suited to their facilities. The Unipole facility caters for both drop-in usage, where students visit at any time they choose, and bookings by clubs, colleges, societies, cultural groups and departments. Over a three-year period, the facility has handled just under two million visits. This equates to an average of six hundred and fifty-nine thousand visits per year. This is an increase of forty percent on the old Unipole facility. The Unipole facility houses weight and cardio rooms, court space, multipurpose areas, a group fitness and social sport programme, as well as outdoor trips and recreational equipment for hire. The University Recreation Department also utilises Logan Park, Smuggles Gym, Tetch's College Gym, as well as other school facilities. The AUSA Recreation Facility, formerly known as the Clubs and Societies Centre, has dance and exercise studios, meeting group spaces, provides a home for the clubs and societies, sauna, kitchen facilities, as well as a recreation programme. Usage is under two hundred thousand visits per year. AUSA also has an aquatic facility, which is home to the University Rowan Club, who recently won the New Zealand University's regatta for their sixteenth straight year, squash courts and a yacht club. Other facilities featured in the magazine are the Calladon Athletics Track, Logan Park, and we also have a map which shows locations of Moana Pool and the Forsyth Bar Stadium. and we also have a map which shows locations of Moana Pool and the Forsyth Bar Stadium. These facilities, along with the walking, cycling and tramping tracks, are valuable and appreciated by the tertiary community. The students profiled have commented on the range of activities available both indoor and out, and this contributes to the unique lifestyle that Dunedin offers. In summary, there is a comprehensive level of recreation activity occurring on a weekly basis, with fifteen thousand weekly visits to Unipole, three thousand five hundred weekly visits to the AUSA Rec Centre, casual recreation occurring on, occurring on sports fields, golf courses, mountain bike tracks, walking and jogging on streets, parks and beaches. There's forty active sports clubs practicing and playing, hundred and fifty social sports teams participating indoor and out, outdoor trips, including this weekend sea fishing off Tari Mouth, surfing safari to the Catlins, equipment hired such as surfboards and wetsuits, tents and packs, one hundred and thirty, one hundred and three society meetings and organising activities, all of which contribute to a balanced, healthy lifestyle and provide an outstanding student experience. Now, I have some recreation booklets, which we'll hand out later, but I'll answer any questions now, thanks.
Thank you, Dan. Questions, councillors? councillor Wiley.
Dan, in your submission, you talked about the cycle, cycle tracks and cycleway. Do you have any intention to rent bikes?
What we understand with the colleges is that they are starting to look at ways to store bikes. So this is for students that bring their own bikes and in terms of the Unipole facility, that's not on, it's not on the list at the moment because of storage space and there's quite a lot of maintenance involved with hiring bikes and things like that as well, so at the moment, it's not, not something we were looking at doing, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you. And just in your written submission, you outlined the usage of Unipole. Your figures only date back to 2012. I'm just curious as to what those numbers look like in the old facility.
So annual usage in the old facility ranged from four, four hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred and seventy thousand. So we've gone from, from there to six hundred and sixty thousand.
Excellent, thank you.
No further questions? Thank you, Dan.
Okay, well, good morning, fellow councillors. Firstly, on behalf of every member who works at, visits or is touched by our work at the Otago Museum, can I say a big thank you to you and to the ratepayers of Dunedin for continuing to support our work. The money you invest in our museum is critical to us. It supports our core functions like care, research and interpretation of our collections, and our education and community outreach programs, which inspire our visitors to take an interest in the culture of this amazing part of the world. The museum also contributes to the economy by employing and training over a hundred staff and engaging with suppliers from tradesmen who maintain our facilities to the local food suppliers who produce features out of that. It's also a gathering space for many in our community and a place where many can give public voice through collaborations in displays, through talks and a place where young mums, students, families and tourists come to connect with our local and national heritage and with each other. We were particularly proud last week to play host to over two hundred and fifty museum colleagues from around Aotearoa. Along with our colleagues at Toitu, Otago State's Museum and the Dunedin Public Art Gallery, we had the chance to showcase Dunedin's extraordinary arts, culture, history and natural beauty. Attendees saw a side of this city very different to that portrayed on TV last Sunday evening and left extolling the virtues of Dunedin. I'm sure many of them will come back. As you know, the Otago Museum was founded in eighteen sixty-eight and has one of the most important collections in this country. With over one and a half million objects, including natural science, humanities and of course, talca, it's a very important, broad, important, nationally important collection. I'd like to thank you for giving me the chance to speak to you. Our submission is pretty comprehensive and I hope, and I'm sure you've all read it in some detail. Today, I want to focus on some key issues that confront the museum over the next decade as we execute our new strategic plan, which is called Tay Araho, the way ahead. The next decade promises to be transformational for our museum, with a focus engaging new audiences, developing new world-class science learning facilities for the people of Otago, and significantly investing in the conservation, study and display of our collection. This is not a period of business as usual at the museum. While museums are usually pigeonholed as cultural institutions, our museum plays a significant role relating to many important areas of DCC interest. On the business side, we're a major employer with over a hundred staff. As a cultural attraction, we're visited by hundreds of thousands of visitors who spend money in the local economy. In education, we hold a major learning outside the classroom grant from the Ministry of Education and we've partnered with the University and Polytechnic to engage visitors with their cutting-edge research. The museum is an important link in developing social, cultural and economic connections nationally and internationally. Global relationships such as those with the Shanghai Museum, the Shanghai Museum of Science and Technology, and the Shanghai Natural History Museum showcase the Otago region and foster and strengthen relationship that supports efforts to grow the Otago economy. We're also playing a major and proactive role in engaging our community and inspiring an interest in science, technology, engineering, arts and maths amongst the tens of thousands of young people who visit our museum. Support for our youth in these subjects is critical to improve their employment prospects and contribution to society. You might ask why our museum is investing so heavily in science engagement. Remember that the young minds of today will become the workers of tomorrow and we know that museums can play a key role in inspiring them to take their first steps in their lifelong learning journey. If Dunedin's to have a high-tech, innovation-based economy, then we need to equip our young people with the skills they need to stay here and work here. Museums play a critical role in the economic development of this region. This is why we're investing significantly in a new planetarium and a new hands-on science centre, which will be fully bicultural. We're hiring a head of science engagement and have created a new science team at the museum. This investment is already paying off with the museum being appointed National Outreach Lead for the new Dodd-Walls Centre for Photonics and Quantum Technology at the University of Otago. We also found out last week that the museum has been appointed by the Ministry of Business Innovation and Employment to lead the Otago Pilot Participatory Science Platform Project, one of only three such projects in New Zealand. Along with our partners at the University of Otago, Otago Polytechnic, the International Science Festival and Naitahu, we are working to create a national centre for science engagement here in this city of literature. Of course, I have to mention that tomorrow night, over nine hundred members of the public are coming to two sell-out presentations at Forsyth Bar Stadium on how they can spot the aurora from Dunedin. While it's for others to speak to the importance of preserving the night sky, as a museum director, I have to say that attracting nine hundred people to talk on the aurora demonstrates a significant public interest in the night sky in this region. I'd argue that the museum offers excellent value for money for the ratepayers who support us. While DCC funding is essential, museum staff work hard to generate income, which last year covered forty-three percent of our operational requirements. Through our cafe, our shop, our venues hire and of course, through Discovery World and Tropical Forest, we generate considerable revenue which goes straight back to support our work. As noted earlier, our success in garnering support from MBIE demonstrates that we're working hard to diversify our sources of income as well. Unlike others who've made submissions to you earlier this week, the Otago Museum Board believes that access to the main collections of Dunedin's museums and galleries should be free. We believe that there should be few barriers to access the inspirational value of this city's cultures as possible. The Otago Museum has demonstrated over a number of years that a balance between public funding and effective commercial management is a sustainable business model. In our case, the introduction of additional charges would certainly disrupt our model. Our submission requests DCC continue to support the work of the Otago Museum and partner with us on a number of key projects over the next decade. I hope my words today, but especially our submission document, demonstrates that the museum is worthy of your ongoing funding. We look forward very much to a positive partnership going forwards. And thanks once again to you, and perhaps more importantly, to the ratepayers of Dunedin for your support. Thank you.
Councillors? councillor Cowan.
We heard earlier from somebody about the idea of charging for some of our attractions and a suggestion that a bundled charge for tourists, not for locals, such as happens in some cities in the world, might be useful and then you would, a tourist can pay some money and get free access to a group of things in Dunedin. Would that interfere in the same way with your model? I mean, I can see how Dunedin city people popping in and out, or that since there's other people who fund the museum and they would be able to pop in and out too, but tourists paying for a bundle of things and choosing which ones to go to, would that be such an interference?
I think it would actually. I guess, I come from a capitalist background, I do like the free, you know, the, the, the opportunity to charge where you can charge and that's what we've done at our museum. I mean, we're creating a new charging attraction, the Planetarium. It's a brilliant learning facility and lots of kids will take advantage of it, but one of the reasons we're doing it is to target the cruise ship market. And that is something that I wouldn't necessarily want to kind of be part of a bundle. So I think that the model that we have works for our museum and I think applying a one-size-fits-all approach may not necessarily be in the interest of the museums that adopt it.
Yeah, so could the Planetarium be, for example, be part of the bundle?
Actually, operationally, no, because we have shows at different times and the tourists would buy the bundle, we wouldn't necessarily know when they're coming. It would be quite complicated to operate.
Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you. Thanks, Dr Griffin, and congratulations on the success of your pending talks. Largely down to the photography of you and, and your cohort, it's been quite a revelation. I note your concern around the, there being no proposed increase in the levy. There was a two percent increase for fourteen, fifteen, nothing for fifteen, sixteen. But I do also note that the proposal includes seventy-five thousand dollars a year for museum projects over the next three years, which roughly works out at about two percent of that total levy. So it's not as if the contribution that we're making isn't increasing in the draft long-term plan.
I guess the, being completely frank and honest, if we were presented with a flat budget a while back and the museum, we've worked very hard, as you can see, to generate income to support, offset the running costs of the museum. So if effectively with increasing staff costs and a flat contribution from DCC, which was a position we were faced with at one time, I recognise it's slightly different now, that was one of the reasons we came forward with a bunch of projects, which we will be doing, but they need to be supported somehow. I think the museum does need significant investment in its infrastructure, in the galleries, and those projects are part of that. And of course, a number of the projects are associated with key projects in Shanghai and, you know, other, other things like that. So I think your point is well made. I mean, on balance, the projects within each year amount to a particular percentage. But my point is that the museum needs money to do those projects and it needs money to pay its staff. And somehow we've got to make the mix work and that's why I feel if we can get the projects funded, we can make progress.
And my understanding of the, correct me if I'm wrong, of the legislation is that, that levy can't go down?
It can't go down, no, but it can be kept flat and it was for about four years between, I think, two thousand and ten and two thousand and thirteen.
I think there'd be a few departments that would be quite happy with a situation where their budget from us could never go down. So that is a privileged position for...
I absolutely recognise the privileged position the museum is in and as I say, and as, as part of our presentation, we do absolutely acknowledge the contribution that the ratepayers make and the city council makes. But the fundamental problem I'm confronted with is that looking after one point five million objects in a relatively old building and interpreting them for hundreds of thousands of visitors is complicated and expensive business. And what we're trying to do is minimise the actual cost to ratepayers by being as clever as we can on the commercial side. I recognise though that the act does put us in that particular position.
And just finally, we had the privilege of hosting the minister last week for the Museums Aotearoa Conference. Just wondering if you've, if you had an opportunity to buttonhole her with regards to your crusade for more equitable museum funding regionally?
Yeah, she's very much aware of it. And also, I've just been appointed to the board of Museums Aotearoa as well and Cam McCracken is also on the board, so there's a good South Island voice there and we're certainly not going to sit there saying more money for Wellington. We, we obviously want to get more money into this area, we think it's terribly important.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Just one question. With Giga Town and the City of Literature both fresh on the scene this year, has the museum looked at any ways to leverage off those for either greater visitor experience and/or greater promotional miles for the uni, for the museum?
Well, in terms of Giga Town, my understanding is that we, I think it was supposed to be ready for last week, but visitors can, to our cafe can already take advantage of giga speed contacts with the, the internet, with the high-speed internet. I think it was working last week. I hope I stand corrected, but I think it was. Also, the Planetarium is going to be shipping massive quantities of data around the world and that will be tremendously useful and we'll make a point of mentioning that. So we are taking advantage of that. City of Literature is something we're going to work with, absolutely. And while the focus for the next year or so is definitely science for our museum, that's not at the expense of the art side of the house and of course, we just opened the Houtary exhibition, which demonstrates that quite convincingly. So we definitely want to host exhibitions, we definitely want to host events with them and I'm sure with time, things will start to happen.
Councillor Benson-Pope?
Thank you. Further to the question that councillor Hawkins asked about the appointment, would I be correct in assuming that, excuse me, that that will give you the opportunity to raise with the new minister from that perspective, the issue that her predecessor supported in terms of wider non-Wellington regional museum funding?
Yes. I mean, obviously, regional development is really in the news at the moment for a bunch of reasons and speaking for, I'm not qualified to, to speak on the wider picture, but certainly on the museum side, there are very strong arguments, I think, to be made for a nationally distributed museum collection. I mean, let's face it, this, this country's got risks in different parts of the country and different risks. And we're too small a nation to have all the experts in one place. So I, I think there's a future. We're, we're working very hard on that argument. But the fundamental problem that we face is that there's a big focus on Wellington, Christchurch and Auckland and it's very, very hard to jump up and down and say, give museum funding to Dunedin without others coming to the party as well. But certainly, you know, through, through our work with MBIE especially, the unique selling point that this particular city has with its brilliant university, a bunch of really good arts institutions and the museum, we do have this opportunity to create this national centre for science engagement and nobody else can do that in the country. Nobody else has got so many brilliant organisations and so much skill and expertise in one small place. And I think perhaps not necessarily through cultural funding, we might be able to go through MBIE as a different route. And of course, one recognises that they've got a fairly significant amount of money and they are investing in, in, in this particular region.
Thank you, Dr Griffin. This is the Otago Museum. Have you made an approach to the regional council for funding as well?
At the last mayor's forum, two, sorry, the last but one mayoral forum, there was a discussion about regional funding of the museum because it's recognised that while several councils do fund us, there is one at least that doesn't. And I don't know really where that discussion went, I think the mayors are still talking about that. But that is certainly an opportunity for us in the future, but I think, again, to get regional council funding would take support, I think, from, from this, this group as well as others.
Have you, then in that case, you haven't made a submission in this round for the regional council as well?
I think we made a, we made a submission, yes, we did make a submission, but it was a small submission, it wasn't a significant one.
They definitely have deeper pockets than we do.
And we had a submission this morning from the Gasworks Museum, who at the moment, we partner up with Toitu. But there were some aspects of what they're doing there with Anne Cronin and science that in the past, we've used grants from here to sometimes manage partnerships or get that resourcing through to other agencies. You, I think, have been working with Anne, she said, putting up some ideas about how science engagement and things. Would you see there being a relationship further, further off your campus area with the Gasworks Museum?
Well, I think the, being technical about it, what, what they collect is much more in Toitu's bag than what we do. But in terms of science engagement, that's an area where we can collaborate. So certainly, and I know Anne is very keen to apply for some of this MBIE funding that we've just secured and that hopefully might be helpful to them.
One of the issues they were asking for us is to resource an administrative person to help with that. But if we, and you're obviously very good at this stuff already, having been successful, sometimes it's better that we look at one person already doing the stuff and not having another person doing that. But we partner up businesses to do, or community organisations to do that. You're not adverse to having those discussions, should we consider grants?
Absolutely not, no. I mean, again, one of the reasons we won the MBIE money for the, the Otago Science Portal was it was a partnership between AUSTA University, the Polytechnic and Naitahu, and the Science Festival as well, mustn't forget them. So absolutely we're up for partnerships and if DCC want to talk to us about it, let's have that conversation and I can certainly talk to Anne about it as well.
Yeah, thanks, Ian. We, we've already heard from...
Yeah, thanks, Ian. We've already heard from the Otago Settlers' Association. And one question I asked there was to do with the prospects and for collaborating and sharing kind of resources with the Otago Museum. And just wondered if you had a comment on that. There was a very positive, I have to say, a positive attitude from.
Yes. I mean, we had a very successful joint hosting of the conference, and that was a completely joint management team that did that, and it worked very well. I think we recognise, we have to recognise that there's history involved and the two institutions are different institutions. So working together is going to take a little bit of time. We are working together, though, and we have for quite some time. And there's lots of discussions going on between our conservators at our museum and the conservation person at their museum. We absolutely talk about joint programming where appropriate. So we're starting the conversations, and I think with time, we'll get much more close, we'll get better at working more closely. And of course, that's to everybody's benefit, because everybody recognises that we don't want to duplicate efforts between the museums in this city.
Thank you very much for your submission.
Thank you.
Mr Farquhar. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Firstly, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I've got three items I want to touch on. The overall debt, the Portobello Road redevelopment, and rates as a percentage of increases across things. Two years, three years ago, I came and spoke to you guys, and you gave me a nice, pretty picture in the document that was dated 2012, 13 through to 22. And again, we see the same graph, the same graph being reproduced again in this current document that we're talking about today. However, disappointingly, the debt is 14% off the mark from what you forecasted. It would appear that the council has a belief that debt is good. As an accountant, I'm constantly reminding my clients that they've got to pay back the debt, otherwise you're going to stick a millstone around your neck. I'm also concerned that the stadium debt, it seems to be like, almost like we're saying, okay, we're going to hit the iceberg. So if we move five chairs from the stadium and put them back in the DCC, we're not going to miss the iceberg. And it just is pointless pissing around. We need to actually get hold of things and say, right, as a council, we need to reduce the debt. And instead of this figure going up and up and up, and we just move the dates along on the graph, we actually need to get rid of some of that debt. Otherwise, it'll be my grandchildren that are reducing that debt and actually removing it. The second item is Portobello Road. In the booklet here, you've put forward two proposals. Now, my background is an accountant. I can flick through the numbers and sort of work it out. Proposal one is nearly $30 million, which most of it's going to be borrowed to get the job done nice and quickly. Proposal option two is 22 million over a 10-year period, seven million different. But in the document here, you're saying by doing it early, borrowing the money, we're going to save 4.7 million. But we're going to incur in excess of $10 million in debt in paying that back. I don't see the logic. As I said, I'm an accountant, and I couldn't figure these figures out, and I still haven't got my head around it. Doing the road is a priority. Yes, I agree. It's not going to solve our problem of people going into the harbour on a regular basis. That's driver error more than anything else. But if we're going to put stuff out to laymen in the community, can we please have it better spelt out? Because at the moment, I can't actually work out what it is the best way. And I'm relying totally on council to do that evaluation. Where you're asking for feedback, I think the information needs to be better. The third item is around the rates increase, proposed on page 37 of the document here. Where you've got residential and commercial being increased at an average of 3.3%, you're going to hit the farmers and the lifestyle blocks by 4.5 and 5.7%. Now, I don't have a problem playing rates. I really don't. But I have a problem that you're going to hit the rural sector with the biggest increase of any sector, when a lot of that rural sector doesn't actually get well looked after. On the peninsula, we have a number of roads that are poorly maintained. Maintenance doesn't appear to get done. We've got water tables that haven't been cleaned out for well over three or four years. When we do complain, they do come up, clean the water table out. Problem is, they didn't check the drain to allow the water to run away. So we clean the water table out only to have the water pooling, because it can't run away. And of course, the water pools then gets under the road, and basically, the road starts deteriorating, which then leads to a bigger problem. I don't understand why the rural sector and the farming sector have to pay substantially more. I'm after a fair rating system, and if the increase is going to come, I'd like it to come across in a flat rate across all sectors. So that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Questions, councillors? councillor Cowan.
Could we ask Grant to?
No, no. If you wish to come in and get clarification about the figures, which were audited by the auditors' office, actually.
I'm aware of that, yes.
Then you can, but I'm not going to have a discussion here. We're not here to provide information.
No, I.
We're here to hear you, and I want people to be able to ask you questions, clarify your concerns. But I'm not going to have a discussion that could go on, given the fact that you don't appear to understand the document. It could go on for quite some time.
Well, just two questions. You've contrasted the 2012 graph with the current one.
Yes.
And you've pointed out that the debt has gone up, not down. But in the interest of comparing apples with apples, have you considered the additional transfer of the $30 million from the stadium debt to the council debt in the current graph?
When I'm looking at the tables here, and that's the thing, I look at the overall debt position, and that's what I'm talking about. Because whether it's in the stadium, which is a wholly owned subsidiary, or whether it's in the council, as far as I'm concerned, when you consolidate, it's the overall debt of the council that I'm looking at. And it's not going down.
Richard, when you look at the debt, would you support asset sales? Like, for example, 30 or 40% shareholding in City Forests?
It's always possible. You, as a council, you would have more information around it than I would. But that's certainly an option for the council. There is, obviously, you're going through the process of selling all those little bits of land and whatnot around. That's, again, a good idea. If companies that are owned by councils can be floated and/or partially, like the government has done, and that frees up equity, so be it. More than happy for that.
And then, when you look at the, say, Moskew Swimming Pool, South Dunedin Library Complex, or things like that, is that a good investment for the city? And if we're looking against the demands or requirements from the ratepayer versus the debt?
With regards to the pool, we've got three pools in Dunedin, substantial pools. Moskew, the main one up the hill, and the one down at the hospital. We're overkill for the size of the city, I believe. However, I understand, you know, Moskew people deserve the right to have something out there. It is a separate, quite a significant area in Dunedin. Again, it's, I think, it's a matter of prioritising and saying, this is the amount of money we've got. We've got to live within our means, and there will be some projects that get deferred or don't get done at all.
Thank you.
Hi, Richard. I guess it's a question but also a statement. One of the things that we have noticed as I've started to get my head around some of the figures and some of the books and some of the debt, the one thing I do see is some of the council, and probably I almost caution on the talk of selling City Forests or something, but some of these companies that we've got, there has been significant increases in their capital value. And while their debt has not increased significantly, so it's like buying a runoff and managed to do it out of cash flow, so to speak. There are some significant increases in some of the assets that, to me, if everyone was aware of that, they perhaps wouldn't be. But I still fundamentally understand the problem of we have to service whatever debt we have.
And the question?
Question is, do you agree?
Do I agree? Yes, I can see that your assets have gone up in value. I don't have a problem with that. I do have a problem that this council has told us as ratepayers before that they're going to reduce the debt. And the graph that is in the documents shows a steady decline. What I'm saying is that decline hasn't happened in the last three years. In actual fact, the debt has grown by what I can see, 14%, the overall debt. So is the next period of time going to have the same effect? I do.
I'm very pleased to see that a working accountant agrees with my view of the debt figures as well, despite his worship having predicted that the debt had peaked every one of the years from 12, 13 and 14. It obviously never has. My question to you is, as an accountant, have you looked at the contribution to ever-increasing staff costs? And is the actual cost of running the bureaucracy here something that you think is as transparent as the debt in our LTP?
The cost of bureaucracy in local government is probably one of the biggest things that you guys face. A lot of that is driven by central government, inasmuch as they pass laws that say that you go to administer certain parts of the Act. And yes, I would agree 100% that the council staff has grown substantially in the last 20 years from where it was. But I think some of that is tied behind your hands. You've got to actually do what central government's telling you to do. But if you can find a simpler way of doing something or a more effective way of doing things, then go for it. Certainly, in the accounting field, computers and modern systems now mean that we employ less staff than we did 20 years ago. But that isn't the case with council.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Ms Willis. Welcome. The next five minutes are yours.
Thank you. I've already submitted some documents, and I've already submitted separate documents to councillors about the situation I have living in a heritage precinct. What I'm wanting to focus on for the submission is the fact that there's not an allocated budget currently planned, as I understand it, for being able to develop a heritage vision for the heritage precincts in particular. I'm concerned about Pitt Street Royal Terrace and Harriet Row. I realise this has implications for 2GP, but I'm focusing specifically on allocation of budget in the short-term plan to deal with issues that I think are more immediate than the 2GP regarding the quality of life and what it's actually like to live in a heritage precinct at the moment. I realise it's controversial in terms of Carol Devine's interview on Sunday night. I don't personally know Carol, but I admire her bravery and courage because, from my point of view, I could be saying exactly the same things that Carol was saying. I just don't have the courage to go on public media in quite that same way. And I think it's excellent that the response has been to create an openness for a discussion about liquor and liquor rules and bans, and also more recently, related to initiatives that are occurring with other stakeholders in terms of the university and the liquor industry and so on. However, I would like to know that there is a budget also to include resident opinions and ratepayer opinions for the quality of being able to develop, one, a heritage vision, but a heritage vision that is also one that residents can live in without feeling they've got to leave their homes with the only option being for it to be essentially student accommodation. And it's not that I'm against high-density student accommodation. It's not that I'm against economic develop, but it's about how it's done in terms of quality and vision. And because I've already submitted so much paperwork, I'm prepared to stop at this point for questions, given the time, or I can talk for as long as you'd like me to talk.
Let's go to questions, shall we?
Sure.
Question. councillor Benson Park.
Thank you, Richard. Thanks for the submission, which we've certainly read. And I think you probably know that we acknowledge the issues, the solutions of what we're grappling with. I've got no issue with what you're arguing about funding for the development of Heritage Vision, whatever that might be. But I'm wondering if, you will have seen perhaps the release that the mayor made that's featured in the ODT today about the number of groups that have got together.
Yes, I've read this morning, so.
One of the things that potentially might flow from that is a greater focus by each agency on what it can do. And for us, clearly, that might be enforcement, abatement notices, more monitoring, you name it. So I'm assuming that you would agree with more funding going into the LTP to fund that sort of activity. Clearly, monitoring doesn't happen without expense. Sending people out, be they security guards or others, doesn't happen without expense. And across the board, we are constrained at the moment as to the funding available for that monitoring. Is that a fair assumption? Would you advocate in that regard as well?
If I was addressing policy in that sense, for me, I would want the funding to be supporting collaboration of those services, of how they're actually working together. My experience over the last 12 months has been the services themselves work well, but they don't collaborate, and there's clear, clear senses of demarcation and responsibility and the outcome for the individual resident. I wouldn't expect anybody to do what I've done in the last 12 months of exhausting the services. So as far as budget goes, obviously, that would be a good way, a positive use of budget to do with existing problems. But I wouldn't want it to be at the sacrifice of a focus on a heritage vision in collaboration with residents across city.
I'm not suggesting that, but so in terms of how that might operate, you were saying it's the connection that you've talked about in your documents and elsewhere, about whether it's Campus Watch or the police or noise control or building control or whatever. But it's how that all connects is the issue for you.
I see that as one issue as far as responsive services go. But I think there's a lot more, I would prefer budget, if it's an either-or, to focus on the structural problems related to the student accommodation, the ethos, the student culture, the ethos. It's not unique for Otago as a positive, wonderful thing. I think there's ways of having a wonderful student culture without having to be the culture we've currently got.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your submission. It resonates a little with some of my thinking when I bike home every day and pass by some residential dwellings, which I absolutely adore and I would love to see protected, but which have paint chipping off them. And there's no way for me, as a resident, to contribute to that upkeep. It's what you're advocating. I mean, clearly, you're saying that we need some sort of strategy around residential heritage. But would you see that strategy in terms of components that might make it up? Would you see something akin to what our heritage fund currently does for buildings to be targeted to residential areas? Are you seeing planning tools being used? Or are there other things? Or are there other things which we're currently not employing at all in the city which you would see making up part of that strategic approach?
I think one of the basic structural problems is that property prices are based on yield. So I could carve up my existing three-story at the back, two-story at the front heritage-listed house and I could make it a lot worth, worth a lot more money by making it into studio rooms. And I think that's a basic structural problem of how the values are calculated and how that leads to all sorts of unscrupulous behaviour at the same time. As far as heritage funding goes, I think it's quite the opposite at the moment. The situation's so desperate across city rise that citizens are prepared to contribute money to be able to have a vision rather than seeking complete support from the DCC to do that. We want to work in collaboration to do that, and we know that means resources which may mean dollars as well as time. Having said that, I'm not talking on behalf of city rise, I'm talking as an individual when I'm offering resources, but I'm meaning people are prepared to talk about that. And obviously, if funding can be used to encourage people to develop properties in ways that fit a heritage vision by using funding, that would be brilliant, but at the moment, there's no clarity about that to do with the vision.
Councillor Staines.
In your submission, you noted that there is, some of the residents are moving out of the area. And the implication there is that is because of the changing demographic in that area. Do you... What you're seeing in that area, are you seeing residents moving out and their houses being bought and turned into flats? Is that an issue?
Yes, it is, but the last house that was sold last month, where as a neighbourhood and the owners formed a collaboration that it wouldn't be sold to a developer. By that, I don't mean, I'm meaning that a developer who would carve it into studio rooms. It's been sold to a family. Because it's part of the tipping of what's occurring in the residential area. I personally am in a different situation. I've got as many as twenty men living on each side of me in resident houses, as if it's a halls of residence for men with no warden. It's absolute anarchy, lawless and slim.
Thank you.
Councillor May. You talk about the lawlessness. Other people have earlier today talked about the homogeneous numbers of high-density students living in the area. They've said that there's no moderating influence by joining families and tried to say that that's basically, you know, one of your main issues. Others have suggested that it's simply a result of just too much alcohol. Nobody yet this morning has talked about the lack of consequences for criminal vandalism and arson in the area. Do you have any suggestions about what you think should be done so that there actually are consequences for the kind of lawless behaviour that you've just described?
The lawless behaviour I experience is definitely fuelled by alcohol, but alcohol's not the only reason. It's an attitude situation. And there's a definite sense, I believe, that part of the culture, whether it's through DCC services or Campus Watch services or management, or I could talk for ages to do with the services I've spoken to within both DCC and the university, I think the culture is one of the students. So there's a culture that it's okay because they're students. And it's not necessarily seen as lawless as it might be if it was perhaps someone else, I don't know, but it's the accepted culture that the students are so, so important to the city. And they are, and they're wonderful, but I've worked in universities other places in the world, I've had senior positions for student services in other universities in the world. Students do not behave like the students here. I grew up here, I'm a graduate of Ataga University, I have pride in that and I had a good education, which I've been able to use internationally. But I'm totally embarrassed to have my international visitors come and stay with me. In fact, I tell them to go to a hotel.
Do you have a view on the use of video security cameras to allow prosecution of criminal behaviour?
I haven't investigated it, but I've certainly been considering putting cameras on my own house. And I don't know the answer to that, but I'm at that level of desperation as to what's lawless and what's not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willis.
Thank you.
Appreciate your submission.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Clear, and I'm glad you're here, but you have delegated Mr. Clear.
Sorry, you can both come up if you wish.
Thank you. My name is Simon Eddy, I've been asked to speak on behalf of a group of half a dozen CBD property owners, including Mr. Clear. The group I speak on behalf of collectively represents in excess of two and a half million dollars of rates paid to the city, and that represents in excess of two and a half per cent of the city's income, sorry, I should have referred to two and a half million dollars in rates. The group has recently met on several occasions to review and discuss the LTP with a review to making a submission. The group's belief in submission to council is that as much funding as possible should be allocated to improving the CBD area, and specifically the Octagon and George Street parts of the CBD. As the area is the most central and visible space and arguably the flagship in Dunedin, it is absolutely critical that long overdue investment is now made. This is particularly prevalent, given that every day the challenges of operating in the retail space in the CBD become harder and harder as a result of things such as online shopping. The CBD area is, of course, a long-established point of difference for Dunedin, which has been well recognised by council over many years to its credit, and to date it has spent decades protecting. Unlike other areas that have allowed out-of-town retailing to become incredibly prevalent and dominant, Dunedin has retained its heart and soul by keeping such things in the centre of our city. And an abundance of concentrated retail and entertainment operators in our CBD provides a very visible and great opportunity. However, without significant investment, this opportunity is missed. The CBD is beginning to look dowdy, tired and ignored. And whilst there have been many options and opportunities over the years, indeed recently I was viewing some plans from about a decade ago in terms of redeveloping the area around the Knox Church, few, if any, of the ideas that have been presented seem to have been put into action. There's often a lot of talk, but very rarely does it seem to become reality. Great ideas sometimes embraced, but rarely actioned. It's the submission of the group I represent that funding is best made in the CBD and as a priority over out-of-town activity. Whilst we do recognise that there are many valid and worthwhile submissions before council, it cannot be denied that a thriving and vibrant CBD is key to protecting a sustainable city for generations. Investment in the CBD is without a doubt a feeder in providing increased economic benefits for the whole of Dunedin, encouraging people to come here, invest, stay, spend and enjoy our city. Without such investment, Dunedin risks not only missing an opportunity but becoming laughable. Compare, for instance, Hamilton and Auckland, where the prior has focused on out-of-town spending and allowed development out of the city, and the latter, whilst of course Auckland is the country's biggest city and is different, but has made significant investment into its heart. Hamilton is now becoming a desolate ghost town and Auckland is thriving, regenerating and creating new opportunities. It cannot be disputed that when investment is made in CBD areas, it is good for all, including improved amenity and an increase in investment and jobs allowing people to provide for their wellbeing, both financial and cultural. There are an abundance of examples in Dunedin of landlords investing in buildings to the benefit of the city, and it's the group's hope that the council will consider partnering with this. Any approach in this respect should be strategic and not hurried. The process of spending needs to be accelerated, and that's been very, very key in our discussions, as the proposed indicative timeframe of ten years is frankly far too long. There are many works that need to commence now, such as amenity improvements in the Octagon and the replacement of CBD paving, which would seem to have been overlooked for a very long period of time. Investment needs to be made in infrastructure alongside visual improvement. And once again, we have unique opportunities through things such as Giga Town that highlight Dunedin's points of difference. And we appeal to the council to develop strategies alongside investment and consult with those who are already investing significantly and allow investment as such to be optimised. The investment currently being made could easily be overlooked, but consideration would show that many millions of dollars are being spent day in, day out by Dunedin property owners. And any developed strategy must be in partnership between the owners and the city, not simply left to the property owners to run themselves. Council should be a leader in any planned strategic approach. In summary, we ask that strong consideration be given to allocating as much funding as possible to the regeneration of the Central Business District, including both amenity and infrastructure. It is without doubt both essential and overdue. It is also a solid investment in the CBD and would be the cornerstone of any long-term growth for the city. And as such, any failure to acknowledge this would be detrimental to Dunedin positioning itself as one of New Zealand's great cities. Thank you.
Simon, questions now. Councillor Lord.
Simon, I've just got a question around infrastructure renewals in the CBD. And I don't fully understand the retail, I'm absolutely not an expert in retail, but one of the things I am conscious of is, A, the huge increase in internet sales and people buying stuff online. And not to say that the shops in these buildings can't do that, but there's not really any need to support a big flash-front shop front if you're just targeting that market. So people that run retail shops are competing with guys running their containers in backyards and garages all over the world, sort of style. So the question is, do you believe that, well, not so much do you believe, is it your belief that, well, same thing, is it your belief that reinvestment in infrastructure is going to be the saviour of residential and city centres? Because I'll give you another example, just recently I stopped at Brisbane Airport, they've got a big super mall there, sells absolutely everything, you can walk around the circle, buy anything you want, discounted to the max. And my experience when I come to Dunedin to shop is I generally come to buy a meal. And I don't usually buy a lot of stuff unless I'm buying a gift for something or other. Occasionally, I go to the mentions.
I do believe, and it is my belief. The, I think the core of what we're talking about in respect of my comments is about Dunedin's unique point of difference of having everything centrally. And Brisbane, Hamilton, Auckland, they all speak to places where the retail environment has moved out of CBD, sometimes through planning, sometimes just through osmosis. One of Dunedin's unique points of difference is the fact that we have everything central. And I think when we talk about Dunedin as a place, we often talk about points of difference. And the council has long invested in a point of difference here as being everything within the CBD. And therefore, to maintain that positioning, which is unique, investment in infrastructure is absolutely crucial. I do, absolutely.
Councillor Staines.
Most of us would agree that the CBD is starting to look tired, it's needing regeneration, and we've indicated there is major infrastructural work beneath the surface that needs to be done, which means there's going to be significant disruption. The question that I have is, being in the CBD, is the way in which that retail district operates changing as a result of online selling? And if it is, what might be the strategies that we would need to look at as we renew the CBD in order to make it a more attractive place for people to gather and therefore potentially spend their money?
Well, I think one of the reasons that people increasingly go to the internet actually may be a result of that lack of decentralisation of retail activities in CBDs, because for some people it can be quite hard to get everything you want in one place. And it takes me back to my comments about Dunedin having a point of difference and everything being in a hub and everything being accessible. There's no doubt that retail as a sector is one of the most changeable sectors. Retailers are generally always on their feet and trying to adapt, and if it wasn't the internet, it would be something else. But I think in terms of Dunedin, I just refer back to my comments that it's absolutely crucial that we don't adapt that old attitude of because the way something, because it's going a particular way, we should fall into that trap. Dunedin's CBD is a real point of difference, and we absolutely need to protect that with all the energy we have.
I agree entirely. My fear is, if I look at the CBD at the moment, there is an increasing number of empty retail storefronts. And the concern there is that by a means different to controlling where the retail sector is, which is internet selling, which can happen anywhere around New Zealand and around the world, whether that is in fact a contributor to the loss of businesses in the CBD and therefore the threat that causes to the CBD. And therefore, back to the original question, is there a different way of looking at our CBD in terms of its infrastructure, its appearance, its new face as we do this work, that you think might make it a more attractive place and a more vibrant place for retail and bring people into a more likely position to buy in the CBD rather than just hop online and buy it from somewhere outside Dunedin?
I think it's all about points of difference, and I do accept what you're saying about there being quite a large amount of vacancy in Dunedin. And some of that's a little bit artificial because a number of buildings at the moment are being earthquake strengthened and can't be occupied during that time. I think in terms of making Dunedin more attractive, it is about the collective approach, and it talks to my comments with regards to council being a leader in this plan to increase vibrancy in the CBD, is that it does need a consolidated strategic approach. At the moment, landlords are making ongoing very significant investments in their buildings, and that, of course, is a credit to them and a credit to the city, but there's no strategic uniformed approach. And council really should be a leader, both in terms of strategy and investment, in making sure that Dunedin is an attractive place for people to want to open stores. And certainly, as someone who works in the retail property market, there are retailers who are looking for space, retailers are growing, retailers do have a number of issues such as the internet to deal with, but the brakes aren't on. For us, it's about positioning Dunedin as first choice, and that's something that needs real long-term thinking and investment.
So as a group of property owners, you've indicated you'd be interested in being part of the design, if you like, and the strategy for going forwards. Do you think you also would be capable of motivating some of the retailers that occupy those businesses to join in and get a reasonably strong group from that CBD to actually help in envisaging what that CBD would look like in the future?
Without a doubt.
Thank you.
Without a doubt.
Councillor Calvert.
Just three sort of related bits. Have you got a comment to make on parking, pedestrianisation and precincts in the sense of the councils stretching out the CBD, if you like, by making more heritage things out on the periphery? Which seems to me to sort of, in some respect, potentially go against the, what's special about us is that we're set in the middle. So if you've got a comment on those three things, precincts, pedestrianisation, parking?
I think it all goes back to consultation. I think consultation on occasion maybe has been slightly lacking, and that's not a criticism, it's just about the approach. In terms of what we're talking about, about making Dunedin an attractive place for people to be, that goes to pedestrianisation and parking, is that... to be, that goes to pedestrianisation and parking, is that there's certainly a strong feeling amongst the group that I speak for that council needs to and could do more to make it easy for people, to make it easy for people to shop, to make it easy for retailers to want to open here. I think pedestrianisation would be a disaster in that sense. I think it would, it would change Dunedin's point of difference somewhat. And in terms of parking, I think once again, council needs to be thinking carefully about its strategy in that regard and making sure there isn't abundance of parking and that it's correctly priced. And of course, it's always a political hot topic, but it is something that requires in-depth communication with all the parties that it affects.
Precinct, the spreading of it, outer even?
Yeah, I think in terms of the CBD, you need to work with what you've got first. I think that would be the collective view of the group. As I said, Dunedin is beginning to look dowdy and tired, and we need to improve what we've got first, which is a point of difference before we focus too much on growth. So start inside and then work out.
Simon, can I just pick up on that before we go to other questions? And the issue of what the people, the owners you speak for and their concerns around pedestrianisation and parking, et cetera. If they were presented with the experience from elsewhere, are they, do you think they were likely to take that on board with a view to learning from it and applying it in Dunedin? And the reason I ask that is that, and you mentioned how Auckland is going ahead, and in some parts of Auckland, they've introduced shared spaces where they've removed the parking altogether and put shared motorists and pedestrians, and the retail trade has gone up 50%. So do you think that the lessons from those places could be applied to Dunedin?
I think the best measure of what will happen is the past and data. So I think anyone would be foolish not to consider that. But I think equally, you have to put everything in context that Dunedin's not Auckland, that we have a different geographical layout, that people's behaviours here are slightly different. So it would require some detailed thought.
Councillor Hawke.
Thank you. Just picking up on a couple of things that people have mentioned already. And I just wanted to draw your attention, if you weren't aware, to the submission on this draft long-term plan we received from the Chamber of Commerce, which is in favour of investigating and possible implementation of increased pedestrianisation of George Street in particular, and improving extending the cycling network. The evidence of the business boost from slowing and eliminating car traffic is very strong internationally, quote, unquote. Whether you had any comment on that, whether you were aware of that position from the Chamber of Commerce, who represent, as they say, 50% of employers in Dunedin?
I mean, I'm only, I'm aware of it, but I haven't read it in any detail. So without reading the detailed analysis, I wouldn't really want to comment on it.
Oh, it was quite general, investigating and possible implementation of increased pedestrianisation.
I think every option is worth investigating. I think council should be a leader in it. But I think consultation is key. I'm not undermining at all the Chamber of Commerce's representation of 50%, but that still leaves another 50%. And consultation should include everyone.
If, I mean, you're right in that Dunedin is unique and all cities are unique. And you're wary of using the Auckland example because we're not Auckland. But to follow that to its logical conclusion, we wouldn't be able to use any example because none of them would be from Dunedin of anything that other cities have tried to reinvigorate their central business district. So where do you think, you want us to be a leader, be wary of us using other international examples or even New Zealand examples? So where should we be taking our steer from?
I'm certainly not wary of using any examples. What I'm saying is that every example contributes to a collective picture that needs to be well thought through and a plan put in place. Because you can't, of course, the data's valuable, but you can't apply the rule from everywhere else to anywhere else. I'm sure that every city in the world that's instigated such a plan has done so with prior data. Some will have worked better than others, so we can only learn from what's worked well and what hasn't. And for every example where there is something that has worked well, there'll be something that's worked not so well. So it's about taking the best of the data that's available and consulting to, in order to recognise that Dunedin is different. Because of course, I know that council values local knowledge. So outside data is great in terms of patterns, but local knowledge is also important input to that, to ensure you get a productive outcome.
Local knowledge is limited to only things that we've done before and not new ideas.
Which is why I'm saying there should be a balance between the two. You need to look at both with equal measure and ensure you can sell all groups, from the person who goes shopping to the property owner to the Chamber of Commerce and everyone in between. These are important decisions that require the input of absolutely everybody. And I think, as I've said, that Dunedin's robust CBD has for a long time been a very, very key feature of the city. So it's not something that should be done on an ad hoc basis or with random data taken from other places. It requires a very strategic and deep-set thoughtful approach before you make any decisions.
Quick clarification, you or your cohort are comfortable or uncomfortable with the degree of vacancies or, let's say, inactive retail spaces, if you want to include refits and earthquake strengthening currently between the octagon and Knox Church?
I don't know if comfortable is, what exactly is the question? Are the group comfortable with the number of vacancies?
Well, just, and you said that it was, it's artificial to some degree. I'm just, I mean, it's a concern I have, and I know it's a concern the community have. And I'm just curious as to, from a property owner's perspective, how urgent you see it.
I can assure you that any property owner, including the council, which is also a property owner, is never comfortable with vacancies because you want to have your space fully occupied. I think, however, that there are two sides to that, is one, you want to fill spaces. But secondly, you want to fill spaces with good organisations and good retailers. And we talk in the retail context that add to the vibrancy of the city. So it's part of a wider picture than currently going, there's an empty space. Our submission is largely around the council working towards a strategy to maintain, grow and develop a vibrant and working CBD for generations. And that's about more than, you know, a door without something behind it.
What is, what do you mean by good retailer?
What I mean is things that provide amenity value and contribute to the vibrancy of the CBD.
So a dollar store is worse than a vacancy?
Can I suggest that this is getting into discussion? And at some times since I heard a question. Councillor Thompson.
Look, just before I ask a question, I should probably declare an interest, I don't know whether it stops me asking a question, but Mr Eddy is the representative of my Dunedin businesses landlord, so, but it doesn't relate to that. So I, I don't, I don't have any difficulty with the notion that amenity value contributes to whether or not people want to use. But it strikes me that the elephant in the room here is actually the amount of vacant space that is in Dunedin, particularly from, if you like, Penrose's corner through to the octagon, well, on the other side of the octagon. And what I'm wondering is, we could spend a lot on amenity value. And if you take the mall, a mall example, you could have an absolutely beautiful mall, but if there's no shops inside it, then no one's going to come. And I'm wondering to what extent the, the property owning community, particularly the retail property owning community, is looking at whether the market is actually working effectively to demand here in Dunedin? Or whether if property's relatively tightly held, it's not in the owner's interests for the market to react? Because that would affect values of properties which are leased and things. So to what extent is that kind of factor, tightly held retail sector, something that also has to be addressed as part of this, if amenity value is going to make any difference?
It's probably a larger question that I could apply more thought to than shooting from the hip, but I, I think everything goes down to partnership. There is little liaison at the moment between property owners and the city. In terms of the group being tightly held, in terms of rental levels and vacancies, they're generally driven by market. Most reviews are generally done at a market level. So you would have to assess, have to assume that if rentals are a particular level, they are because the market's driven them in that way. I think certainly there's a great feeling amongst property owners that they'd be happy to engage with the city, that they're happy to contribute to building improvements to increase amenity value, and that that has a wider positive knock-on effect for the whole of the CBD.
And a follow-up question. If there were to be a greater partnership, or whatever that might mean, the, there is, there's a, there's a cost to amenity value. And one of the wonderful things about being a landlord is that when that's included in rates, you get to pass it on to the tenant. Would there be consideration by property owners to the notion of some sharing of the cost and therefore the benefit of what you're advocating for that didn't just get passed down?
I'm sure there would be. And I think, once again, the heart of that goes to a strategic cohesive approach where there's a plan put in place. Often, when you talk about rates being passed on to your tenants as a landlord, those are for services that council has put in place or plans that council has put in place. And sometimes there's a feeling that they haven't been that well consulted on. So I have no doubt that the group I speak for would be happy to participate in that if it was a participation process.
And last question, because I'm very sympathetic to the beauty presenting, but do you have a thought on what such a structure might look like? I mean, have you thought about how to progress this further as a group? And to take it wider, because you're obviously speaking on behalf of a few building owners. I don't know how wide that is, but...
I'm speaking on behalf of half a dozen building owners, which include the Fairy Clear Group, Luthe Properties, the Chem family, Greg Patterson, Locky Chesem Oakwood Properties, so significant property owners. Since the LTP's been released, have met a number of times, probably if there was a larger window, would have been able to put in a more robust submission. And certainly, to answer your question, would be very, very willing to do so in terms of a partnership. Number of ways to achieve that from working parties and consultation documents, and I'm sure that they'd be willing to engage in that wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
I just had one councillor, Thompson, ask my question in the main, but I just wondered whether your group, either through you or the group itself, has had the opportunity to meet with council staff who are working on the central city plan to date? Or whether it's exactly that engagement which you're seeking today?
No, I know, certainly the group have had the opportunity, some individually, some collectively, to meet and discuss with council staff. I suppose the key question is what comes next of that? Because a lot of time from being a ratepayer through to a property owner is spent talking to council staff. What you really need to drive is what the outcome of that is, and put it into a strategy, which is exactly what we're talking about today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to make an oral submission. My submission is in two parts, and I thought I'd better read from it so I don't go off-script and waste my valuable ratepayers' money. I'm confining my submission just to the issues relating to a planning and consultation for a South Dunedin community complex. This submission is made in my individual capacity as well as following discussions with friends and workmates, particularly at the university, including members of the Andersons Bay Peninsula branch of the Labor Party. I received in this first part an interesting account, and I thought it's well worth to read it, because it's always the human element that counts. And it's from a friend, Scott, who's unable to be here today. It's written in the first voice, so I'll read it out. Here it goes. "I remember cramming into the back of Grandad's Mini and driving out with a lot of other people to the bottom of the motorway to watch the opening of the Moskhill sign. It was, and still is, recognition of what can be achieved by the Moskhill community. After amalgamation, things changed, facilities deteriorated, and the surplus that the Borough Council had run vanished and was replaced by ever-increasing debt. And wacky things started to happen, like concrete leaves at Pooh Corner, a red footpath that's now grubby and in winter treacherous, and a councillor that doesn't think the water's important once elected and that communities create jobs, as if Moskhill was a thriving metropolis when the Woolen Mill was built. Moskhill is growing, but jobs are fast disappearing. Moskhill has always had to fight for the things it needs, the lights at Gordon Road, for example. Everyone in Moskhill knew they were needed, but it wasn't until Brenda got bolt and Matthew was killed that any action was taken. With this reactionary approach to Moskhill, it is easy to see why there is such a strong contingent pushing for the aquatic centre. Memories of the Moskhill pool include hobbling over the loose gravel park, car park barefoot, scuba diving, trying to get to the end of the huge inflatable behemoth but never quite managing, and the joy everyone had had been hoisted and faced by the lifeguards. Memories of the library include the holiday reading programme, Margaret Mai, having to go to the coronation hall while asbestos was removed and the library upgraded, and photocopying at the Tyree Herald for my Duke of Edinburgh community service. Being Moskhill born and bred, I, this is Scott, have favourite memories of the pool and library. People my age who grew up in South Dunedin have no such stories to tell, and unfortunately, if the aquatic centre is built, it puts their children in the same position. It is one of the reasons I moved back to Moskhill from South Dunedin this year, so that my son has access to these facilities. Previous councils have, through other big-ticket multipurpose projects, hampered Dunedin's ability to provide for the future, to an extent that desperate community groups fight over scraps while drains in North Road turn into fountains during heavy rain. I used to have to correct Grandad when he asked if we were going to the swimming baths. No, Grandad, it's the pool. One day I would love my grandkids to correct me, silly Grandad, it's the aquatic centre. However, if an aquatic centre in Moskhill comes at the cost of South Dunedin not having basic access to books and internet and a community hub in the heart of their main street, I cannot accept that trade-off. I hope that the community of Moskhill understand this and can also put their support behind a library, which will also serve as a community hub in South Dunedin." I'll move on to my part of the submission, which is essentially that a community hub, particularly a public library, is much needed and would be invaluable to initiate in South Dunedin. Just a bit about my background. For the past six years, I've been a South Dunedin resident and ratepayer who commutes to work at the university by car or bicycle. In that time, I've heard the suggestion raised many times for a South Dunedin community hub, particularly a public library, which is much needed and would be invaluable. So these are the following comments that I gathered from neighbours, friends and colleagues who live in South Dunedin and surrounding areas, and several members of the Andersons Bay Peninsula branch of the Labor Party. So generally, when the case is examined as to why there is not already a South Dunedin library in existence that would also serve as a community hub, things look grim and glaringly unjust. There are currently three branch libraries, Blueski and Bay, Port Chalmers, Waikato, that are north of the octagon, and only one, that is Moskhill, which exists south of the octagon. Some data here, the Dunedin population is 120,00200, this is the 2013 census, and there's approximately one branch per library per 24,040, counting the book bus as a branch, which also equates to one branch library per 660 kilometres squared, out of a total of 3,300 kilometres squared of DCC area. The population centre around South Dunedin is therefore noticeably underserved. The population of selected suburbs proximal to South Dunedin is about 25,257. I can provide the notes for this after this. The population is larger than this at One Count suburb, such as those out on the peninsula, et cetera. It is unjust that most Dunedin branch libraries serve areas with populations of around 3,000 or less, while the South Dunedin population centre, which has comparatively very large population of 25,000 or more, with lower income generally, is deprived. It needs also to be noted that South Dunedin is ranked worst in Otago according to the socio-economic deprivation index. So in brief, while the plans for a community complex in the order of 5.2 million can be pursued, it would also realistically be an option to start on a smaller scale with lower risk and capital outlay, and structured to meet the needs of the local community by initiating a public library as soon as possible in South Dunedin. To me, it doesn't necessarily have to be a complex... To me, it doesn't necessarily have to be a complex, it can be much simpler and cheaper. It is important to help provide greater access with lower barriers for a substantial population of people in South Dunedin to the facilities of a public library that will also serve as a community hub. Thank you.
Councillor Hawkins, shared question.
Thank you, and thanks Richmond. Just a question as to whether you had any specific location in mind for such a facility. People have spoken of it being in King Edward Street. We've also had a submission this morning suggesting that the Gasworks Museum and surrounds could function in that capacity. I just wondered whether, for the needs that you think such a facility should meet, how important a location is.
I've been out in the community and I've heard many suggestions, there've been many other places that have been raised. My approach is, it doesn't matter specifically where it is, but it is within that area of King Edward Street with the big supermarkets. There really isn't a place for people to hang out. It doesn't have to be a new bricks-and-mortar five point two million, as I say, it doesn't have to be complex. And I've avoided the term "community complex" deliberately by talking about community hub. I haven't got a fixed view, but it doesn't necessarily have to be specially built for it. It can be hired, there are a number of premises available, and I must declare I've got an interest in white tatty as well. And I remember from memory that the library there was started from out of a school, in a very little spa- space or enclosure. I think there's prospect, whether commercially or in partnership with the community, for a certain amount of space to be given to make it happen. Just put the library there, make a start, and then incrementally grow as time passes. I think you'd be surprised that there's a very strong case for it. What's important too, it's it's not just the library itself with the shelves, but the meeting rooms and people to mix and to congregate and to network. The wifi is an important aspect of that as well, and the computers. Further and greater detail in my submission, the community profile, the location, as well as the social demographics, point to a very strong case for it. And I've lived there for six years, I've been in Dunedin for twenty years. It is relatively inaccessible there, I've got my bicycle and car, I can be out in the city library or I'm at the university library. But South Dunedin hasn't got a heart, it hasn't got a warm heart for people to congregate. There is a bit of social isolation there for the elderly, for the disabled. The bus service routes are a bit complicated and disconnected, not a fault of that. But, and it's neither a a loose-loose or a win-win situation. I think it could be a win-win situation where there is the city library and there's also the South Dunedin library. The numbers justify it, and we appreciate that Moskhill has its issues too, but they have already got a library.
So you you don't mind necessarily where it is, so long as it has books, but also it's about more than just having books?
That's right, it's about people, it's about bringing the community together somewhere where it's not too cold and windy.
Thank you very much for your submission.
Cool, thank you.
This is Van de Klondut. Welcome.
Hello. Good afternoon, I'm Will Van de Klondut and I'm here on behalf of the Dunedin Public Libraries Association. I'm sorry, I will have to read some of my um questions, sorry, um thank you. I take it that you've read the DPLA submission?
Yes, you can you can take that as read, so you can speak to it.
Firstly, um we've asked for nothing extras this year, but we are, and we do recognise our city is in financial straits, but we do ask you to take nothing or more away from our libraries. The libraries provide the latest books, magazines, DVDs, et cetera, while at the same time replacing those items that have so often been borrowed that they've worn out. The library's purchasing power year by year is eroded because of inflation. Then the li- the council comes along and gives us another cut. That's a double whammy for us and for the citizens of Dunedin. If the library is to be one of the stars in the City of Literature Crown, as it certainly should be, then it has to be given the means to achieve that status. I've often been told I have a bee in my bonnet about the refurbishment of central library building. It being pointed out that the contents are more valuable than the um actual building. But, you know, you shouldn't judge a book by its covers. But in this pl- time, I think it is time that the library is um refurbished. It hasn't been really touched since it was built in nineteen eighty-one, and that's a very long time. And I feel very sad when I go into the library, which I frequently do, and see patchwork carpets, um concrete that looks worse than a lot of our new prisons, I would imagine. Not that I've ever been to a prison, but but um I feel very sorry when I see it, because I think of our wonderful collections, world-renowned, renowned, the Reed Collection and the McNagpa Collections, which are getting their funding cut. Also, um a lot of people will be coming to see those collections, and I just feel very embarrassed to think that they have very bad entry into the libraries. And very sad, the lifts are a bit smelly, and going up the stairs and seeing a patchwork carpets and grey miserable um concrete is not the right look for our library. Also, I think with the poor relation in the whole um council area, the municipal chambers are fine, the um civic centre's great, and here's, we've got this library that is sad and bedraggled. I feel like Oliver Twist, "I'm always asking for more, but nothing ever happens." Perhaps, long is the operative word here. I've been president of the DPLA for many, many, many years, and for many of those years, plans for the library overhaul have been on the agenda, only to be repeatedly shifted down the list of priorities in favour of other, apparently more desirable projects. More desirable perhaps, because they have the potential to bring in money and the library doesn't. What we're asking for, therefore, is to stop these constant deferrals and assurance from the council that this matter will be attended to, no later than the date indicated in the current version of the LTP and considerably earlier, if that is possible. The previous speaker has talked about the complex in South Dunedin. Well, it has, was first mooted in two hu- two thousand and two and has always deferred since then. A South Dunedin uh library which has now evolved into a community complex, possibly for tactical reasons. The DPLA is aware that opinions are divided about the need for this development, but as an organisation, it is very much in favour of it going ahead as soon as possible and in line with the council's proposed option, number one, on page sev- twenty-seven of the consultation document, with a proviso, of course, that the library is included in the plans for this complex. Finally, please, 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 don't turn the LTP consultation process into a kind of Giga Town competition with the outcomeless determined by the number of ticks in certain boxes. That is a pretty shallow form of governance and not conducted, conducive to the kinds of outcomes the DPL wants for the libraries. Better for the council to take on board the evidence associated with Dunedin's international recognition as a UNESCO City of Literature, that the people who live here really do value those institutions and activities which promote the life of the mind, including, of course, our libraries. If that weren't the case, they wouldn't continue to flourish. But they won't go on flourishing if the council fails in its duty to nurture them. Think on that when you're proposing the next cut to the services. Not only will you look, risk looking foolish in the eyes of the literature-loving world, but you will also probably alienate the large proportion of the Dunedin population which depends on access to these services for its sense of wellbeing. In our opinion, that's a risk that you'd be well advised not to take. Thank you.
Questions, councillors? No questions, that was a very clear message, thank you.
I'm sorry that I I stumbled a little bit, but I get a bit nervous.
You were fine.
Thank you, Neil.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Ms Kerr. Welcome. The next five minutes are at your disposal.
I'll just start. I am a resident in the Royal Terrace Pitt Street, Harriet Row Heritage Precinct, THO8, in the district plan. And I realise this is the draft long-term plan, a set of hearings, so I will address this on a resource basis. I have been living, yes, in Pitt Street since two thousand and three, just as I view, and obviously paying market rents. I've probably paid more in that time than some of the co-owners of some of the mansions further up the hill. And in fact, I've done the maths and I have. So in effect, long-term residents, we do have a few in our precinct who are not owner-occupiers. And we too have issues with what's happening for our long-term residents in the area. And I will endorse Marilyn Willis's um submission today in terms of there is no line in the long-term plan for us to address our issues, but if we don't mention it now, we're not going to be in a place to address it succinctly and properly at the two GP consultation rounds from September. So what I'm saying is, here we have a very concise, easily readable precinct. It has the council's own house museum in it, and it has a number of properties of national significance which has yet to be written up to give it further significance as a very close precinct to the central, if you like, CBD. It is linked, and my submission covers a little of that just in brief, but the fact is it links very closely to how the businesses that grew the warehouse district and Princess Street and so forth, a lot of the business people who did the work in the city when it was wealthy, if you like, built their houses in this area, and they are still there, and there has been very little demolition of those homes. Now, this area has a very cohesive, growing resident group that, yes, are very interested in providing resources, that they could collaborate with the city to try and make this precinct more livable, that when we do get to planning considerations, that they are easily enforceable for compliance and monitoring. We're getting in early because we're motivated, we enjoy living there. I'm two minutes from Everyday Goulmay, I have a direct sightline from my apartment through Knox Gardens to George Street. And so the lower foot, if you like, of the Pitt Street, London Street corner of our precinct is incredibly close to the shopping area. And I did move in there because it did have a village. When I first started, we had a s- an array of shops that actually gave us the ability to um work around what the supermarket did and what else we needed as residents in terms of whether it's a plant centre or whatever else. So we've had, I suppose, an historical interesting area. We've had, I suppose, the future is even more interesting if we do density and how that's treated. But we need to think, are there budget lines anywhere in the long-term plan that we could perhaps address to this without requesting new money? And why would we do a residential heritage precinct or zone as a spend? Well, in effect, we see it as a pilot study, and that is the thing. We have an amazing number of residential heritage areas, High Street's one of them, Glenn will know others, where we can look at the quality of the housing, built environment, whatever, that just could be raised, whether it includes businesses in the houses, whether it includes studio rooms, whatever. It's not just housing, there are mixed uses potentially here and are already in existence, but are perhaps not, I suppose, given enough credence at this time as economic development. So this is waffly, I'm not writing an essay here, but in effect, we've got something very special. It's incredibly close to the town, if you like, our CBD, and it also has the buses going through to Olveston. It's tourism already. So in effect, it's got a lot going on, and it's about first impressions of the city. Once you get out of your eyesight in the middle of town and you're heading into the city rise, you've got the city belt, the town belt in effect, which can be, I suppose, through the Amnesty Society, very keen project to get more activities through the town belt as well. So it's it's kind of like a staging post, I suspect, for the central city. It's got green and it's got built environment. So if, as I understand, the next large project is the central city plan, I'm just saying perhaps it shouldn't be to the exclusion of this one, because I think they're so tightly linked. And I think in bringing museums of Dunedin together, this is just another area that would support how we're linking our museums together while we see what Dunedin is. And first impressions of Dunedin as you're coming in on the motorway or wherever is this incredible spread of outstanding housing stock. Quite old, but incredibly adaptable. And what we're after is design guidelines to keep the quality of the built environment up as well as encouraging new development as we go denser. So I'll just leave it there. But I would also endorse me Davidson's submissions today, because I've done a character area assessment of where she was talking about, and she is correct. It's very rich in terms of heritage there too. Heritage is the future.
Thank you, councillor Lord.
Excuse me, Elizabeth, I just, I don't think there's any doubt that we, as councillors, I can't speak for everyone, but I think we do recognise that there is a special significant heritage in this area. The question is, the fund you're talking about and the collaborative pilot study, what would you anticipate the costs would be for something like that?
There's a lot of existing information that's held by the residents, which is historical, and I think a comparison of costs would be similar to what David Murray and Peter Entwistle have been doing in the CBD in researching properties. But we have had people saying, who own the houses, they'd be more than willing to add money to hiring of an architectural, social, historian research project in the sense that they would then want that information donated out to Hockin Collections or the City Library or City Archives, whatever, Shared Heritage New Zealand. So in effect, because there aren't that many properties in this particular pilot study, say, I think it's, on a time basis, it is not out of the order to think that perhaps even with one researcher, you could cover that in a reasonably good amount of time, given some of these houses have already been written up. So I can't give you, you know, tens of thousands as an idea or ten thousand even, but based on what the city knows about its its research projects now for heritage, probably we could work something out there. I mean, seriously, I, you know, I didn't really want to attack your LTP because it was so complicated, to be honest, I can't get through.
You know, I'm not asking you to attack the LTP, but but what you've said, some people have appeared to... Yeah, I'm not asking you to attack the LTP, but what you've said, some people have appeared to pay the funds, so...
Yeah, yeah.
But you don't think everyone's going to be paid the funds, so presumably it's going to be a cost.
Well, there are a range of different owners, councillor Lord. But in effect, you've got people who have bought in purely for investment in studio accommodation and worse, to have it kicked around, kind of accommodation for students who are bouncing basketballs everywhere. But quite frankly, it's a very stable community. There are some very long-lived residents who are particularly keen to assist with this. And if it's framed worked the right way, whether we do studio workshops or whatever, to get the right brief for such a project, that might also give us some clarity about what the cost would be.
So perhaps much closer to teen than teens?
Yeah, probably. Research is expensive, should be, if it's done with quality. But it's not just that, because obviously the group of residents who have met so far are keen on raising amenity, but that's a long-term prospect of whether it's to do with lighting or the paving or whatever. So there are, I suppose, follow-on things, but in the first instance, we have to actually know what it is so that we can actually say what it is in the district planning exercise. We haven't got good descriptors already. That's the problem.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you. Thanks, Elizabeth. Just with regards to your full significance assessment that you're calling for and in the interests of not reinventing the wheel, and I know that you've been an advocate for heritage values for some time, just wondering if you're aware of any work that's been commissioned or completed for council or Heritage New Zealand or any agency that takes in the scope of the work that you think we should be looking at, that we could be drawing on? Is there any such work that has been commissioned or done previously that we could use?
For this area, perhaps not, but I was contracted by the council to do character area assessments. Only got some of them done. But the model of the Warehouse Precinct simplified probably has the same basis, I suspect, for such an assessment, because you're looking at its potential as much as what it's been. And that requires more than the skills of an historian. So there are architectural and urban design aspects which come into it and archaeological aspects. And I do know that nationally there is funding available through agencies such as Heritage New Zealand that would probably get in behind this as matched funding. So there are things out there that perhaps I've quietly looked at. And it doesn't mean that the council therefore would be holding the whole bill for such an exercise.
You're not just fishing for work?
No, I can't. No, I doubt whether I'd be employed ever again.
Councillor Pete.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And one of your bullet points in your submission, the one that you supplied earlier, you talk about behaviour and compliance, and it seems to be echoing what Marilyn Willis was asking for, something that I couldn't get me around at the time. But heritage code of conduct is the way she described it.
Yes, yes.
And so you're obviously collaborating on this. And I'm just wondering how you felt that the council could help with that? Are you kind of suggesting something like, and you've listed a whole lot of misbehaviours and so on that you don't agree with, that are happening and attract from it as a living heritage precinct? Do you envisage something like a leaflet or, I mean, how would you actually operate something like that?
Yeah. First of all, there's probably got to be a good understanding by the council of the Crimes Act would be kind of useful, wouldn't it, to determine what's actually really a crime and what's just a nuisance? But the other thing is, we have looked at other areas, other cities, where there's a code of conduct, if you like, for the residents that was dreamt up by the residents themselves through collaboration. And it's a good neighbour policy, basically, and that's kind of central to most urban design planning exercises that involve heritage or, in fact, residential living, so.
Yeah, so things like washing, hanging out, that kind of...
Well, yeah, draping your balconies and, you know, destroying things, whatever. I'm not so concerned.
I'm trying to get a picture of how this would differ from just good behaviour in a neighbourhood.
Yes. Design guidelines chiefly for a precinct will involve, obviously, district planning matters that are accepted as built environment matters. But in terms of, it's going to come down to how parking's managed, how rubbish collection is managed, and making sure that people understand their responsibility to each other. All of these are nice things to happen, and if somebody steps out of line, that's the query, isn't it? What then, you know? And whether it's tied to bylaws or anything, people are always going to push the boundaries. So I think it's going to be on the residents to form group pressure in some instances to cope with some of that. But a leaflet website, whatever, link to city website, whatever, that's done in collaboration, where there's education and this material and people coming into the area or buying into the area. For example, some of the Chinese people and some of the Taiwanese people, striking great culture difference, all sorts of things happens. And so welcoming documents are part of that, I suspect, as well as meeting each other.
Thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth. Appreciate it. Now, is Mr Rushton-Hoven here? Please come up. Welcome.
You'll be pleased to know my submission is brief, at least because my meter ran out five minutes ago. So I suspect the next letter the council gets from me will be asking to be led of a parking ticket. The reason I'd like to, the thing I'd like to address is the accelerated road widening of the Portobello Peninsula Road. And first of all, I actually like to thank the council for putting it into long-term plan. Just very, very pleased about that, and I think it demonstrates sort of long-term strategic thinking that I'm not really used to seeing from politicians. So just thank you for doing that. Having just received my rates invoice, I'm very pleased that this option will save us all a lot of money. That's great, but the real reason I'm in favour of it and enthusiastically in favour of it is for safety and accessibility. I suspect these arguments apply right along the Portobello Road, but I'm just going to talk about my little area of it, excuse me, which is between Broad Bay and Portobello, because it's a bit I know best. I'm a parent of three girls, one here and two at Broad Bay School, but we live in Portobello. And my eldest, really, her biggest dream is to ride her bike from Portobello to Broad Bay to school on her own. And under this three-year plan, she'd just get a chance to do that, which, you know, is fantastic. And certainly this one here will. No, I don't have to be quiet. We're certainly not unique in that regard. I know several parents who live in Broad Bay, but his children go to school in Portobello and vice versa, particularly people renting often simply don't have a choice of where they're going to live. And really, the road between Portobello and Broad Bay is lethal for anyone not in the car at the moment. I personally know of a mother who used to live in Portobello and used to walk with a stroller and a baby and school her child to Broad Bay every morning. And I don't know how she managed that without getting killed. Certainly friends who jog along that road, God knows why, but they do, who have nearly been clipped by cars. So it's just a very, very dangerous stretch of road. Also, the bit around Portobello itself, where we live in Nicola Street, which is just sort of towards the city end of the Jitie, at points there, the road is about 30 centimetres from the sea, which means that that area of Portobello is effectively cut off from the shopping area. There's no way, you know, my daughter would love to, she's exploring the neighbourhood, she would love to ride her bike to the dairy to get an ice cream, but she really can't. I don't like walking that stretch of road. It's only a short bit, but I wouldn't let her walk or ride along it. And I can't imagine doing it in a Zimmer frame or a mobility scooter or anything like that. So there's a real need to have that done. Just going to have a look at my notes here. Just in a wider sense, Portobello and Broad Bay are really sort of twin communities. There's a lot of shared amenities. The only good beach for swimming is in Broad Bay. The only shop is in Portobello. We share a play centre, as I've mentioned. People go back and forth to schools. And so linking those two villages up, I think, is really, really important. And as I say, I'm sure these arguments apply right along the Portobello Road. And the other thing is that widening that road and providing the space for cyclists and foot traffic will also make it safer for people in cars, which tends to be me, simply because at the moment you can come around any blind corner on that road and there'll be a cyclist in a queue of four or five cars travelling at cycling speed waiting for sort of, you know, 300 metres of clear visibility to pass. So it's just very, very dangerous. And also for tourists and camp events, you know, most of them are piloting these giant things. They're terrified of that road. They're certainly not going to go past a cyclist. That's pretty much all I really wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, questions? Your honour, thank you very much for your submission.
Thanks.
Well, it's indeed our good fortune to have you here. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Ray Tobin. I'm the chairman of the board for the Fortune Theatre. And we really appreciate the opportunity to come along today to thank the council for its ongoing support and its support in the past of the theatre. It's our hope to cement the theatre's place in the Dunedin city as a great theatre and a great city. We see the fortune as a key component of arts in Dunedin, and we'd really like to, well, we hope that the council will ring-fence our place as one of the top distributors of arts in Dunedin. And again, we really do appreciate the support we get from the city council. So I'm not going to talk long. I'll hand over to Bob King, our new general manager at the Fortune Theatre.
Thanks much. I don't have anything to add to Ray at present time. I'm new to the role, so just finding my feet under the desk. Thanks for the opportunity to come to council and present for arts in Dunedin. And now pass over to Laura.
And I'll do all the talking.
That microphone actually moves. It's...
Oh, fancy that.
Don't have to crank it.
Should know that. Only work in the performing arts industry. So yes, to reiterate the other two, of course, many thanks to council for all the support, continued support of the theatre. Four years ago, we set an overreaching vision in place for Fortune, which was to make it the go-to theatre in the country for the highest quality arts experience. And on a daily basis, I'm actually reminded that this vision is being reached. The Herald Theatre in Auckland had a big article on Dunedin only a matter of days ago, whereas Fortune Theatre was noted as one of the highest professional experiences that that particular reviewer had had at the theatre in recent date. This is also reiterated in areas like receiving Arts Access Award at Parliament a few years ago for our accessibility, reaching out to our blind and deaf impaired patrons, herring impaired patrons, excuse me. And this is a service we continue to provide through the theatre. We have national coverage and the listener of our work on a regular basis, and so on and so on. So it's a friendly reminder. Last year, of course, we celebrated our 40th anniversary, which makes Fortune Theatre one of the longest-running theatres in the country. And that's something that Dunedin should indeed be very proud of, because that is not an easy feat to achieve. The key areas over the next three years that I'm looking at artistically to build on are our collaboration. And we start that next month with a first collaboration with the University of Otago Theatre Studies Department, which have created a paper specifically for this project with their year-three acting students. So four acting students are cast in the production, and the remaining eight students, excuse me, are working as interns within every department of the theatre, which is very exciting. The Court Theatre, of course, we have a regular connection with them and looking at a collaboration next year. And I had great news on Friday from Auckland Theatre Company, who approached me directly to collaborate with them and the New Zealand Opera in a brand-new development programme called The Engine Room, which is supporting three mid-term directors working at large, medium and small organisations around the country. So that is something to be very proud of artistically, that we have Auckland Theatre Company calling us to want to be part of what we do. Of course, our development work also reaches into young playwrights and established playwrights. In the last three years, we've created, developed, devised and produced three brand-new world premieres, all by Dunedin playwrights. And next year, we're looking to do the same in our next season and will continue to do so. With the continued support of Creative New Zealand as well, we're in our second year of three-year funding with Kakatiya. And aside from our operating budgets, we have managed to secure touring funding, young playwright development funding and educational support funding. So we're about to head into next year, into our last year of funding rounds for those. And I sincerely hope that we can continue providing our touring show and also our educational outreach because the high school attendance at the theatre has grown so considerably, it's caused us a problem because the students come for such a cheap rate, they're bringing down our average ticket price quite considerably. So it's a wonderful problem to have. But that's just to touch on various aspects of our development process behind the scenes alongside our main stage, in case you weren't aware. Now you are. Oh, yes, fire away.
Councillors. Councillor Noon.
Hello. I just wanted, as a landlord, are we sharing the mood in regards to maintenance on the...
Thank you for mentioning that. That was very remiss of me not to mention it because I've actually noticed quite a bit of activity in the last six months of improvements. And council does answer our call when we request things done, so thank you very much. Yep.
Yeah, thanks, Laura. Just remind us where the nearest professional theatre is.
Christchurch.
Right, so we cover a huge area of New Zealand, don't we?
Yes, Southland and Otago, yeah.
And is that reflected in Creative New Zealand's funding of us?
It's a tricky question. It is in the respect that they are now supporting us touring because we tour to those areas once a year. So yes, in that respect. Any other additional projects that we might want to look at taking to those regions, we would have to apply for additional funding in order to do so.
Right, yeah. No, I get the impression from your submission that the touring element was part of the reason the half a million dollars came in. Is it half a million a year for three years?
It is $440,000 for operating costs, and $60,000 of that is set aside for three projects alone. And one of those is touring funding, which is $30,000. So that is only guaranteed for three years. So it is my belief before I was here that the fortune did receive touring funding from CNZ at one point in time. Then it disappeared for reasons I'm not sure why. And now we've managed to secure it back for three years. But whether or not it's continued after the end of next year, I won't know. We'll be putting in our submission about April, May of next year.
Yes, well, good luck with the touring, because I think that will be certainly an important part of your case, I think, when you're to renew your funding with CNZ.
Thank you, yeah.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you. I work in broadcasting.
Yeah, well, you've got no excuse.
Is there, does the fortune have ambitions of joining Creative New Zealand's Totorra Programme, which is the next level up from the Kakatiya Programme?
Just to clarify what my understanding of the two programmes, the two portfolios are. There was a misleading amount of information when CNZ, three years ago, changed their portfolios into the two, Totorra and Kakatiya. Totorra being the grown-up tree and Kakatiya being the sapling. According to the questions, because the board, the Fortune Theatre Trust, have questioned this on many occasions as to why we are now in the Kakatiya, there is actually no difference whatsoever. They are parallel portfolios. We are now funded on a three-year level as we were in Totorra. And we have been reassured that there is no difference between the two. In fact, it gives us a little more flexibility. So when we were going through our second round of funding, not last year but the year before, we went through quite a considerable detail backwards and to-ing and fro-ing about this. And we were reassured that, as opposed to when it was first launched, there was some misunderstanding around that. But in fact, it's really no different. And the way we're funded now up to three years is exactly the same as what we were doing on Totorra, except when we were on Totorra, we did receive more, we did receive more operating funds. So we were cut back initially, but then we've regained with the private project funding. So it's kind of swings and roundabouts from my understanding.
Councillor Kelvin.
Just without wasting time today, could you...
Just without wasting time today, could you email through to us some detail, I see in the budget here, things that don't make any sense at all to me. I mean, they have front-of-house and then production income, and then other income, and then other non-activity income and things. I've got no idea where any of that's coming from. Is there any way we could just have a wee bit more flesh to, to those bones of what's coming in and from where?
Of course.
Just, as I say, could you just email through sometime? That'd be lovely.
I guess, just to clarify, you guys will be, this isn't an application for funds, is it? What you're asking for is effectively, or what you're saying is, hey, we're here, and we will be applying to the Grants Subcommittee for Funds. So that's, I imagine, why you haven't provided the same level of detail in your report that you would normally do, given in the previous grants framework. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Kelly Allen. Welcome, Ms Allen.
Thank you, thank you. It's great to get the opportunity to come along and address the councillors about Dalmore Reserve, and particularly about Pine Hill. This is my esteemed colleague Fred Smith, who hopefully will be the convener of a community vegetable garden if we manage to get there far with the lease and all that kind of stuff. What I've got here for you...
Sorry to interrupt. Can you just move that microphone...
I'm sorry.
...towards you? Because it's completely mobile, so you can have it right in front of you.
I've got some overhead photographs here for you of the Dalmore Reserve. And it shows, sort of shows the orange, but is the boundary of Dalmore Reserve. And it shows you exactly, I mean, the reason I've photocopied that today is to provide you with a copy of... Where's the, where's those maps? No, there's another map. Doesn't look like they've given it to me. You got, did you get this? It's sort of hard to look at electronically. And I did ask the warehouse stationery, or whoever it was, to photocopy me some, but they seem to have not given it to me. I can send this around anyway, and it's sort of, I'll hold it up. It sort of shows the figure eight that you can see on the orange, yeah. And it shows the actual tracks. And there's one thousand two hundred and eighty metres of track that was proposed in two thousand and two. This was actually, I'll pass it around, it was designed by a lady called Jill Carson, I believe, on behalf of the council.
Except, except half the track, like this, but here, it's not existed in the moment.
Yeah, so the right side...
There's its old track that's overgrown.
The right side of that aerial overhead photograph cannot be accessed at all. This plan here asks, the plan actually has a design for there to be, the only access at the moment to Dalmore Reserve is through Allenby Avenue, which is actually in Liberton. And you can see on the map, the Allenby Avenue side, and there's a little section that goes, shows you an entrance. Put my glasses on. I'd call myself a semi-retired social advocate with an MBA. And Fred is a horticulturalist. We're neighbours in Lundle Street, which looks down at Dalmore Reserve. It's a fairly ugly-looking area. There are a lot of, the demographics in Pine Hill, particularly in Dalmore, in Liberton, are mostly low-income people. In Liberton, there's a lot of state houses with, and ex-state houses, with very empty backyards and very little for the kids to do up there. We've got two actual playgrounds, both of them have got really old play equipment. And one of them has, is in, down a dark bank in Orble Street. And the mothers up there have told me that the equipment is dated. Basically, we've got no recreational amenities in the area at all. But we've got this huge area of unused, unproductive land. Mr Frank Penny, an elderly resident of Pine Hill, who lives right at the end of Fletcher Avenue, I actually interviewed him about this. He told me that he was involved years ago, he was a member of the Rate Payers Association, and he was involved in the Fletcher Avenue housing development, which is all state houses. And he said that at that time, they, they were, property developers at the time were required to put money into a reserve fund for amenities in the area. And I would suggest to you that we actually don't have any amenities in our area. And we are also one of the lowest social decile suburbs, I'd say, in Dunedin. And Mr Penny's view, that was his view, actually, and he suggested that I should ask council what happened to the reserve money that was given for those housing developments. Where is it being spent in our suburb? Dalmore Reserve Bandit Gardeners is what we, a Facebook page that we set up in December last year, primarily to get the word out there and get some feedback, and as a means of informing residents and gaining a bit of momentum and a bit of publicity about this huge piece of unused land. Also, Bandit Gardeners are actually already operating in the reserve. There are people that go down there with grubbers and cut out gorse. There's some people that live on Gladstone Road that have helped cut out some of the tracks that do exist, but they're not, they're only muddy tracks, they're not, they're well-worn tracks, worn by, worn in by generations of Pine Hill kids, such as Fred, who grew up in Pine Hill. Pine Hill Primary School, and ended at DCC, had a native planting in Dalmore about six years ago of a whole area of pine trees that got, got cut out. It used to be the kids' playground, the pine trees, but now there, there's nothing, just the native trees. The, the figure eight walking track, there's one thousand two hundred and eighty metres of proposed track down there, currently less than half of which is accessible due to overgrowth. So that track that you see on that plan that's going around just doesn't exist. The proposed tracks would actually link the suburbs of Dalmore to Liberton, and Liberton to North East Valley, and it would provide the women and the kids in our area, many of whom don't have vehicles, there's a lot of single-parent families up there, to, a way to get crisscross across the suburbs without going all the way around Gladstone Road, or all the way down Buick Close Street, or whatever. We, in this year, we're hoping, like currently, Marty King Siller, he said to say to you that he supports our proposal to develop a community garden in Dalmore Reserve. And he is putting it to his Board of Trustees tonight to umbrella our community garden proposal that we will put through to council. I mean, Fred and I are working on that proposal at the moment, currently. That's not what we hear about. We hear about the tracks. Oh, sorry, the valley project, yeah. And I, and we decided that the valley project, rather than setting up our own charitable trust to look after the reserve, that the valley project is probably the most appropriate organisation, because they already exist and they already, like, they support the North East Valley Community Garden. And as you can see from those maps, over half of Dalmore Reserve is actually located on the valley side, not in Pine Hill. I think I've talked enough about the community garden. And the cost. I was involved back in the day, I used to run the Drug and Alcohol Rehabilitation Trust, I was Borum then, I was a Borum. And we were involved in the pineapple track and the Fraser's Gully track. And back then, the council had a per metre price for the installation of tracks, for those tracks. And the contract work schemes were what completed those tracks, years, you know, over twenty years ago now. But the, and I suppose there must be a per metre cost that councillors would be, I don't have access to that information at the moment, and I haven't prepared any budgets for you as to how much it would cost. But I know that the benefits socially for us in Pine Hill and surrounding areas, in terms of having some walking tracks minimally, with a few seats, would be great. The kids, the first inaugural meeting that we had of four Dalmore Reserve, there were more kids turned up than adults. There were about seven adults and twelve kids. And the kids are still asking me, when are we going to get a playground, Kelly? You know, and I haven't really been able to answer that. But I think if we, once the walking tracks are there, then we'll be able to see what, what actually exists. Because as Fred and I have discussed, that whole area on the right-hand side is actually established native bush, big trees, and it'd be a lovely walking area for us. And the women, the mothers that came to that original meeting, they said, we'd like Wood Hall Gardens in Dalmore Reserve, because we're sick of walking all the way to Wood Hall every time we want to have a birthday party, or when it gets so hot in, in Pine Hill, it gets very hot up there on the hill. There's no swimming pool, there's no paddling area, there's nothing. They would like Wood Hall Gardens in Dalmore Reserve. The tracks is the starting point.
Okay, so can I, I'm just conscious of time, so I note that from your submission, written submission, that you might want to just very briefly outline it, what you want from council. You want council to plan and start to develop the tracks.
Yes. We'd like that, we'd really like that.
So could I throw it over to questions now, so that we can get some more understanding for councillors? Questions. Councillor Wilson.
Thank you. This submission really excited me. Well done. Are you, just taking this question further, there are a lot of community groups that get in and harness the energy in the community to do this sort of work, and just need the okay to do it. Is that the sort of thing you're working with the valley project for, or you need actual expertise as well? I mean, that's what I picked up from it.
I think we need labour and materials. We, most of the people up there are either elderly or single-parent families. There isn't the labour up there to do that. And I think, I mean, we, the valley project could support me to do some funding applications to maybe go dollar-for-dollar with the council for the tracks to be installed. I mean, I'm sure there's fun places that we could go to, to get money to go for dollar-for-dollar. But we would, we'd like to see some, something up there for us, and we've got nothing.
Just a very quick question. I asked over six months ago, an official information act request as to what was happening in Pine Hill, what contribution was being made by the council to Pine Hill apart from roading. I haven't had an answer yet, and I understand that the reason I haven't had an answer is that there is nothing to be found. Is that what you think's going on? And so this would be the first and only thing that the council's done outside normal things, as far as you know, in the area?
Since two thousand and two. Or when those, six years ago, when they had a project with the Pine Hill School to put native trees into that, but where there were pine, pine trees at the reserve. But, I mean, I said to Lisa, I didn't know that this plan for tracks existed, and I also didn't know how big Dalmore, I thought, because we can only actually access half of the reserve at the moment, where you can walk around half of it, the other half you can't get into because it's such heavy bush. But I asked Lisa Wheeler, why, how come council hasn't gone ahead with these tracks? I mean, why do you spend all this money with this plan and nothing's happened? How come nothing's happened? She said, well, no one's championed the cause. And I said, well, I'm going to.
Yeah, on the overhead, you know, the photographic, there's some bare, or semi-bare ground there. What is that?
That's where the pine trees were.
Yeah, okay. So that's all cut over, and is it replanted or not?
That's where the school planted all their native plants.
Right.
And on this plan, it's the area with that big crosses up to the entrance lane.
The proposed, we don't want that proposed lookout, there's already a lookout built into the land there. It's the most fabulous, you can see straight up George Street past the octagon from our hill. But, yeah, it's a muddy track. It would be a lovely spot to have a picnic, or a barbecue, or whatever, but it's a muddy spot. It's got no paving, there's no seats, there's nothing. We just want some seats. We don't even want a platform. We just would like somewhere we could certainly have a chat and a picnic. Thank you, councillors.
Thank you. Vehicle. Mayor, councillors, today I'm submitting on behalf of both Disabled Persons Assembly, DPA, Dunedin Districts, as well as CCS Disability Action Southern Region. The reason for this is that the representatives of the CCS Disability Action Southern Region are not able to make it today. They send their apologies as well as their regards. We've written broadly similar submissions, and I just want to take about five minutes to quickly highlight the key common points in our respective submissions. First up, we broadly support the central city upgrade plan. We've been involved in that process, we've attended meetings, and we hope to have further involvement through the consigliere processes that will no doubt go on from here on in. We hope to see a fully inclusive and accessible central city that emerges from the upgrade. We broadly support the reinstatement of the Disability Issues Advisory Group. This is a very welcome development. We've already had one meeting back in February, and I hope that one will be scheduled very shortly. We broadly support the DCC funding, the therapeutic pool, or part funding rather, the therapeutic pool, in collaboration with money raised from the local community. It has greater suitability for disabled people, given that it is heated at a higher temperature than Moana Pool. For disabled people such as myself and Phyllis, it's often very warm and therapeutic. I can tell you that I've been using that pool now for well on forty years. That signifies my age, doesn't it? I've been using it since I was a kid. It would be a real shame if it were to close. Therefore, I call upon council to contribute alongside the community to this wonderful facility. We also support the Moskell Pool, the Moskell Aquatic Centre Development, which we understand is the subject of separate hearings, given you've had so many submissions come forth. We hope that the facility will be fully inclusive and accessible to all disabled people, as well as to other members of the community. We've been in touch with Michael Stedman from the Pool Trust, and we hope to meet with him in due course. We broadly support the Taki Museum upgrade, provided that the new facilities fully meet and go beyond and above minimum access requirements. And we welcome any involvement by the museum in this process. CCS believes, more specifically, that the self-dunedin community library, community centre complex, if it does come about, is funded, if it is funded, CCS would welcome the full involvement by disabled people and a disability issues advisory group in its planning, as would we at DPA. Finally, I wish to conclude this oral submission by inviting councillors and council staff in particular to open the door at Tagoo Emplored Hui next Wednesday, May 20th, studying in Sweet Dunedin Public Library. As cameras are here, it's also good publicity. So on that account, we are also running a accessibility issues hui in conjunction with CCS Disability Action later in the year. Mayor, I now invite any questions from you or councillors.
Questions, councillors? Nope, there are none. Thank you for that very succinct and clear submission, and we will endeavour to get someone to you or Hui.
Thank you very much.
Ms Tate. Ms Tate.
Thank you. Thank you. My submission is in relation to the South Dunedin Community Complex. A library in South Dunedin area has been on the council's radar for a very long time. It's been a long and troublesome gestation. Now it looks like the birth is getting closer, but there's still no birth plan, no midwife, and not even a space book for the library to emerge. It's unusual for any council project to stumble along in such a haphazard way. Is the lack of will to drive it forward over these many years just due to financial barriers? Or have staff not got behind the project because they don't fully understand the benefits of a South Dunedin library could provide? Key indicators of socio-economic disadvantage in this area are easily available, and council's own strategy of Dunedin as a learning city should be an obvious driver. But I think maybe economic arguments and market forces may speak more loudly to you. This is Dunedin's major destination for grocery shopping, hardware, card sales, and fast food. People come here to shop, not only from the local suburbs, but they're drawn from a much larger area of Dunedin. Big box retail is thriving, and those who visit the area for shopping may well find it convenient to visit a library situated on this side of town. Overall, library usage would increase, because many locals may not be regular library users due to transport difficulties. Some elderly people and people with disabilities find accessing the book bus difficult due to the steps, and would much prefer to visit a library building where reference material, computers, and the full range of library resources would be on offer. It's essential that the library is situated in King Edward Street, incorporated into the retail shopping area. Any assistance the council can give to breathe some life back into this street would be appreciated by the local retailers. It needs to be conveniently situated, both for pedestrians and people who wish to drive there. And retrofitting an old building makes sense, both in terms of economics and location. Social agencies, local businesses as well, are well aware of the huge potential for a local library and community complex to improve educational outcomes, provide equity of access to modern technology, create a hub for community strengthening, and draw people back to the main street of South Dunedin. I've come here today to speak to my submission because I wish to ask you specifically to not let any other council projects knock the South Dunedin Library and Community Complex from its present position in the council's long-term plan. This may not be a very vocal community, which is good at organising campaigns, but it's long overdue for the investment that this fabulous resource, like the community complex and library, has to offer.
Questions? councillor Thompson.
Geraldine, I'm just picking up on this, because it's in a number of submissions, and I'll say it once. But you talk about the need to, that you're not comfortable about the notion of selling an asset to fund this. And I'm just wondering, from your perspective, if the council owns a building and it's letting it to a private business and getting a rent, and it sells that building and lets it to the library and gets a rent, what is it about that that concerns you? And I'm not really picking on you with, because it comes up in a number of submissions.
I was a wee bit confused. Generally, how the council funds things is sort of your business, not mine. And I was really surprised in your information book that you put out for us to view, the sort of short version of your plans, that this was a project, we specifically didn't say, do you want it or don't you? But do you want us to sell stuff, or do you want us to put up rates? It was kind of presented in a way that was, I don't know what you were getting at, whoever wrote this. Sorry, may not have been in your view individually. But normally, if it's on the long-term plan, and it has been for a very long time, it's been decided to fund it, and it's your financial advisers and councillors' decision how you'll get that bulk money to fund all the wonderful things you want to do. But for some reason, this particular project had a little catch put in there. So, oh, you want this, but we will make you suffer. Or we'll make this really confusing by putting this difficult question there. So actually, I didn't fully understand it. I'm not generally in favour of council selling assets. I think there's always a kind of, you know, we make money from assets we own, so letting any go, it's always a kind of a tricky one. So I wasn't comfortable answering that question. But I had to ask and challenge why it was presented in such a way. Surely it should be, do you think the council should fund this? Then we'll work out where we get the money from. Rather than, it is our business, it's people that want to support this very long-term goal of a community complex and library in South Dunedin, to work out where the money's coming from. That's what we're kind of getting at, I think.
Further questions, councillors? Thank you, Geraldine.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr Baxter. Welcome, Mark.
Hey, how's it going, team? You look thoroughly interested in the end of the day. Hey, you'll be thankful that I can probably make this reasonably quick, rather than reading half of what they've asked me to. Regarding the rates increase cap, basically, we agree with three percent cap, it's a wicked idea. But we'd really like the DCC to add some caveats into that, saying if some projects come along that are of universal benefit, i.e. they'll benefit low-income and fixed-term residents who are disproportionately hit more by rates. If something comes along that helps them out, we'll happily go over the cap for that, because it'll help them more than everyone else. Was that clear? Maybe I should have just stuck to reading. The exception to the cap, I see we're asking for one already for next year. And that's cool with stuff that's exceptional circumstances. But the changing the way the stadium's financed, we don't see as an exceptional finance. That bill's always existed, it's nothing new, it's nothing out of the ordinary. We're just changing how we fund it. I don't think that's exceptional, that's just changing stuff. Good old asset sales, I'm sure hundreds of people have come along today and said, don't sell assets. Ops' main contention with selling assets is we wouldn't want the council to sell assets that are the council's role to provide. Like, say there was a role for state housing, because central government wasn't doing it, for example. We wouldn't want you to sell the state houses, the council, oh, I forget the nice word for it. The council, social housing, we wouldn't want to sell the social housing off. So anything that's a role to provide shouldn't be seen as something we can sell off for a quick buck. Likewise, profit-making assets, we don't think the council should particularly sell those, unless it's to trade up to a better investment, obviously. But we think profit-making assets for all of the community to get the profit from, not just those who can afford to buy into it. Racing through this. Pool fees, something probably no one else has mentioned. Last year, you introduced a tertiary student discount for pool fees, which we think is great, wicked, we thank you very much. You'll see the table of proposed fees for next year, list the concession swim, there's three dollars sixty for concessions such as students. However, that's a bit of a lie. The student concession doesn't apply to the casual rate, it only applies if you buy a season pass. So we think it should also apply to the season rate, just as it does for community service cards and other concessionaries. You can go out, there's some more information on the website, and on the people that answer the phone. And the children's casual fees going up, we think that's a bit mean, because they'll end up disproportionately last time, they'll end up quite a bit more than the adults here. Plus, lots of people have several children. So if you take three children in all, that's not just one thirteen percent increase, that's like a thirty-six percent increase in what it costs to take them to the pool. And lastly, I have a question. Times three. The amount of money's gone up by three times, you pay out of your pocket. And you may quote the council on that. Hey, and lastly, I have a question, just regarding the excessive noise equipment seizure. It's gone up from fifty-eight to two hundred and fifty-five. I was just wondering what the justification is there? You don't know? No, fair enough. If it's decided that it's to be refined, that's probably fine, I guess, all I can say. Otherwise, we'd be like, well, what's going on there? And well, many questions.
Thank you. questions, councillors? Record time. There are none. You did very well. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much.
Welcome, Mr Mackay.
Hello there, Mr Carr. How are you?
Very well.
I don't mind being filmed.
So the next five minutes is yours.
Okay, great. I did present a slightly scruffy handwritten thing, but I've made some more comments. I don't think I'll read them all out, because probably time will not permit. My main, I suppose my main right really is that there seems to be no sort of accountability mentioned in any of the documents that you have in regard to the rate payability to pay for these projects that seem to be ever appearing on the agenda. As councillors, you, as part of your sparring processes, to make your decisions that are for the benefit of all of the rate payers of Dunedin, not just a few who manage to twist your arms. There's been evident decisions in the recent past, often decisions have been made by council staff and councillors on projects, which while a lot of hope surrounds them as a means to solve Dunedin's economic future, ends up costing many millions of dollars, that receive no return on investment, plus the rate payers increase rates, so to charge. You're being asked by the Tago cricket this time to help fund two million in lights and increase the ground size by bringing in millions of dollars to the city. Cricket, like rugby, is a professional sport, you can fund your own. There seems to be cost cuttings and savings on the agenda. And to do that, you simply want to cut core services and sell off small parts of land, et cetera. You only need to consider your organisation to find savings by increasing efficiency in staff and practices. I made a comment there about the stadium, which is supposed to be on time and on budget of a hundred and ninety-eight million and six hundred thousand dollars. As we all know, that is not the case. And as price provider, has declared the DCC's debt is a hundred and sixty million, the DCC claims it is a hundred and forty million. Whatever it is, it's costing us as rate payers this year eleven point five million to run this stadium. And Jim Harland in two thousand and eight, in a publication or an interview he did for the Christchurch Press, said fifty-six percent of the income of the stadium would be from rugby. Now, we see down there that thus far in two thousand and fifteen, the seven Highlanders games, there's been ninety-one thousand seven hundred people attending. So we're with profits from that. Are there any profits? Obviously not.
Say, you can't assume that because we're not here to answer your questions, that you know what the answers are.
I thought you might sing that you're privy to a lot of this information.
We're here to listen.
Okay, that's fine.
But we're not going to be answering questions.
Thank you. Right. Recently, the mayor responded to alleged the ODT that stated reporting from council-owned companies to the holding company and then to councillors as robust and conducted through regular reports and briefings. If this is the case, why was Delta allowed to be able to spend so much money on dodgy land deals in Queenstown and Central Otago and allow to accrue by June last year, an outstanding debt of twelve point eight five million for work on yet another failed subdivision, this time a Christchurch? This would make Delta's loss round about twenty million dollars. And if your reporting is robust and conducted through regular reports and briefings, there was something wrong. And to think that Grady Cameron, who is the CEO of Delta, was awarded a management prize for his skills last year. The mayor has recently stated that to save costs, she advocates that the NAB library should close on Sundays to save seven thousand six hundred and five dollars in the two fifteen sixteen financial year and more in following years. First estate Richard Walls wanted to close the whole library on Sundays, and now the mayor wants to suggest that a similar cost saving along with similar small parts to be sold off as cost savings. The same rules do not apply to the nine percent pay increase that councils have been awarded, which the mayor says is justified and should be higher. My government inflation justice revenueations have just gone up one dollar sixty-five a week. The year ending thirty-first December, the consumer price index had risen point seven six percent. And council spending should also reflect this. A single superannuate after tax receives two hundred and eighty-eight dollars a week. So your four and a half thousand dollars, whatever it is, is quite a bit, really. And you add on about two, three percent that you'll probably add to our rate volume, it's quite a lot. In recent times, there's been a lot of unauthorised spending at the DCC. There's two million dollars, so it was spent on buying stuff for shouting everybody from morning tea and afternoon tea. And one of the managers who's probably about to leave or has left is reported to have a thousand dollars of advance in his office. I presume he's paid for this, if not, he should do. You've got the recent one point five million Fiesco. You had a manager that was allowed to stay at least five to six months after he resigned. And any other organisation that managed would have a paperback professional level survival in the air. My employee manager was able to report a ten thousand per year over ten years, and he was allowed to keep his job when he resigned. The manager even gave him a good reference, apparently. He's less than ten thousand, you're now getting back to DCC, should more than pay for the opening of a NAB room on Sundays, which a few people may use. Other spending results and losses, DCC purchased the Tago Caris book off for seven million, selling it for three and a half. The cost of the traffic lights on Anzac Avenue and Frederick Street will probably cost the best part of a million dollars by the time a solution is found. The manager responsible listed the construction of Highway eighty-eight as one of his achievements in part of resignation, note resignation, as the engineer who turned the lights on. It cost the landowner far more than this figure, and he had to move premises. A few other things, Timbonet received three hundred thousand dollars of a live or mess-up of the DCC relating proposals on this Wall Street property, this is a year or two ago. A similar thing was handed to the owners of the Blackhead Porridge. It's reported that the DCC had approved housing loans of some four million dollars to staff who are unable to get loans from the channel. So how many other of these things are going on?
Mr Mackay, you're running out of time. Can I suggest that you address things in the long-term plan in the future, rather than rehearsing fairly dubious facts from the past?
That's fine, that's fine, it's just one of these things. What I would like to do is to see the, the, where are we? We have got the cycle link, which has gone from four point five million up to six odd million dollars at the moment, according to the recently published thing. The manager who's supposed to be in charge of it, he was supposed to be to deliver a new transport initiative, senior leadership responsibilities, he was experienced and enthusiastic, would take senior transport management role. He was also to lead a team of transport professionals and will provide leadership of planting the city's transport network to deliver maintenance and outcomes. No two cycle lanes are the same, some are nine hundred, some are twelve hundred, some are two metres wide. No two speed humps are the same. They must be a real curse to buses, ambulances, fire brigade, the police, along with the rest of us. We've now got all these protrusions that have got square corners on them rather than round. The number of people who are using the cycle lane are very small. Bayfield on Friday had nine cycles in the bicycle shed. Um, Bayfield on Friday had nine cycles in the bicycle shed. So for the amount of money that's being spent on it, and if you want to save money, my, my feeling is that you should stop all this now, review the whole situation and put the money that you save back into some of the projects that you're trying to refinance and adjust your books. So, that's it.
Thank you. Questions, councillors? There are none. Thank you for your submission.
That's okay. Distributed to you. And I'm here to say first of all, thank you for the existing grant of fifty thousand dollars. And we would like to see it carried over the next financial year. Simple reason, Porta Taga are hopefully close to accepting a price for the breakwater. Um, they're negotiating in the next few days with a likely contractor. And from that, once that's agreed upon, resource consent will be applied for. It's been a long battle and we're trying to replenish a beach that's at the far end of the peninsula, Harrington Point. Pilot's Beach is limited access for the public these days. Peppercarity Beach, when I was a kid, you could use it freely. And Victory Beach of Papenui in that has also been precluded. So briefly, that is what we're asking for. We're very grateful for the grant that's been allocated towards it. Costs are forward, of course, but you'll get me with your assistance. So I request us simply to, can we have it carried over for the next financial year? So hopefully by Christmas, we'll see a breakwater there, provided there's not too much flack about the resource consent progress.
Thank you. Questions, councillors? Councillor McTavish.
Thank you, and congratulations on the efforts that you guys have done to date around this. I think it's been obviously a significant community effort. Um, are you able to confirm that you've, you've got sufficient funds for this? Uh, or are you still in fundraising mode?
We're in a tricky situation in the sense that the two major funders we're looking at, one will entertain the application for funding only when the, when the resource consent has been applied for, for the building construction, resource consent. The other one won't even consider an application for funding until the resource cons, until the resource consent has been granted.
Right.
But we've got it earmarked, we've had expert advice from a person from Department of Internal Affairs, and he's been very helpful and we've had discussions with the funders.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Marsonowski. Welcome, Tony.
Hi, thanks. Um, I live in McCandrew Bay. I made a submission myself and my wife, we, we did this. But, um, she's not here, so I apologise for her absence. Um, I'm here to talk about the, the Portobello Road widening.
Can you just move the, right in front of me? It's freestanding, so.
Okay, cool. Yeah, um, Portobello Road widening, um, we're probably in the minority here and we had to speak against it rather than for it. Um, I know it's a popular claim, it's almost bordering on a frenzy to get this, this road completed. But as we pointed out in our submission, there are four points there. And perhaps maybe reasons of tonight, I can just dwell on the first one. Um, this should be quite obvious. Um, head and shoulders, um, above all reasons for our, our submission is the annihilation of, of so many core values of that part of the peninsula, the, you know, the rock wall being developed. Uh, the amenity, the cultural, the historic values going, uh, the general ambience. And I, I just wish, I've been trying to find a word in English language that could conflate all those, those, those terms. But I don't think we have such a word in, in our language and I just choose to use the word beauty. And all the beauty has gone there. Um, it's, you know, the, the bitumen and basalt replacement, it's got a, um, a sort of utilitarian aspect about it that not even poetry, I think, could dispel. And that's part, probably part of the problem. A good deal of the designers and engineers and project managers who oversee this probably haven't got enough of poetry in the, in the backgrounds. There's a sublime, it's just not there. Um, I was talking about this very point with John Bailey, former of the provincial board there, um, a year or two ago. Um, he got quite upset Monday when a sewage pumping station was deposited right in the middle of Panerama Harbour View from this, uh, picture window in this art gallery. And with a little bit of lobbying, he managed to get the thing shifted over a little bit. But one would have to wonder why it was put there in the first place. And I think that kind of mindset's underpinned this whole current peninsula riding development. Um, there's a, there's a boy who could write an article in the paper on this Monday morning, I think, Peter Entwistle. He quite often talks about the, the city's landscaping, architecture. He can take a boring, bland brick and mortar wall and, and turn it into a thing of wonder and joy. But I'm not even sure with his, his arts, his literary skills, he could do anything to that wall out there. Um, also, um, part of our concern, in fact, it's, it's a trepidation that we feel for those parts of that road where it's got a, a perimeter of vegetation like at the Cove or further back where we, you know, I think back around about three ninety-eight Portobello Road. We've got these lovely toy toys, uh, flax bushes, uh, macrocarper trees and cabbage trees and the like. And they form a wonderful, wonderful vista there, especially with the, uh, with the boat sheds in the background. And I'd hate to see that compromised and infringed upon. It's a real important part of, of the peninsula. Um, we made a point about the effect of the road at night time. Um, when, uh, the new roads put in, apparently there's a formula that the designers worked to. It's going to be certain lighting intensity for, 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 you know, in the new road. Um, but this would totally destroy an aspect of that peninsula at the moment. The nighttime view of the peninsula, both from, from the harbour, from town looking back up the harbour and vice versa. It's, it's quite unique and as we described in our submission, we, we call it a idiosyncratic road of the shadows that's under much peril and threat. And I pointed out in our submission that on the West Harbour side, the cycleway there, when that was installed, uh, the lighting there was chosen so it wouldn't have contributed to the city's light pollution. So it's suggestive this, uh, lighting does go in conjunction with the road, that these things should, should be addressed. Recently, um, beginning of the month, I was at, um, Tarra ahead for the, the, the peninsula challenge. I was there exactly a year before and have not visited in between. And I was, I was staggered by the, by the changes to that upper part of the peninsula. That windy little road's been widened and made smoother, the vegetation's gone and white traffic lines appear everywhere. And, um, I just couldn't understand why this has happened. Um, the population basis there certainly doesn't warrant such an intrusion. Um, a quick check with the census figures, I, I, I worked out, I came up with some rather alarming, alarming news. Um, two thousand and thirty cent, thirteen census, in the Tarra Cape Saunders area, there were four hundred and ninety-eight residents and compared with five hundred and nineteen in the two thousand and six census, um, some four or five percent decrease. Uh, also, the areas Broad Bay, Portobello, Company Bay, uh, and McCandrew Bay, there's been an increase of some hundred and seventy-two people. Um, in other words, a net of about a hundred and fifty-two people in that part of the peninsula. It's not quite an Auckland population bubble, but I would, I can't understand why, uh, such a huge investment is being made for this, you know, tiny little population increase. So the only increase, uh, explanation I can find is the precious of tourism. Um, but when, when one has to modify, change an environment to, to cater for those that are coming to observe that environment, surely doesn't question, has to be asked, is there not a tipping point that has been reached? Is, is there a carrying capacity that maybe should be, be addressed? Um, and I think this is what's happening on the peninsula. And all, all this is done against the background of a very robust decision the council's just recently made about divesting an unethical investment. Uh, fossil fuels, um, tobacco, pornography, for instance. And as far as that fossil fuel one goes, there's actually a letter in this morning's paper about it commending the council for your courageous and responsible decision. Um, yet at the same time you've done this, you seem to be wanting to invest in, in, in activity that underpins what surely would have to be described as the most profligate and wasteful energy of fossil fuel on this planet. And I refer to tourism, global tourism especially. Each year, small lake pools of energy are used to haul itinerant gorpas around this planet, really for no other reason than to, to hoover up as much of this planet into their digital cameras and, and other sundry electronic devices. Um, and one of those big aeroplanes, when it's coming here, it's using some twelve tonnes of fuel every hour. It's nearly forty tonnes of carbon dioxide every hour that's coming here. And, um, in this day and age now, this new collective future we all have, where we're, we're, we're firmly fixed in the crosshairs of thermageddon, and I, I'm just wondering how this, um, this blinkered, emperor has no clothes business of scenario, business as normal scenario plays out. Longer roads, wider roads, longer runways and bigger cruise ships just doesn't cut it anymore. And I'm reminded of that aphrodisiac, what it is to be human. Uh, we humans are like, um, a bunch of teenagers in a fast car, all going downhill at night. The brakes don't work, the lights don't work, and all the signs along the ways say progress. So, um, yeah, if, if we do really care about the place, I think we'd be maybe taking a leaf out of someone like James Lovelock's book, The Gaia Hypothesis, who says, if we do truly care about this planet, uh, we should all stay at home. So, um, that's why, um, we've, we've come to this submission process. That Portobello Road is, it's a metaphor for a much, much wider problem that's confronting us. Um, we don't need more people, we need fewer people, we need fewer tourists. I know that's not going to fall well on the ears of the tourist operators, et cetera. But, uh, as, um, as James Lovelock said, Gaia, she doesn't do by allowance. Thank you.
Look, you wish, I think, Tony, that's a very hard act to follow. I think you've articulated a lot of the subtleties in decision-making, which are so difficult to capture. And I thank you for having the courage to come and articulate some of those for us today. Um, I, uh, I totally appreciate where you're coming from and I, um, a lot of what you've articulated is a lot of what I've struggled with about this project. And I guess I have a question for you, which is probably not necessarily leading to the answer no, which you're seeking. But, um, given that this is such a strongly supported, um, project in our community, what would you do? What support would you put around the project to ensure that some of those critical values which you were articulating the need for are retained? So you talk about, um, engineers not perhaps understanding some of the subtleties and the values which you'd like to see protected. What sort of skill sets, what sort of people would you like to see involved in the project? So that perhaps some of those things are retained. Do you have any comment on that?
Well, in my time, I've, I've built a few dry stone walls myself, uh, something I'm quite interested in. And possibly part of the answer to that question would be, rather than, uh, using just one contractor to, 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 to supply the, the rock wall, use several contractors, so each one then can put his little signature specimen o, o, on, on the rock wall. Um, I know if you look at some of the, uh, existing peninsula walls, you can actually see that. Um, you can see where the blokes are maybe worked one night and the, the, the rock, the wall's got a certain pattern to it. Uh, he would have come back the next day in a different mood. Perhaps I'd known a bit of an argument with a missus or something and, and the rock wall's got a slightly different flavour to it. So that, that could certainly be one aspect. Um, I, I notice that at the moment, uh, there's, um, up at Harwood, the, the, there's been a footpath put in and it's not been sealed yet. It's just got that, uh, that gravel, AP twenty gravel on it and that looks quite picturesque. That was the case at Vauxhall before it sealed, but as soon as it was sealed, it just went, you know, it was just, um, so, um, bit of, bit of thinking outside of the square, I think's required there.
Councillor Pete.
Yeah, afternoon, Tony. Um, just reading from your original submission, um, you say that the project out there to which you're so opposed would compromise the significant amenity, uh, cultural, historical and character. Can you just tell me, are you talking about the state, the sea wall?
No, I'm talking about the life on the peninsula in, in general. Um, just to answer that, um, this is last Saturday afternoon. I was enjoying a quiet little peaceful bike ride on top of the peninsula tops when suddenly there's a huge consternation and there's at least thirty-five, forty-five Triumph motorcycles went tearing past me. Um, you know, I mean, as much as I respect their right to, to go places, I don't really think that's the sort of environment for, for that sort of kind of activity, which has really escalated in, in the last few years, uh, you know, with the increased, um, the changes of the, you know, the roads we've seen up till date. And it's the momentum, it's going to be, you know, difficult to do anything about it. I think it's, it's, you know, it's, um...
So you're talking about this, this widening work encouraging more traffic out there?
Oh, yeah.
Whether high road or low road?
Oh, look, already, um, we, we're exhibiting the, um, you know, what, to date, um, we see a bit of the old Alexandra Central Blossom Festival syndrome out there. Gets so busy out there, where we live, McCandrew Bar, on Sunday afternoon, that sometimes we just clear out. We leave, you know, the, the crowding out there. It's never, it hasn't always been there. It's only something that seems to develop to, in the last five or six years.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? Thank you, Tony. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, um, thanks for having me. It's good to, it's good to be here in front of you all again. Pointed up? Okay. Uh, I'll try to be as close as possible. I quite like to stand when I'm giving talks, so, sort of used to being in front of a classroom, I guess. And, I'm not sure whether this thing works as well. Oh, is it switching on? Oh, well, okay. So, um, we're quite a, a lengthy submission once again, um, as per usual with spoke submissions. Uh, I just wanted to go through a few of the, of, um, a few points that are actually not really gone into in detail in the submission itself. And the first thing I wanted to do was just kind of review why it is that we're doing the things that we're doing for cycling in Dunedin. And, and I, I think these are all things that you all know, but just to sort of highlight them again. Maybe this works. Yeah, so, so the, obviously the, the principal reason we've been doing these things throughout the city is, is a, is a safety issue. Uh, we've had five cyclists fatalities on State Highway one alone, uh, other fatalities and serious injuries on some of the other roads. And, and, and the, these incidents, these fatalities, especially on State Highway, State Highway one, were, were fully preventable. They also create a deterrent to cycling. People, the, the number one reason for, for people choosing not to, to cycle is, is, uh, safety concerns. Still hasn't worked. That's all right. And in the past, I've also come here and talked to you about other incentives for, for investing in cycling. Um, for example, the, the petrol costs in Dunedin alone, uh, the people of Dunedin spend two hundred million dollars per year uh, on petrol just to drive around town. This is a, a number that came out of the energy plan a couple of years ago. And if you look at the, the breakdown of where that money goes, uh, roughly forty to forty-five percent of it goes overseas. So that would be the blue section, goes overseas, uh, to, to places like Saudi Arabia and wherever the oil comes from. And that, that number fluctuates a little bit depending on the cost of, of oil. But, uh, it's, it's in the vicinity of forty to forty-five percent. So out of two hundred million dollars per year, that's, that's almost as, it's almost a stadium's worth of... So out of $200 million per year, that's almost a, almost a sadium's worth of petrol per year. That's roughly $90 million per year that drains out of the Dunedin economy, just in the raw cost of the oil that we import for petrol. So a modest shift, say a 10% shift in mode choice from cars to walking or cycling or whatever, would see something like a $9 million per year savings, just in the cost of petrol alone. And of course, as the cost of petrol trends up over the long term, the cost, the amount that $200, $200 million per year will also increase accordingly. I've also come here and talked about the possibilities for tourism, and I caught a little bit of what the last speaker was talking about, some reducing tourism. But if we've got tourists here, it behooves us to keep them here an extra day, maybe two days. So if they're here, slow them down, so something like the Peninsula Road provides a good option for them to spend some time and some more of their money here in Dunedin, rather than going to Alps to Ocean, or maybe incorporating it with those other cycle trails. One of the other things that I've talked about in the past is the necessity to attract talent to Dunedin, the future business leaders, the highly skilled employees that we need to drive Dunedin's economy into the future. And a couple of years ago, we hosted a webinar featuring Kelly Brow, who's the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce of Denver, Colorado, in the United States. And she told us that in Denver, Colorado, it was the Chamber of Commerce that was actually driving a lot of the push for cycle lanes and better cycling infrastructure, because they recognized that they were in competition with a lot of other cities around the United States, and that to attract the high value-added businesses that really push the moderate economies, they needed to put in cycling infrastructure, because that was what was in demand, that's what people wanted. And it's an issue of livability and lifestyle choice. People nowadays, they want to be able to cycle. And in fact, we see that even here, over here on the right, this was an ad that I saw in the ODT just a couple of weeks ago. And it says, "Don't move to Central Otago for work, move for the lifestyle." Right, and they've got a picture of a cyclist hanging here. So Central Otago has certainly cottoned on to the fact that there is a lifestyle choice that people have today. You can, you can go where you want to to work. And they're advertising their cycling infrastructure to draw people from outside to come to Central Otago. And so Dunedin can also play that game. There's also the issue of parking, this is a hot button topic, and a lot of people say, well, cycling is going to impact the amount of, the amount and the availability of on-street parking. But if you go down to this place, this is outside the medical school and across the street, the hospital, and you'll easily count upwards of 100 bicycles per day parked outside the med school and at the hospital. And the situation is similar, say, at the university where I work, where I regularly see hundreds of bicycles parked around campus every day. And so you could ask the question, well, what would happen if all of those people said, you know what, cycling's too dangerous in Dunedin, I'm going to drive my car instead, and I'm going to park on the street? Well, on this, on this same block where these bicycles are parked outside the hospital, there are only about 25, maybe 30, parking spaces for cars on street. So if all of these people at the medical school and at the hospital decided, I'm going to drive instead of, instead of ride my bicycle, we'd need to conjure up another four blocks or so of on-street parking, you know, the four city blocks of on-street parking to accommodate all those people. And you could ask the same question about all the other hundreds of cyclists who currently cycle into the university or elsewhere in town. What happens if they all decide, hey, I'm going to just drive instead of ride my bike because it's too dangerous? But then you could ask the alternative question of, well, what happens if we got hundreds of more people to cycle every day instead of drive their car? You know, maybe we could get 400 people to start cycling instead of driving their car. And that would suddenly free up quite a few on-street parking spaces, maybe 10 blocks' worth of on-street parking spaces. So the question is, cycling is obviously good, but can we actually get more people to do that? And there's actually a new, results of a new survey conducted by Sport New Zealand have come out, this is the Sport and Recreation Survey they do every three years or six years or something like this. And they find that actually most adults engage in some kind of sporting or recreational activity in most weeks, up to 74%. And they also found that most of those people are either interested in trying a new sport or activity, or doing more of something. Cycling was in the top three of activities being pursued across New Zealand. And most people use man-made facilities when they engage in these recreational activities, in particular urban paths and cycleways in town. So there seems to be a potential, at least from that recreational point of view, that if there were more paths, or more safer cycleways around Dunedin, that there's this potential for growth, more people would use them. And of course, the transport survey that Dunedin City Council conducted a couple of years ago mirrors the same results that they found in Auckland and Christchurch, in that up to 60% of people would try out cycling for transport if it were safer to do so. And it turns out, it's actually not that hard to get people to start cycling, and you can start seeing increases straight away. So this is, this is a chart that I got from Kylie Heward, and this is the cycle counts, weekly cycle counts on Victoria Road from the past year up to just recently. And you can see a steady trend, upward trend. So last March, there was something, I think that's about 100, and now, this recent March, we're seeing several hundred users per day on that, on that one stretch of cycleway. So one question in pursuing all this is a bit of a, bit of a philosophy, philosophical approach as to how do you make these cycleways successful? What's the best way of going about it to get the best value for money? And so the, this is a diagram that probably all of you have seen, which classifies people into four different categories of cyclists. You've got the strong and fearless, those are the people who will ride in any kind of environment. You've got the enthused but confident, who are a little bit, a little bit more concerned for their personal safety, I guess you'd say. Then there's the interested but concerned, which makes up the bulk of the expected number of people who would take up cycling, and this is something like 50 to 60% of the population. And then there are, there's some, some portion, roughly 30% or so, of people who are just not going to give cycling a go, they're just not interested. And so when I hear this being talked about around, particularly around the council, sometimes I hear it said, well, you know, who are the, who are the strong and fearless, the enthused and confident? And they say, maybe some of the staff might say, well, it's the, it's the people with the expensive bikes and the lycra, and they go out there and train. But in my role as the Chair of Spokes, I go out and talk to a lot of cyclists in Dunedin, and I talk to a lot of cyclists out on Portobello Road, for example, who are riding recreationally, they've got the expensive bike, they've got the lycra. And they tell me, oh, no, I don't ride around town, it's too dangerous. So you've got these people out on Portobello Road, and they think, well, it's, they think that Portobello Road is safe, either because they ride at a time of day when there's not much traffic, or there's not very many heavy trucks out there, whatever, for whatever reason, they feel comfortable riding on Portobello Road, but they don't feel comfortable, say, riding on the oneways. So I would classify them as maybe interested but concerned. They would be interested in riding in town if it were safer, say, if there were separated lanes on the oneways. On the other hand, you have people, maybe you're riding a penny far, can you tell they're all me? I'm sort of strong and fearless, but I also ride all kinds of different bikes. So sometimes when I'm on my commuter bike, I'm just wearing regular clothes, it's got fenders, it's got a bike rack. And naively, you might think, seeing me riding down the street, hey, there's a sort of interested but concerned, regular Joe riding down the street. But again, I would ride in any kind of conditions. But that's not to say that I wouldn't prefer to have some protection, and it's not to say that other people who are in the sort of strong and fearless category, the people who are out there riding in all conditions, it's not to say that they wouldn't prefer to have protection if it were available and if it were done right, so that, so that it was functional and usable. So in fact, I think this, this sort of discrete blocks, these chunks, it's a little bit of a crude tool, and it doesn't necessarily capture the nuances of the people that are contained in those, in those blocks. And really, it should be thought of more as a continuum, rather than these discrete blocks. And I think it might be more subtly related to this idea of the diffusion of innovation. So for those of you who are business people in the room, you've probably seen this kind of, this kind of idea before. So this is a, this is a graph that, you might see this talked about, say, the diffusion of technology, for example, the adoption, people starting to use cellphones. In the early days of cellphones, very few people used them, the people that were using them were called the innovators. Then you have the early adopters, and then you get more, more and more people start to use them. And I think it's, there's a similar reflection with cycling. So this strong and fearless and this enthused but enthused and confident groups, I think of them as the early adopters. But again, it's a, it's a continuum. And these, these innovators and early adopters, or the enthused and confident, these are your, these are your core users. And it's about somewhere around here, not very well defined, but somewhere around here where they think, where they think that this is the sort of critical mass point. Once you get, once you get up to about here, then it becomes a socially acceptable thing to do. There are other, you know, there are other various reasons why people choose not to adopt an innovation until later, the laggards, I'm not going to use a cellphone ever, kind of thing. But eventually, eventually you get most people engaged. So one of the things that concerns me is, is the statement, it's for the interested but concerned, given this idea that it's a continuum. Because when I hear that, what I hear in my head is that, it's so inconvenient that only the very timid are going to put up with it. And so I see a risk, a potential risk in adopting that sort of philosophical approach of, it's just for the interested but concerned, and we're going to ignore everyone else. One of the, one of the risks is, is that by invoking the interested but concerned, this is used as a justification for poor designs. There's another risk in that ignoring this continuum, ignoring this continuum nature of personal risk assessment doesn't really properly categorize people. And, and the, the most important risk that I see is that it has the potential for creating a sort of a two-tier system, where some cyclists are using the infrastructure, but others are not. And we see this already, because a lot of the time, I see a lot of complaints about, oh, we've, we've built this, this cycleway or that cycleway, and the cyclists aren't even using it. And I think that creates a risk for future development in particular. So as a, as an alternative or slightly more nuanced design philosophy that incorporates all of those types of users, I'd say that number one, we want sensible solutions that are functional and compelling enough for the strong and fearless category, but also safe enough for the interested but concerned, so that we appeal to a broad range of people out there on bicycles. And it also needs to be self-explanatory designs, legible for both people on bicycles and people in cars. And I think we can do this. And just want to sort of finish up by saying that now is really the time. You all know about the decreasing funding assistance rate from NZTA, and the Urban Cycleways Fund that's going on right now. So the next three years offer a really crucial timeframe, really crucial window, where we can front-load those larger, higher capital projects to maximize, and maximize and leverage the UCF and the higher FAR rate as it is now. And we would like to see a sort of city-spanning backbone of routes implemented first, which would provide a framework for future growth. And I think that's, that's it.
Thank you, Robert. Questions, councillors? Councilor Pete.
In your, in your written submission, you talk about the possibility of access across the railway at Ratray Street, and you seem to be promoting an underpass. And just wondered if you could elaborate. Have you done any geotek work on that, or?
No, we have not. That was, that was a suggestion that one of our members had as an alternative to the bridge. And obviously, my first reaction was, wow, I think you'd have problems with groundwater. But it seemed like, it seemed like a, it could be a nice idea if it were feasible. And so we just think, well, maybe it's something worth looking into.
Okay. Even with a cafe in it?
Well, who knows?
Your councillor, Laura.
Yeah, Robert, I'm interested. I have never actually been up past the hospital and seen all those bikes there before, but do you have any sort of data or any information about how many people you think? Because one thing we always hear as councillors is, oh, no one uses the cycleways. You know, I drove from one end to the other and I saw two people on bikes. Do you know how many people are using bikes? Like you say, hundreds of bikes at the university?
Yep, so, yeah, so, we, on occasion, go out and put little flyers on bicycles that are parked around the place, you know, sometimes we're, we, for example, last year, we put on a, on a bike-in movie that we advertised in this manner. And so we print out little flyers and go and put them on bikes. And I usually print out, well, a couple of years ago, I would print out maybe 350 to 400 flyers, and these we would easily be able to distribute around the university and here at the hospital. Nowadays, I print out 600. And that's just for the main campus of the university and the polytech and this location here. So we don't, we generally, I mean, distributing that many flyers takes, takes a while, so we kind of limit ourselves to those, those big catchments. But, but I'd say usually upwards of 600. Or more, I mean, that's just for those, just for those locations. Yeah. Yeah, and a lot of them are hidden away. In fact, in my building, Science Three on the university campus, we actually have indoor bike parking in the basement. And it's, every day, it's, it's, you know, it's parked up with, I think, I think there's 20, 20 hooks.
Is that side of the hospital?
Yep. That's right, which is, it's across the street from that location where I should...
One, how important do you think it is to be concerned about the FAR rate that is probably coming down? I mean, it looks like it's coming down, then they give you some extra money, and then whatever they're doing, compared with getting it right? Because we've quite clearly done a whole lot of things that aren't necessarily right, and may, you know, it's sort of counterintuitive to deliver a bike, for instance, to the left-hand wheel of a truck, you can't see you, and get him to turn left across the front of them and things. There's a variety of things that don't seem to be quite right about some of them. Is it worth thinking and taking longer and getting them right, knowing that there's might be less money, but that getting it right and doing it once is better? Thing number one. And thing number two, the, whatever we do about cycle lanes, there'll be people having to come to them and get it on and off them. You know, most of people's cycling is often going to be getting to them or in other parts of... And there doesn't seem to be anybody at the moment doing anything about trying to help us understand how we all get on together. But there's more and more friction between cars and bikes, and that's, seems to me, very dangerous as the comings and goings happen, compared with concentrating on how we can all learn to live with each other and treat each other with courtesy and respect and safe practices, which seem to me sort of as important in their own way as the actual on-the-ground infrastructure.
So I think you've made several good points there. See if I can address them all. I've heard from, from people in certain areas of the city where they've said, well, actually, we're getting more abuse now than we were before because people are angry about what's happened, things that have been put in, for example, down in South Dunedin, for example. And I think that's mainly a design issue, well, in part a design issue, and that points to the, brings up your, your point about, you know, making sure we get it right the first time around. And unfortunately, some of the things that have, that have happened, like Portobello Road, we're done in a rush to meet a deadline of NZTA funding deadline or something like this. And so it didn't include the proper sort of consultation to make sure that it was done correctly the first time. I think now that with the establishment of this cycleways liaison group, we have spokes involved, we have the AA involved, we have other, other groups involved, I think that we will, in the future, be able to get a much better understanding of the impacts of different, different people in the community and different users before things are done on the ground. But it's certainly better to, to get it done right the first time. You know, people, people in the city, they, they know, they see when, you know, they notice when something's put in and then taken up just a few weeks later or months later, and then something, and then it's changed, right? I mean, obviously, they see this, and this causes problems. I think this, this causes a problem in terms of the public perception and the sentiment around the city, and I think that's something that could be avoided with, with, with better engagement. And I think that's something that could be avoided with better engagement, which I think we'll get with this cycleways liaison group. Does that answer your question?
And the education.
Oh, yeah, the education.
With or without infrastructure.
Yeah, so certainly, education across the board would be a good thing to do, and whether that is led on the city level or should be led on the NZTA level or the national government level, I'm not sure about that. I think one thing we can do is put in the infrastructure, and that's a long-term solution because with the education solution, that's certainly something that you have to continue with essentially in the long term.
Yeah, we're just, it's just that we're trying to get that, if you're trying to get the people from the, whatever, did you say, something but concerned?
Interested but concerned.
Interested but concerned, they'll remain concerned if whenever they get off the end of what they consider to be a safe space, they take their life in their hands again and try and find the rest of their way home.
Yeah, well, so part of that, I think, what you're saying is maybe signage in relation to giving people directions of where, where does the cycleway go, what are the best routes, that kind of information, that kind of education. Getting safe cycling coverage everywhere, you know, to every street, to every house, that's either probably not going to happen or something very far down the track, right? I mean, this is, this is a long-term kind of, kind of program, say, in Copenhagen, which is often touted as a great place to cycle. You know, they started their program back in the mid-eighties and they're still, they're still developing it, so it's a long-term kind of thing. So you're probably not going to get complete coverage from their front door to somewhere else, but you can, you can cover the main barriers, right? I mean, from them, for them to get, say, if I'm a student down, living down near the Oval on Maitland Street or something, something like this, it's quite easy for me to get down Maitland Street to Princess Street or to the oneways, right? But it's that Princess Street to the university, oneways to the university, that's the, that's the main barrier. And so once you put in the coverage for that, I think people can generally find the sort of beginning five or 10 percent and the end five or 10 percent.
Right. Thank you, Robert. That was, that was really interesting and very comprehensive. Thank you.